Welcome to the Simsbury Board of Selectmen meeting. Um, this is a special meeting because we moved it to five o'clock so that we could focus on the budget. Um, as opposed to our normal six o'clock timeframe. And I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask everyone to stand for the pledge.
Listen to the United States of America. The Constitution of the United States of America. For the nation under God, in this world with liberty and justice for all.
Um. We've, we, we included um an, a public audience tonight, which we don't really need for a, a special meeting, but since we took away our regular meeting, we figured we would. We, you know, we would like to hear some of the public. So I'd like to know who's here for a public audience. I know Joan is. Um, Joan, if you'd like to come up.
Yes.
Oh, is there a sign up? She wait, can I have the sign up?
I think Joan's first.
Oh, okay.
First one.
Susan is bringing it in.
Okay, thank you. I gotta make sure Joan's first.
She is.
Okay. Thank you. Um, Joan? And we're, we're gonna, we have to stick to the five minutes, obviously, 'cause we have a lot to go through tonight, so please try to.
You ready? That's a different stuff.
Uh, Joan called twenty-six with contrived during the discussion on how to allocate the funding from the ARPU revenue. First elected Wendy McTuesis was adamant about using these funds for police service store. I thought for seventy thousand dollars that notes that funding is for two years. I received a review of expenditures and a list of events for one year. According to the information I received on my FOI request from Pete Fulcher. The cost of food Chewy with Clifton is seven hundred sixty-six dollars and ninety cents delivered to town hall. There are costs for dog stickers, window tinting, eight senses along grooming, veterinary and business, holiday cards. And a poster Clifton cast. The mileage on the car dedicated to Clifton is twenty-six thousand three seventy-one. When Officer Ball works over eight hours, he is given time time and other expense. When Clifton's officers doing fingerprinting, et cetera, Clifton is caged in the police department. It appears that our comfort dog spends most of his time being uncomfortable. Officer Ball and Clifton go on field trips out of town. It is noted that they went to Mystic Aquarium, Yukon Stores twice, Montville High School, Gravine State College, Springfield College, Winslet G D twice. University of Harvard, Groton Public Library, W F S B for commercial, Tennessee Police Funeral, Indies Park. Party at, in Nagatuck, Tonsus College, State College, Washington D C, Connecticut Science Tender Camp in Farmington twice. Westfield University in Ansonia. This is in addition to the visits of Simsbury Schools, businesses and gas for twenty-six, six thousand three hundred seventy-one mile. It appears the person elected Wendy McTuesis chose a wasteful project that has not given the taxpayers a valuable return on their investment. Taxpayers never envisioned that the comfort dog expenditures would escalate over the years. The cost of taking a police officer offline to handle a comfort dog while the police department is short offices is a management issue. Or setting priorities that are inconsistent with professional management, creating a morale issue. The car that is used for transport for the comfort dog should be repurposed for a patrol car that would lower the cost of purchasing an additional car. The experiment of having a comfort dog in the police department was full of extravagant expenditures that did not add any value and should be removed from the budget. This is an example of wasteful spending of tax dollars. I would suggest the first elected Wendy McTuesis adopt the dog with a crate. Since she was Clifton's advocate and the timeline for these expenditures has expired. First elected Wendy McTuesis will be making decisions on the spending allocations for twenty-five, twenty-six budget. Our elected officials should develop a budget and allocate expenditures that are not on whims or feelings, but legitimate needs of taxpayers. The town has applied for a grant of four hundred fifty thousand dollars to use taxpayer money for brownfield remediation. On private property, one twenty-six sixty-three, one twenty, one twelve eighty-five. The Wagner property, usually the responsible party is noticed by the state to pay for the remediation, not the taxpayer. According to town manager Mark Nelson, this is one of his actions to encourage economic development. Another tool town manager Mark Nelson is going to use is tax abatement. According to Lisa Heaton's thorough study on the application of tax abatement. It was found that tax abamments are not a good tool for encouraging development. However, in my conversation with Mark Nelson, he stated that the present studies have debunked the theory. That abamments have not proven to encourage development. The taxpayers should not be partying to pay for any commercial development. If the development has merit, it will be built through private resources. Recently from the, uh, from the Board of Education, a link from the state Connecticut on cost of special education in Simsbury over the years. I posted a link on Twitter at Joan Co. According to the website, Simsbury spent ten million. Six hundred forty-two thousand two hundred and seven in twenty-twenty-two oh oh five oh six budget for special education. The budget for twenty-two, twenty-three for special education was twenty-one million oh fifty-four, seven seventy-five. The Simsbury schools have had fewer students over the years, but the budget for special education doubled. It appears like everything in government, find a cause for concern and build an industry around the issue. Taxpayers can no longer afford to pay increasing costs of special education. The state should be required to provide alternative schools for students with behavioral issues and other alternative needs. Many of the charter magnet schools can be repurposed for all students that cannot assimilate in the public school setting, all support services. The special educations were reduced in half as a beginning to reduce the budget.
Thank you.
The electric charging station in town hall parking lot should be removed.
Time is up, Joan. Thank you.
The taxpayers should not be required to pay for everyone's electric car. E P I must be eliminated from town.
Joan, it's five minutes, please.
All of my comments we've posted on Simsbury, that and Twitter, Joan Co.
Perfect. No, I had you over. Um, Michael Turcano, are you here for the, um, you, did you want us public audience?
No, I didn't want a public audience. I was here 'cause I know they're gonna decide on the, our event for Hartford Track Club. And I was here in case anyone had any questions.
Yeah, we don't normally ask questions if you wanna do a, a, any public audience to give us some information. That's fine, but we don't really engage. Um, and it, it's gonna be later, later in the agenda, so just wanted to give you that heads up.
Uh.
'Cause we have a budget meeting tonight.
Yeah, yeah, I saw that. Um.
Okay, so anyway, I'll let you decide. I'm gonna see if Susan, Susan, you're on here for a jet.
Yeah, 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 maybe I could just describe it so everybody knows what it is.
Yeah.
Good evening, Susan Messino, forty-one Madison Lane. I know we're talking about the budget tonight. There were a couple of things. Uh, previously, um, related to the charter revision that, um, caused me some concern. And so I wanted to make a couple of general comments tonight. One was a suggestion that we remove the Board of Finance from town, which I was kind of shocking to me. Because we really have an excellent Board of Finance with a lot of deep expertise that have gotten the town a triple A rating. So I'm not sure why we would eliminate that. Um, and then there was another thing that I saw whereby, um, grants could be submitted without the Board of Selectmen knowing about it. But then the Board of Selectmen would need to approve receiving them, which I also see as not a good idea. And something that I know has happened in other towns and caused problems because you've applied for money. The people don't even know if it's a project that they want to do. So, uh, those two things were of concern to me. And so I just wanted to make a couple of general comments about the budget in general. Um, just the kind of deep history and expertise that brings us good budgets and financial practices. Um, I know we have financial concerns and I think it should be a serious issue to really dip into our reserves and not consider that a habit. Because those reserves are part of our triple A rating. Um, really consider, uh, what we're doing in terms of appropriations. Um, really consider what we have in our capital budget and our capital improvement plan. Because all of those plans should have ways that we're gonna pay for them. And I think also let people know now which of these things would require a referendum. And, uh, you know, which of these are really priorities. If we're in a serious budget situation, we all need to kind of really think. What's a wish list and what do we really, um, what do we really need? So, uh, those are just my general comments. I mean, we have a triple A rating for a reason and, um, that's something we all appreciate and respect as well as the work of our Board of Finance. So, thank you.
Thanks, Susan. Michael, do you wanna, um?
Maybe I'll just describe what I'm, what we're trying to.
Yeah, you have under, you have under five minutes.
Exactly, exactly. So, uh, I'm, uh, Mike Terracani from the Hartford Track Club and is more for the selectmen. Um, we applied for a permit for a group run in the town, just for our track members and all that. And we're gonna go from the parking lot behind the music show, up the rail trail, across the street and back. It's a six mile run. So, uh, it's gone through all the different committees and departments and I think everyone's approved it. And I just wanted to make sure you understand it's just a group run. It's not a Yukon half marathon or anything like that and it'll be less than fifty people. So, we'll be there for about two hours. The only structure we have is our little canopy. There's no money exchange, there's no prizes, there's no T-shirts, there's nothing. So, just, uh, wanted to make that clear as you think about, you know, approving that and getting it cleared for.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I actually hope to put that on the consent agenda, so.
Um.
You won't probably need to stay for the whole meeting, but that's your decision.
But I'm not, I'm not, I'm not going. Good to thank you.
Okay, um, so tonight.
Lori.
Oh, Lori, did you, okay, sorry, I didn't have your name.
I just got your email.
Let me get my timer.
Starting. Hi, I'm Lori Boyko from fifteen Othryst Road. Tonight, as you contemplate the various appropriations that comprise our local budget. I want to remind you so that you have it foremost in your minds that every appropriation you approve. Creates a direct cost to the taxpayers. The people who elected you and even all electors of this town, whether they showed up to vote or did not. While you and the Board of Finance can pull various financial levers to use reserves, which is money we already contributed above what we probably needed to. Or to borrow money, which is just like slapping it on a credit card with interest that straddles us to paying it more later. It is all money we have to fork over whether we can afford to or not. You weren't voted in to represent small special interest groups or businesses or people with pet projects. You were elected to represent the people, the residents of this town. Those struggling to pay the bills just as much as the unbelievably wealthy. That means every budget item must be something the whole town needs and not something nice to have. That being said, every expenditure, no matter how small, must be justified and must serve the greatest number of residents. Every year, an email is sent out to nonprofit organizations asking who wants money. Why is this done? Taxes are not meant to be charitable donations. Anyone who wants to donate is more than welcome to. In fact, I encourage it. And I believe some of you have. But for the town to give, there must be a need that serves the town that we cannot have without that donation. Some of the things that we're giving money to or at least proposed are Interval House. It's an exceptional organization. It does a world of good. But they will serve this town with or without our donation. And I sent an email to all of you back in the fall outlining how much money they actually have. Um, S C T V, I have volunteered for them. Exceptional organization with tough issues with their funding. They can raise the money. They can. It should not be a taxpayer expenditure. Simsbury Summer Theater. A B C House. A B C House, I don't know if you know, doesn't pay property tax on their building because they're a nonprofit organization. If they did, it would be fifteen thousand dollars based on their assessment. Why are we proposing to give them another five thousand dollars? They're a private nonprofit organization and frankly, um, removing the property tax does give them a donation. Chamber of Commerce, we not only have proposed seventy-five hundred dollars, but also a membership in the Chamber of Commerce. I don't know why we're a member of the business organization. The V N A, forty thousand dollars. They also pay no property tax. Aside from that, Social Services and the Senior Center are over half a million dollar budget. While not our biggest expenses, nearly ninety percent of their budget are salaries. Most of the people in this town probably assume that the social service budget goes to helping people in need. Ninety percent is salaries. That does not even include benefits. In the last seven years, the Social Services and Senior Center have increased staff fifty percent. We've spent money on dues to organizations and travel for training and conferences. The budget for travel, training and conferences is over five thousand dollars. Twenty-six hundred dollars was spent two years ago to go to a national social work conference for four days. I know people in this town who needed help with a hot water heater when their family had no hot water and were turned away. But we were sending the social service director to Washington D C for four days to go to a conference. Please take those things into consideration when you consider the budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. Anybody else? Public audience? Going ones, going place. Um, so I'd like to just level set a little bit. Um, we're gonna start the budget workshop. And what we plan to do is go through each of the sections in the budget, um, open it up for questions. Um, you know, Melissa and Amy will, will trigger where we are, open it up for questions. Um, a couple of things I, I, I asked was if we could, if somebody, I don't know who will do this, I'll try, but it would be great if somebody there could. Any items that we have consensus on potentially cutting track that. And anything that we, um, potentially may need to revisit that we don't have consensus on, but we wanna discuss a little bit further. Later to track that so that we could circle back to those items. Um, does that sound okay with everybody up here? And then I would like to open with Amy, um, well, a couple of things. I wanted to ask Mark to give a quick ClearGov documentation update, 'cause I think there are people who may have asked for a PDF. Do we have an ETA on that yet?
No ETA on it yet, Chair. You know, the interesting thing is when you convert to automation, you, you generally have these quirks. We were able to give PDFs to, to individuals that wanted them, uh, but it's, they're still not formatted correctly. We don't have a timeframe from ClearGov as of yesterday, anyway, uh, as of Friday. So, soon as we do, we'll let, uh, we'll let you know.
Okay, um, so, so that, uh, the other thing is it's most likely we will be scheduling a special meeting for March third. I think we talked about that at five o'clock, so that we don't have to cram everything in, especially if we go late tonight and everyone's kinda tired. Um, so that we could finalize the budget. Um, and I'm sure there'll be some, I'm assuming there'll be some questions to take away and bring back to the board. And then our next meeting before the eleventh, which is when we present to the Board of Finance, will be the tenth. So hopefully it's all done by then, but we still have that last ditch meeting, which hope we don't need, um, before we present to the Board of Finance. Um, I'd like to open with Amy Meriwether, our Finance Director, so that we could see where we are today. Um, what, what our percentage increase is and what our target is, um, that we're trying to get to as a board.
Okay. So currently on the top, this is where, um, the Board of Selectmen budget stands. This was the Town Manager's budget at the three point five percent increase. This is the Superintendent's proposed budget at the four point three seven percent increase. Nothing's changed since debt service. The anticipated revenue, um, the, uh, Town Manager's budget was at sixteen million two. Um, and then you received a subsequent email that we didn't know if we were gonna get the two hundred and thirty thousand. So this number has been reduced by the two hundred and thirty thousand and then four hundred and fifty thousand used at reserves. So if we go down here. This gives us a mill rate of thirty-three point six three for the town side. One point zero five, which we don't know where the fire district is going to land yet, for a total mill rate of thirty-four point six eight at present. For a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar house, we're looking at a four hundred and thirty-two dollar increase or four point two five percent. And then some new legislation here, um, the motor vehicle impact. Previously, motor vehicles were valued based on the fair market value. Um, the legislation has changed where now the motor vehicles are valued based on M S R P. Along with a fixed depreciation schedule for those vehicles. So I worked with the Assessors Office, um, to come up with a comparison compared to the prior year. And, um, the majority of residents, it looks like they will see a decrease in their motor vehicle taxes of about fourteen percent. Um, some will see a twenty-nine percent, some will see sixty-five percent. And a super small, um, population will receive an increase of four percent. Um, I believe there's about eight hundred residents or so in that small population out of the twenty-five thousand. And then you get down here to the household impact. Um, this would be your total household impact with your real estate taxes, your motor vehicle taxes. About three hundred and seventy dollar increase or three point, um, four nine percent. Um, if you watched the prior Board of Finance meeting, there was discussion about comparing the tax increase with the, um, real estate and the motor vehicle. Given the change in the motor vehicle. Um, and then so our budget mailers would show the four point five increase from last year. Going to a three point four nine for this year if they're to move in that direction. So this is where we're currently at.
Okay.
And then for the Superintendent's budget, we had received guidance from the Board of Education that they wanted to be at the three-nine-one option that they were given. Um, so they will likely be voting on that tomorrow night. If that were to come to fruition, I will put that in. And then there have been discussions with the fire district for recouping that two hundred and thirty thousand dollars in motor vehicle reimbursement that went to the fire district instead of coming to the town. So if we were able to get that back, adding two hundred and thirty thousand dollars back to the budget. And then lastly, on our motor vehicle taxes, um, we would split the mill rate with the fire district typically. Because the reimbursements were coming to the town. Now the reimbursements will be going to the fire district and the town. Um, so the fire district will get their share directly from the state, so the town would take the first thirty-two point four six mills. And with these changes, we are at, um, a mill rate of thirty-three point three five or a three point three eight percent increase. Um, as you can see, three hundred and forty-three dollars on a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar home. Again, we see our fourteen percent reduction in motor vehicles. So our starting place, um, is a tax increase of two hundred and eighty-two thousand, um, two hundred and eighty-two dollars, I'm sorry, or two point six six percent.
And, and can you, um, clarify, uh, just from the Board of Finance guidance, what the request is for, for both the Board of Ed? And the Board of Selectmen for, um, an expenditure budget increase?
I think.
So we kinda have a target or something in mind to shoot for. I, I know Aunt Lisa's here too, but I was.
Uh, I think the Board of, uh, Education was two point nine and the town was two.
That's correct.
Two point nine for the B O A.
The top of my head?
And we're two, but the Board of Ed, you were telling me are not gonna hit the two point nine.
Not based on what's in their packet.
Okay. So, okay. Okay, so I'm, what I'd like to do is start, um, walking through each, each expenditure revenue budget. And then open it up for questions. And I'm sure some will have very few questions, some may have a lot of questions and discussion. And, um, trying to get to my ClearGov here. And, uh, you guys wanna just kinda lead the, lead the discussion? Amy and Melissa?
Uh, just call each item and we'll get into it there, Chair.
Okay, if there's anything you wanna preface the beginning, that's fine too.
We, we're ready to get right into it.
Okay. Okay. Will anybody have any questions on, on, on the Town Manager's office? And I, I guess I'll go down the line. I have some, but if everybody wants to.
Just briefly, if I could share on the Town Manager's budget, the main thing here was that we transitioned, uh, and thank you for your budgetary approval last year.
Sure.
As we created the Department of A F Human Resources. Uh, so you, most of the changes that you see in the TM budget are related to, uh, VAT authorization last year and the build out of H R. And as we get through the budget workshop tonight, there's, uh, some other elements that we'll emphasize have also been transferred to H R as that department comes online. Happy to answer any questions on it. It's, uh, pretty easy, bud.
Okay, uh, well, I'll just start, just to break the ice. That's okay. Um, I did have a question. I think I believe I submitted it also, but I'm gonna ask it here. Um, the four thousand dollars for contractual services, which is, um, a summer intern. But I was under the impression the intern was being moved to the H R department, so I don't understand what that, that money is for.
Yeah, so that traditionally our, uh, Yukon intern is August to May. We budget to allow them if we can to start in July as early as possible with this, um, with the organization, so that should be, got you kicked over to H R.
So. Say that again, H R.
So, it should be, it was an oversight that we, that I forgot, so it should be over with the H R.
So we're gonna take that out of here? Uh, do we, is it?
We just request to move it to H R.
It's not, and, yeah, what's, what is the total for the intern? I thought it was eighteen thousand?
So, the eighteen thousand is through the Yukon program. The contract is from the third week of August to about the third week of May. Anything outside of that, um, which we've had some interns use it, some not, just based on their availability. It allows them to start in July, um, or past May, depending on their schedules.
Okay. I guess I'm just saying, why wouldn't we just stick to the, the range of the hours and take out the floor?
Yeah, um, so it allows the intern to start earlier and get kind of acquainted with the organization and then kinda hit the ground running faster. Um, and it's also budgeted for them. So the normal Yukon internship is fifteen hours a week. This is calculated out to about thirty-five a week, so we can, we can do whatever the systems to the consideration.
And if I could share, just for the benefit of the public and watching at home, what we did was we transitioned or actually moved the intern. So this has been a longstanding internship program through, uh, Yukon, where the intern works part-time in the Town Manager's office. This year, we've moved that resource to H R because the, uh, workload in H R, uh, is, is heavier. And that's where the work was needed, that's where the effort is needed, uh, as we switch to new technology and other things that we've got on the work plan. Uh, that doesn't mean that the intern wouldn't also help out from time to time in, in my office. But, uh, you know, the bulk of that work is now gonna be done in H R. The four thousand, my understanding is it was a past practice to extend the intern on both sides. Wasn't new to my budget, but that's the four thousand that the town pays over and above the Yukon.
Mm-hmm.
Eighteen thousand.
That number is also reduced from what we had in there for this year because typically, I think, based on, um, just the level of the volume of work we had in that office. Um, we sometimes would have either additional hours on top of the additional I P P hours, but also an additional intern when we were able to fill, um, more than one. Um, so we did bring that down before we reallocated it to H R. And like Tom said, that, that seasonal line would just go to H R if, if you're amenable to keeping it in.
So, just so I'm on the same page, and not to get ahead, 'cause we'll get there when we get there.
Yeah.
Contractual services under H R is now gonna be twenty-seven thousand two hundred and fifty.
Well, technically, we would keep it under a seasonal line i- item, just based on how that individual would get, would get paid. Um, the, the formal internship program is a contract with Yukon, whereas the seasonal, um, the hours, we would be paying the individual directly. That's just a technicality of how the payment would work.
So it'll be a line item. And if we don't get this intern, how intern, that it's convenient for them, how do we get the work done? I'm just trying to understand the necessity for a four thousand dollar variance.
Mike kept on it, Mike kept it pushing the back burner.
Everybody in the Town Manager's office is an exempt employee, uh, uh, Selectman Antonio, which means that we're gonna get the work done either way. Um, when I was preparing the budget, the, the ask was to actually add an intern. Because there's enough work that needs to be done to support an intern in both offices. But because of the budget constraints that were under, the decision was made not to do that. Uh, because we couldn't add an intern to get the work done, uh, the ask was from H R. Uh, I gave up my intern. Uh, and I said, in my office, we'll get the work done. We need the intern to go to H R. It was an oversight that the four thousand wasn't also budgeted in H R. Um, but if this board is inclined to cut it, we're gonna get the work done.
Okay.
All right, we'll get there in H R. I apologize for jumping.
But I was, I'm putting it on my discussion list. Um, anybody else, other Town Manager questions?
So. Clar- clarification, special activities. I understand it's a reduction, but what is, what is that budget for?
It's a retreat.
Are you?
No, we cut the, uh, twelve thousand dollar retreat or so. We haven't got a retreat since I've been here, haven't we?
So, um, we have like, that's where we do kind of our public events, um, budget workshop. Um, usually like the food that we've had, like, like the budget workshop or the swearing in ceremony.
Yeah. Food tonight.
Food.
Right, but, are the, yeah, so.
Okay, just, yeah, just wanted to understand what it is. Like, I see a line item and it's, and it is, it is, it's reduced from year over year. But still wanted to know like what it's. it is it's reduced from year over year, but still wanted to know like what exactly was that paying for?
My understanding was it was for uh event, special events and the attendance of the town manager's office and support of activities. You know, both by the by this board and and our boards and commissions and.
Hometown hero type thing, yeah.
Or someone else.
Oh, that is, yeah.
So but we did cut the line. Thank you for mentioning that.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yep.
Oh.
Which which was the line that the retreat was on? I know that that was discussed, but where was that cut out of?
I think general government.
General government.
It was a twelve or sixteen, I believe, no?
It used to be in general government because it was sort of organization-wide.
Okay. Okay, I thought it was there, so I misunderstood.
Did they, did you say it's in this, the thirty four hundred?
In general government.
In the general government.
It was this seventeen four five hundred.
Okay.
Seventeen thousand four fifty. We cut it?
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
Cut it and moved it.
Okay, so quest those are questions people had. Any other questions?
Town manager.
Town manager.
Okay, office supplies. I I can't understand what's going on. I I see you reduced it by five hundred, but then you add fifteen hundred to H R, which used to be town part of the town manager's office, so it's a net gain of a thousand dollars. And then if you go down even under general government, that's jumped up to eleven thousand and that makes it over two thousand two hundred and fifty dollar increase. What is the rationalization on copy and printing services and the way it's jumping around on the balance sheet, but it has a significant net increase if you follow that logic?
It's all those budget books.
I paid for this preparing myself.
Yeah, it's Diana pay, get us free copies.
So anyways, i- if you want, let's stick with town manager. It did go down five hundred dollars.
Yeah.
Why did it not go down more if H R has its own line item?
So it went down five hundred in my office, went up slightly in H R 'cause it's a new office. So I believe that the idea was to get a desk and a chair and and you know, it's the first time you've had that office up there. We've I put the director up on the you know pseudo-third floor with uh you know, a conference table and so forth, right? So in a new office, uh respectfully, I think we we had set a hundred in there or something like that. So you'll see a little more in H R this year and then it would drop down to what you would expect next year.
Is that what that furniture is in general government?
There's also some furniture in general government as well, which has been a I'll I'll refer to the team on exactly how we did this 'cause there were a lot of discussions about how to address the furniture shortfalls and needs, but I'll be on that one. Melissa, what have you do?
Do you wanna talk about that now or when we get to general?
You can wait till we get to general government. I just didn't know if it was correlated since he mentioned furniture upstairs for H R. We can hold off on that.
Might be better 'cause it it does touch multiple departments.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah.
Yep. Great, thank you.
We're making a list. Keep wanting to check it twice too, right?
I am too.
Three times.
Okay, three times. All right, you got your list. Um so right now the town manager's office a little question on the intern or moving it or keeping it and the cumulative office supply question, correct?
Okay.
Um human resources and and we know that the big move in the top f- full-time item was to move H R to its own department. So now we're moving down to H R. I'm going to click on H R. Am I clear?
The general government is before H R.
Oh, oh, sorry. I'm looking on the page, sorry.
General government is before H R.
I have two different versions in front of me.
Yeah, it jumps.
Okay, general government.
Yeah.
Um I I I'll let someone else start with the questions 'cause.
Well, we might as well start with that furniture.
Yeah.
Melissa.
Sure, so for the past several years, we've put um furniture replacement in C N R plan um as a way, we've never had a budget for the chairs you're sitting in, the chairs in the co- other conference rooms, any office furniture we need. Someone needs a new desk, a new chair. We've never had a budget for it. And the way it's typically worked is that individual departments, if they had savings in their office supply line, they would just try to get by with the funding they had available. Um so the idea in the past was to try to get a program going so that we had some funds available to cover items like that. Um we never got it funded through C N R um and now that we're sort of started rethinking how we're doing C N R and anything that is recurring, we wanna put in the operating. Um so we thought we would start this year by um putting five thousand dollars in general government for this purpose. Um and we did have a couple of requests come through from departments for you know, five hundred dollar item or three hundred dollar item. Um so we know that there is um obviously the need and we just thought it would be realistic to start with a smaller dollar figure and put it in general government.
So I wasn't even looking at the budget. So that's you're saying five thousand dollars every year will be in general government for any furniture across the town hall organization?
We're not saying five thousand every year. We're saying that this year
To start.
is five thousand, but I think the main for me, as I was briefed on this by staff as we started the budget process, my key takeaway was there had not been previously a line and it had not been funded by C N R. Uh and you'll see this is a recurrent theme through some of the questions that I know you will ask tonight. Uh but again, keeping in mind the severe limit to what C N R funding can be, uh it is important to make some decisions strategically about, you know, are you gonna put something in operating or are you just gonna defer it or just not address it at all? Um if it's a recurring expense, as obviously some furniture would be on a rolling basis, we believe that uh it should be in operating and obviously this isn't the year to overload it. So the point was to put a small amount in the budget to cover furniture for the entire organization. It's not in a department line. It's in what I call non-government and non gov- uh non-government.
Can uh and just as a side note, can you explain what general what is in general government for the public?
Yeah, and and again, I'll defer to staff. There's some differences between how it's done here and how I've done it in other areas in my career, but uh it is essentially that there are charges that don't inure to one specific department. Um and as you work to get uh department budgets in line and to be able to better understand where there could be efficiencies within each department, it's good to get rid of the stuff that is outside the control of the department head, a a recurring charge that has got nothing to do with the operation of the department. Um in in my last life, for example, we moved things like uh employee cell phones to from the departments to non-governmental. Uh the water coolers would go to non-de- departmental, that type of thing. Here, the furniture is a good example because uh there could be requests that you could put it in each department or or you could have one pot of money that is better controlled or you can have tighter control over the authorizations and the and also the decision-making. If you're going to furniture is probably the best example. If you're going to say in this particular year where we face a tight budget, the limit is this, then respectfully, your town manager should be able to decide what the priority is. Is it a new desk in the planning department or is it a new chair in the library? Um whereas if you budget within each department, the department head is making those choices. And what happens, I think we all understand, is that towards the end of a fiscal year, if a department has not spent, uh that's when they would in fact, and this has been done in Simsbury for for years, they would spend to to reach that uh authority in the final month of the fiscal year. Uh you know, you've got a little extra money in your office supply line. That's when you would buy a chair historically. Uh and that just isn't the 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 most appropriate way to handle your furniture. You know, you don't want individual departments making that choice uh in in my view. So move it out of the department line. Uh we did something similar with some of the training and and things like that. So historically, the attendance at conferences, and I know we'll talk about this later, but it's the same principle. Uh it's not that you you uh don't want your uh department heads and other staff to 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 benefit from the continuing training and education opportunities, networking and best practices at all of these organizations. But in particularly in periods of tight budget, you need to have better control over who's doing what. What is the return on investment of that particular conference? Do you have to go every year or could you go every other year? Is it you who has to go or maybe we wanna send you deputy this time? Historically, those decisions were made at the department head level. Uh I think they should be made at the town manager.
Um.
Okay.
I had a question just on the the supply section, I think.
Sure.
So um the printing printing services and the postage, so both had twelve percent increases.
Yep.
Um could you explain your things there?
Well, we mail more. I think one of the things we did budget for is a is an additional budget mailer as well uh which I'll let staff take that one on uh postage increases, Melissa, if you can.
Didn't we didn't we find that with year-end? Did we do that with year-end savings though?
The three thousand?
The mailers.
Not sure.
For the current year?
Yeah.
This was for the next.
Oh, oh, okay.
This is for the following year.
Yeah, so the the postage, I think that we look, we track the year-to-year average um and with the increase in one postage cost and two absentee ballots going out um and that change, um there'll be an incre- an expected increase in the postage. Twelve percent roughly.
And so in the the printing side of it?
Yeah.
The mailers.
Yep.
So so this is the mail, the budget mailer, both of them?
No.
No, that's that's not in this budget.
No. It's copy paper and other supplies for like John for the pro- for the.
Copy paper. Owner.
Is the postage for the budget mailer?
No.
The postage is for just town hall mailing.
Okay.
The budget mailer is in the board of selectmen budget.
Okay.
And uh the ballots are in election administration?
Double.
Do we know? Please. To 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 Curtis's question, wh- are did we answer what these are covering?
I think it's an additional, un- adi- additional postage was needed for mail, budget mails.
Right.
No, that's else.
I I think what we did was we looked at expenses and added.
Just we're gonna just mail through. Yeah, average tracking average spent through mail um for the last couple of years and then just each year the expected increase in cost postage just gotten with the cents to seventy, eighty-three cents or so.
My budget went up ten percent for this year, so yeah, twelve doesn't seem unreasonable to me.
Okay. I um I have other questions, so I'll back down.
Yeah, I have a question just um I understand you gave an answer, but I wanna make sure that the public understands. Um can you just explain the vehicle cost under uh general government?
Absolutely, um so this is another item that we had been trying to get into the C N R plan for several years. Actually, furniture replacement and um municipal fleet replacement were both items we had um on the plan and weren't able to get them funded, but we kept showing them um year after year. And again, with the idea that we wanna keep anything that's recurring or like a program um in the operating budget, the idea here was to start that replacement program. Um you'll recall, I think that we originally had this in the C N R plan when we initially did the rankings um late fall, um late November, early December. There were a few items that once we were done with that ranking process that we did move to operating. This was one of them um along with the furniture replacement and then the computer replacements, which we can talk about under I T. Um so this was originally in C N R, showing it in the operating now. The the funding actually was reallocated from the police department. So in the current year, fiscal year twenty five, there were funds for one of the administrative vehicles in the police department. Um and they uh gave that up for next year, twenty six, and we reallocated it to to this project. Um and so it's really that in terms of the funding source, it was really a reallocation. Uh but the concept there again was to get that out of C N R and to really start that municipal fleet uh replacement program and um it would be for the planning department vehicle.
So so I would be in- inclined to take it out. Um I know that we placed a low priority on that planning vehicle and it's hard to say that we're gonna get a new vehicle every year in general government when all the other departments seem to have either their vehicles in there with a payback or it's in the C N R plan. So to me, I I especially under general government, I I was looking to remove that forty-four out of the budget for now. And if we need to add it to C N R with a specific vehicle need, I would do that.
So the other departments that have vehicles in C N R, um parks, D P W, police, um they would not be included in this. This would be more for um you know, the town hall departments that use vehicles, engineering, assessor's office, planning. Um so they currently don't have a funding source at C N R and wouldn't it it would be different than the other departments. It would be a funding source for the other department.
Okay, but do we need a new vehicle every year for?
Then why would it be general government?
Yeah.
That would be for the planning department, not general government. That's furniture. I get it. You know, you got a pot, but you're not just gonna buy cars 'cause you got money in the pot. You know, that to me, I I don't think it's a general government classification in my perspective.
I agree.
I agree.
The other thing is um it would be replacing a two thousand seven uh Ford Ranger vehicle.
Not against that. I'm speaking about the classification.
I think again, if I may, it 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 goes to the to the difficulty we're having given the constraints on C N R fund. And 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 so you're starting to 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 get this in front of you more uh began last year, now again this year as as we have more needs than we can fund. We're sharply limiting C I P, met the 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 board of finance guidance, working hard to get the mill rate down. This is an O seven vehicle that needs to be replaced. It was in C N R. There wasn't broad consensus. But but in fairness, Wendy, the those who scored it didn't cut it. It was split two-two. So there were two of you that were that ranked it high enough to get into C N R and two of you who didn't. I it was, as Melissa says, one of three items that there wasn't consensus about. What we had done when you scored C N R was if there was consensus, it's in. If there's if there's a real need from staff, it's in. And that's why our funding request for C N R is approximately one point one million, subject to your approval and the board of finances approval. If there were three items that we really, really needed, we couldn't get into C N R and still satisfy the consensus picks of this board. They were forced down because there wasn't a consensus among you. Uh we think that collaboration works both ways. And if you knew that it was a real priority, and I think one of you mentioned this, that the problem with the scoring was that you didn't know what are, it was Diana, I can see you're nodding. So we're this was the first year we scored together and you know, there's a little bit of a learning process there. But what we can convey is that your priorities forced a few things below the lines that were priorities to the staff. It forced some things under the line that weren't priorities to staff and we're not even talking about them. They didn't make it because you don't want them and we don't need them. But those three items, we do need surely. It's an O seven vehicle, needs to be replaced. And right now, we either do it in C N R or we do it in operating.
So so I would I would, you wanna go?
Sorry.
Um but if you do it in operating, that gives the impression that it's an annual need and that's.
Well, you know, when you do, uh most municipalities have a fleet management system, you know, P D does and it works very well. You know, just to say that uh it it would not be strategic to take a look at what are your vehicle needs organizational-wise. It doesn't have to be every year. It could be every other year. But the point is is that without clear guidance on on C N R, we can't create that strategic fleet management plan. I don't have the discretion with respect to C N R funding, but but the the charter allows us to submit the town manager budget and to give you our priorities. And I really have more strength to do that in operating than I do in C N R because I don't know from one year to the next, right now, the guidance is four hundred and sixteen thousand subject to uh the board of finance saying you could use more in from your cash reserves and and that's what happened last year. That's what we hope happens this year. Um so w- we we respectfully requested it not be cut, but we understood that this board has difficult decisions to make, just like we did, so we we respect that decision.
I I would like to suggest we take it out of operating and then revisit it in the C N R. If it's because we don't know if it's recurring.
I think it's one. And it's not.
Can I just make one other um point on this? So the police admin vehicles that we had budgeted, those were in operating for several years now. We had put them in operating. And this is what this is pulling from. So typically in operating is two admin vehicles. The chief said, I don't need a vehicle this year. So we've reallocated it to the general line regardless of what department's gonna get the vehicle. Um but next year, the chief is gonna need that admin vehicle back. So it'll give you savings this year, but you're creating a cliff for next year.
So you're saying this.
Yeah, if you cut it.
You're saying this will go away next year 'cause it will be in the police budget?
We'll go back to the police budget.
Goes back.
We go back to the police.
It'll be double next year. I think is what you're saying.
Right.
They're they'll need to.
Need to, yeah.
Right, exactly.
That being said.
So the add is technically next year. This is a reallocation in this year.
In transparency though, from my vantage point only, I feel like C N R is C N R, where vehicles for the most part are. Other than the force which like go through vehicles like clothes, rightfully so. This is more of a nuance of it's a non-recurring capital expenditure. I don't fully understand. And if it was going to be a department, I still don't understand the logic of the furniture. I do. But if we need to plan a department vehicle, put it in there. And on the same token, when your family didn't have a great year, you don't buy your new car that year. And I know that the car's gonna be more next year, but those are the hard choices. We're hoping next year is a little different than this year, but this year is this year.
So just on that C N R, you're correct. It is C N R. It's just the funding source. So the funding source for this particular C N R, for the police admin vehicle, is the operating budget. But it is in C N R. It's a vehicle. It gets tracked in C N R. It's in the C N R fund when we expense it, things of that nature. Um the general government, I think, was just a way of we have a long-term dream of having pool vehicles. where all of our vehicles are not allocated by department, they're all split between the departments and shared between the departments and I think that's how it ended up in general government. But to your point, yes, this one would be used for planning and we could move it to the planning budget.
My long-term dream is you use Uber.
Um fair enough.
Can I just, I know we're, I don't wanna jump to police, but if I go to police admin vehicles, that goes up, didn't you just say this was a reallocation of that money?
It is.
So this is going up eighty thousand dollars transferring it to C N R?
Oh, well, there's there. I if that is, it's because there's two lines, one is for the police cruisers that we fund every year through operating and then the other line below it
Okay.
or above it, I'm sorry, um is for the admin vehicles and there's a chance that.
Oh, I see it, I see it.
Um.
C N R police vehicles, the subtracting the fifty four seven seventy two, so you're saying that's this?
Yeah. Right.
Yeah.
Correct.
So why is it a a a pickup truck or something instead of like a Honda Civic, it's just a building's vehicle?
What what one is?
I don't know.
So that that would be my ask, uh the reclass is I'd be wanting to entertain, I don't have any problem with that. It also doesn't not fit uh here in my mind only because what they said is a long-term plan could be to to share it and even if we bought it knowing that it was for uh buildings now, uh yeah, that could change, you know, in a future year, but I I'd be wondering about uh use case to the vehicle and the the cost, I think we could probably um maybe not in half, but but reduce that by quite a bit if we right-size the actual vehicle based on its use. If they needed to load a bunch of stuff in the back of a truck for some reason, but that's not what I'm understanding that function is. They just need to get from one place to another and not use a P O V while they're doing it for all sorts of liability reasons, so I understand that. So I think you could probably reduce this line and then reclass if we need to.
To put it to the planning.
Sure, I I would take it down to thirty and put it where you want, it doesn't it doesn't bother me to stay here though.
Or C N R.
If it goes in planning, that means planning, it looks like planning is getting a vehicle every year, doesn't it?
No, I don't think so, I think you can put it here and then zero fund down.
Okay.
A one ton.
This is the shares budget, yeah, that would be an addendum.
Yeah, right, okay.
But they don't, do they have a vehicle line item? I don't know.
That's why we liked it in non-government, it would be a shared vehicle.
Thank you.
You have another question.
Okay, me too, but go ahead, you can go.
Um gas went up thirty four percent in uh general government. Um I understand public works and even Parks and Rec uses a ton of gas, why is general government's gas going up thirty four percent?
I need a new car.
Each other's.
Hopefully it would be more energy efficient. Boy, I stumped him.
That's unlikely, Steve.
We'll 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 just see what comes out.
We'll circle back to that one.
We're even on that one.
We'll uh we'll take a look.
We don't know who came up with that number.
We know electric went up seventeen percent, we'll we'll get on that.
Yeah, arguing that one.
But people can tell, this is gonna be a long night, so.
Good good question.
Um I have a question on the, I have a really a question and a need for the contingency line item, I did ask that in my questions because it's a kind of a conglomerate of a bunch of items.
Yeah.
Um and I feel like it's just baking in an allowance for twenty two K in general government that can be used for multiple things. I also asked that the first selectman stipend be moved back to the board of selectmen, is it in the board of selectmen budget?
No, but it should be, half of it is.
Where did you?
Half of it is.
Yeah, the ha- it should be moved back to that regardless of whether we vote on it or not
Half for July through December.
at the organizational meeting, in the last three, four budgets, it's always shown as ten and to me, it gives the illusion to the public that we may be cutting the board of so the the first selectman stipend at the organizational meeting, which I don't feel is gonna happen. Um whoever that person is, I'm just gonna say right now, I I just think that that should stay where it was just for public's appearance and and I would like to just get rid of the twenty two thousand in contingency. Um I I just feel like it's just an un.
The whole twenty two, just so I follow?
Can you explain the contingency?
Yeah.
Like why do you need it?
Yeah.
Well, I could explain that what the first selectman's referring to on the five thousand, so that the the first selectman stipend is ten thousand. Uh but because the term straddles the fiscal year, there has to be another vote of the board of selectmen relative to that. Uh so we we treated it the same thing we do with with other salaries, we put it in contingency. Because it's uh you know, like in the budget in front of you is the the G W I increases for staff and all of that compensation uh is subject to uh the 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 board's vote, so it goes in contingency. I I I think with respect to the rest of the twenty two, I'll defer to Melissa.
Sure, um so when we were going through our departmental reviews um this budget season, there are a few items in various departments that um could be better char- characterized under contingency, um one of which was the the blight remediation costs that we had budgeted in the planning department. Um this is something that we would date, we would keep, uh we were just trying to show it somewhere that would that would make more sense. Um another one was um plan review that the building department has in their budget for two thousand dollars, this is um sort of an as-needed item and then the fourth item, if we're adding them all up, including the first selectman stipend, was ten thousand dollars um in the police department. Um this is an operating cost related to a software that we're anticipating grant funding for, but have not yet received the grant. Um so really, this was just a reallocation of items that we thought that are made sense under contingency.
The last one I agree with.
I E. we might not need it, so.
I was gonna say, if we're if we.
That one makes sense to be called contingency, but if two K is for planning,
What if we're getting?
Yeah.
Isn't that planning? I mean, it's not like you said planning or, you said planning, period, to my understanding. So I don't understand why that would be in contingency under general gov, unless this is gonna ease be make it easier to reallocate year-end savings. If that is objective, then at least I understand it, otherwise I don't understand, it's almost the reverse of transparency, it's clouding. And the remediation cost, we didn't get a dollar number, you went through the dollar numbers, can you clarify what the remediation cost estimate is?
Oh, I'm sorry, that was.
Yeah.
Sure, that was five thousand, which we typically budget under planning.
And the selectman, I believe you referenced ten thousand, but isn't it five thousand of the ten thousand that's in contingency?
It's five, yeah.
Yeah, so it's five for that, five for that, two ten.
Yeah, that's, I'm making sure, okay, that was my understanding too, was it's five, so that's seven.
Oh.
Five, five, two.
And twelve.
A ten was the police department item.
A ten.
Two.
Twenty two.
I have it right in front of me because Melissa gave me all those answers, so.
Five, five, two, ten.
And the five for the first selectmen budget is for the second half of.
I still, this is supposed to be what we expect. We expect to spend that stipend, that's not really contingency like we applied for a grant for the first selectman stipend and we might get it. We know we're much, much, much more like than likely, so I would not consider something with those odds to be considered contingent. Um remediation cost, just from my own knowledge, it's not really a question. What might fall into this kind of category that we would need to remediate for five thousand, 'cause anything I've remediated had five digits, not four. So what would you remediate for five thousand dollars?
We, I I know there was one case, I believe last year where it was a blight case that the town had to enter the property to clean it up um after after the enforcement process.
But this is our budget, are we do does our track record show that typically we spend five thousand dollars? 'Cause I know which property you're talking about and it took forever for us to get in there.
Right, right, I don't believe this is a reoccurring expense.
So.
It's a one-off, it's it's a one-off.
So it would fall in contingency then, I I do understand contingency being utilized.
Another example.
But we don't spend it though, then this money can be used for anything else.
I agree, it is a gray area and it's.
It is, another example might be if if the town's gotta go in and fence up a building, for example, that that a fire or something and the owner
And and.
didn't have insurance or whatever, I mean, you know, it with any step that we have to take. It makes sense to me that that would be in contingency, I agree with you, it probably should be more than five thousand because one event could be five figures and and I totally agree with you there. Um the question was, are we spending it every year? No, so you know. We we wanted to try to show what should be in contingency in contingency, we wanted to show what should be non-departmental in in uh intergovernmental
Okay.
uh so that the budget was clear that these are not routine and normal uh expenses that you would see every year.
Also, um just consideration, we don't actually charge a contingency line, like you did your mid-year transfers at like at your last meeting
Yep.
and the contingency line is moved out to the actual departments. So when that money's ready to be spent, it will be moved out to those actual departments, so you will see it via the transfers. The what Melissa went through is how we came up with the number, but if any of those things aren't needed during the year, like the blight and radiation, for example, we're in February, nothing nothing's coming down the pike, but yet we have an emergency repair for something else and we would use it for that. You all would see it during the mid-year transfers of wherever it's being allocated, 'cause we don't charge that line item directly.
So I guess that's that's the question, are are and we're getting in the weeds because of the the numbers that we're facing. The twenty two thousand dollars though is part of the mill rate calculation, correct? So we're charging for something that we don't know if we need, correct? And that's my, that's where I'm asking, why do we need the line item? If there may be savings in planning for the five thousand dollar remediation, like and we did this year a mid year transfer in between the the, you know, savings from the department.
It's just broken out this year, those items have been in other line items in prior years. Um they're just not guaranteed, that's why we put in general government in contingency so that if that department does not need it, we're not just putting the money into savings, another department that has an emergency or a one-off or things of that nature can utilize those funds.
So like we did with the employee benefits or whatever we did at the mid-year, we had this bucket of money that we used.
Right, exactly.
My earlier point, if I could just reiterate this, 'cause it's important year over year, you know, it's not just the budget for this year, but incremental changes make your budget process better over three, five and even ten years. And what I wanted to do is, you know, throw the curtain back on some of these things and get them out of there so that you can better analyze what the department is actually doing, actually spending and actually needs. So we're we, you know, we spent a lot of time looking at lines where we were underspent, the 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 rare lines when we're overspent. But in the middle of that are lines that should be in contingency or should be cut or should be moved to H R where we have better control over the use of those funds. And and that was really one of the key principles of the budget. Not so much just the dollars, but how are we reflecting where the dollars are? Uh and again, you wanna make your departments as transparent as you can and that's about getting some of the things out there that the department has no no discretion over, if that contingency actually happens, you know, that risk is what you're budgeting for. So I would just close by saying on this, that if you eliminate it, you're eliminating contingency, you you we have nothing there if that event happens, if there's a risk. And just like any project that that D P W or any other department runs, you 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 know, you factor in some contingency. So as we look to make cuts, you know, we didn't move it to contingency to point out that we might never need it. Um we haven't needed many of the things that have been budgeted, that's why we had a five point nine million dollar surplus last year. But moving these things to contingency shouldn't signal to the board, I think that they are the the first things you should look at to cut. Not saying you don't cut them, but the fact that we put them in contingency shouldn't shouldn't make you think that.
Well, I.
Right, um I still.
I have a question.
On my list.
Sorry, if I may, the gas line, um there's an Excel error, so it should have stayed flat at fourteen seven.
Which page was that?
Uh that's general government, which page are you, yeah, that one.
Oh.
It was the one that Steve stumped us on.
Yes. Yes.
Yeah, the one that.
Steve, you found five thousand.
Yeah.
Nice.
Ching.
Jamie.
Fourteen.
We're all set, yeah.
I put it on that checklist.
That's a lot of Uber, Steve.
Okay, so we got, so we got something going for us here.
Zero percent, okay.
It was good, um. Yeah, I just don't, I still, I still would like to move the five thousand dollar back to the first selectman line item for transparency
I might say that would further down in the general funds.
Absolutely.
Um um.
Firmly.
In our budget, just.
I have a question for you guys on uh dues and subscriptions, um I see you moved thirty seven to fifty from the board of selectmen
Well, we, they'll do that.
budget into this dues and subscri- subscriptions, why don't we spend thirty seven to fifty on free dues and subscriptions?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that, those ones exactly are uh C C M, uh so we don't remember dues for that.
Yeah.
All right, right.
Real, right?
Yep, council of small towns, so C T cost and then um CROG we pay for as well.
It what, just quick, why was it moved from board of selectmen to here? Curious.
So we can better track all of our subscriptions, it's it's it.
Okay.
And really, it shouldn't be in your budget, you're you're all attending these things hopefully and enjoying the their benefits.
I somewhat, um okay, so I but still have a few questions on here, could maybe come back to.
Do you wanna just do it, so we keep them forward and back on?
Keep going, is that what you're saying, or do the, no, I don't have any more questions, but I, well, we we we, well, let's summarize what we said we were gonna do here, right?
Yeah, I'm, yeah, we'll clean it up. I think that would be smart to recap, so we're all on the same page.
Okay. Um the forty four, the we're gonna get a cheaper car, I believe.
Thirty, we heard.
Change it to thirty, right?
Yeah, ten, so we ten, ten down, moving into planning, so ten off a general government vehicle, moving into planning under thirty thousand.
Are we moving it in planning?
Yeah, that's fine.
So I never, no.
That's what you could want.
We're fourteen, no. Get fourteen on.
Unless there's other specialization, I'm not aware of, but it seems reasonable.
It's your car, is there anything else to say?
You said fourteen thousand or thirty thousand?
Thirty.
Thirty, we're taking, we're we're making fourteen off, yeah, from forty four to thirty.
Thirty thousand, we're cutting fourteen.
Oh, okay.
You were.
Can you take my assist?
You're not getting other seats. You're not getting other seats.
Actual's gotta use Volvo.
Mine was fun.
I thirty, I think that's above my, I, yeah, that's fine.
Okay, so so we're doing.
Some of it runs in.
Do that, we have the five thousand dollar fix that Steve's gonna found.
On gasoline, but there's also the five K on furniture.
Okay.
Did anyone have anything to say on that or are we good with it? I mean, I I'm okay with it.
I'm fine with it, I'm fine with it.
Yeah, I'm fine with it.
I I just, I don't know what it is that needs to be replaced or or how you came up with the figure and all that and and uh
Yeah, yeah.
I've seen offices done for, you know, that and not done for that, so I don't I don't I don't know how you came up with the figure and what it'll fund, so.
It it was it was uh much less than we needed, but a number that I thought might get support, you know, so we got we we gotta start somewhere. It was more that we got something in there.
And the rest will pull from contingency, so.
And we appreciate the support, thank you.
You wanna make it four?
No, I I I it's maybe we can come back to it if we're really hitting on that, you know, point zero one on the mill rate or something, but no, I'm fine.
It does, it's like.
We're trying to.
Okay, and I have a question just in general on conferences and education.
Yeah.
We're, wait, no, I'm kidding, we're, is it, is it here, or you're just, okay, good.
Mm. For video? Yeah.
Yeah, well, it's just, it's just the overall under page thirty one, under the.
Oh, she's jumping.
Is this under general, uh Hunter?
Thirty one.
Sucker.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
But it is, okay.
If actual was a hundred and forty three thousand in twenty twenty four and the estimate for twenty five is a hundred and seventy one thousand, then why are we budgeting two hundred and seven thousand? Again, so we budgeted in twenty twenty five, two hundred and seventeen thousand.
Can I see it?
Yeah.
At a girl.
Here.
But
Right here.
The estimate that we're going to spend this year is one seventy one, so this year we're budgeting two oh seven, but.
She's talking about this.
Yeah.
So you're budgeting nine thousand dollars less or ten thousand, but why wouldn't we budget much less than that when we have that set?
Two seventy.
What budget are you on, Heather?
She's on thirty, what page?
Page thirty one.
Thirty one, under general fund expenditures and revenue summaries.
Thirty one.
It's like the fourth line from the bottom.
I'll defer to staff on this, but I think the quick answer is there were a number of vacant positions in that one, some of the training didn't happen, but uh
Don't move all the training too, uh H R.
I don't wanna get out front of the team on this.
Well, so if I'm not mistaken, you said that the things that are in here and not H R
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking, I need to go to the show.
Are like certification and stuff, so
Yeah, yeah, no, I.
how did we not have staff that need to take their educational certification courses?
Uh I'm I'm talking about the total, the global numbers, Steve, not that number, but I'll I'll defer to Melissa and and maybe.
It's a. Tom, Tom.
I think Heather's on a line item, right?
Age. Thirty one, right.
Yeah, but you're on a total, you're on the total page, so Heather jumped around.
The total. I'm on the total.
Yeah.
She 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 changed page, yeah.
But the reason I put the totals, 'cause we were talking about it here.
Yeah.
Okay, got you.
That's okay.
And so just curious, it's true.
Well, there I have, there's other general training and conferences.
Yeah.
I thought.
Alright. Yeah, so.
She moved up this.
We can, we can go back, we can come back to it.
No, that's not, I mean.
You scared me.
So that 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 number's gonna be a harder one to reference back to because you're on page thirty one, which is a summary. Um and it rolls up by sort of expense type, so that conferences and education line is actually a rollup of
Right.
more than just the training and conferences, it's travel, it's mileage, it's um I believe some dues and subscriptions. So what you, what you're referencing is actually like a summary that we sort of just categorize the expense types. And I understand that, but my question is, because it ties in to the smaller line items and all the different departments.
Right.
And if if twenty twenty four, we spent, like we're giving the impression that we're cutting it by ten thousand dollars, but at the end of the day, we spent a hundred and forty three thousand twenty twenty four. We budgeted two seventeen this year and are looking to spend one seventy one, so why are we budgeting two hundred and seven this year?
It's a deficit to forty six thousand dollars.
Right, right, like that's. It should be less.
Well, we should budget forty six plus.
Yeah, so we've had some departments that haven't been full-staffed in years, so they haven't been able to go, so it's been it's budgeted for them to go fully, but then they just haven't been full-staffed, so it's a more of an anticipation and hope to know.
From from, uh from my point of view, I I I think you're absolutely right and that's why moving them all to H R will allow me to get a better handle on this, but but one of the answers was we've got vacant positions, another answer was they they weren't, people didn't go. I I I don't really understand it myself, moving it all to H R should get it uh clarified for me in in terms of exactly what it is, but your point, how to make sure I understand it is that we cut. we cut against the budgeted amount, not the actual amount, is am I understanding that correctly?
Yeah, so I guess if you're moving it all to one department to get your head around it,
Right.
Right.
why are we giving it such a big budget compared to what we've actually spent the past two years?
Our intent was to give it a lower budget than we budgeted in the past.
But you should give it even lower, in my opinion.
Well, that and and I don't disagree with that necessarily, but just because we didn't spend it, I don't know that I wouldn't need to spend it in the in the following year. It's been across all the departments, so we haven't done the analysis to figure out exactly where where that is or how much we could cut. But I agree with you in principle, it could probably could be cut more.
Can I, yeah, so I wanna just jump around, um so for I have this on my H R question list and I have asked Amy because and uh Melissa and we'll I think H R's soon, isn't it?
It's next.
It's next.
Okay. Um but but I think the confusion here is if you're saying this conferences and education roll-up includes more than what it's labeled as.
That particular one does, yes, so I think this conversation is probably better suited towards the bucket that's under H R, because that's truly the conferences number.
Yeah, but Yeah, yeah, but I'm just saying, can we relabel this or show somewhere that that means more than just conferences, training, and you you said it included some other stuff, and I think
It does, and all of those categories do, so page thirty-one, all of those are a roll-up.
It includes training.
Oh, oh, okay. Okay, so let's larger expense types. Mm-hmm, okay. So so it's not as, it's not really represent representative of what's really underneath, it's just a high level.
Yeah, it it, yeah, it's a roll-up for, you know, just putting things in big buckets.
Okay.
No, but
I get your point.
I think that we're over-budgeting, it's still down.
Well, I'm gonna cut, I was gonna do some cutting when we
We just need to find where it is.
get to H R, make some cuts.
I think Lisa said, how do H R leave library alone?
Absolutely.
Siri said I can't help you with that.
Okay, so let's just, we didn't fit, it said the summary, thirty K vehicle to planning.
Right.
Correct, for one year, we're just saying that that's a one year, it won't revisit next year.
Right.
Um we're moving five K stipend to wherever that was, for selectmen.
For selectmen, B L S.
And everyone's saying to leave the twenty-two K as is, the rest
Well, no, it would be reduced by the five K.
I know, I can, I seventeen, I can, I can do that, but you're saying to, I originally was gonna get rid of it, you're saying we need it.
Seventeen.
We're you're thinking we need to keep that there, is what I'm hearing from people and from the staff.
Well, yeah, so I don't understand my own notes, I apologize, two thousand says planning. What was two thousand to planning, that's in contingency?
I could tell you, it's in
Specialized plan review for bit for building department.
It's still
I'm sorry, specialized plan.
It's right here, specialized plan review.
Specialized plan.
For building.
Previously budgeted in budget got moved here. Call handling software operating costs, ten thousand dollar police deployment department moved here pending a grant approval.
I agree with that. So what's a specialized plan review, I apologize, I just wanna understand for for two thousand dollars?
I would have to check on that.
So I I believe I if I remember correctly, it's for if our building official, if there's a like a larger development coming in and they need something, they're not like an expert they need to call with assistance.
And how often does that happen, cause I think we do have a line item in planning for consult consulting.
Um that since I've been in the town and it could have been when we were short-staffed years ago, which is
So Yeah, but we got you now, we're all set.
Yeah, right, right.
I I also propose we cut that and we go with the fifteen K contingency.
For the police, you're saying, and
It would be ten police and five for the blight and remediation cost, which is a a valid to me.
And and the other
Okay, I'm 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 fine with that, cause I was gonna go twenty-two, so
Contingency.
People are
So there the contractual services and um planning and development looks like it's not there, is that
It was moved from the building to this contingency.
So is that what you were saying, that you were hoping it would stay there, so would you like to move it from there back into contractual services, Steve, or you're saying to eliminate it altogether?
No, I'm in con- hold on. I'm in contingency, they have it in contingency, it's almost like it's double built, not to say it's
No, I I think that they took it out here, it says it says minus two thousand and uh contractual services.
They took it out of
Oh, now, but in general government, we also have contractual services, that's why
Right.
That's an additional, yeah, that's a different. I'm not smart enough to know whether or not it's better to have that in there, just in case, uh on contractual services, um I I'm I'm I'd be okay with removing it if we felt like most responsible.
Well I think remove it.
Okay.
Brittany acknowledged, and I don't mean to throw you under the bus, but welcome, I'm usually under it, um
Yeah.
She doesn't remember using it in the recent past, so I, you know, you you want contingency, but that's
So are we just leaving the ten K for the police?
Oh, you went down to ten.
Well, you said that
Ten and the five.
I I was at fifteen
Okay.
for a contingency, but I am open to other people's input, obviously.
I'm just trying to find places we can make some reductions and if there's inter-departmental savings, then we'll have to use those mid-year.
So I think our question is on these on these issues, we need additional justification if you needed it back in, but we're down to fifteen on contingency.
Right.
Okay.
But staff can live with that.
Right.
Okay, fifteen contingency.
Okay.
Live with you on that board.
Thirty on the K, car moving out of here.
Shall we bring up the gasoline a five again?
Thank you.
I'll blame you when you were
And the gasoline a five that Steve found.
Very much, Steve, take the win and run.
Yes. So we're at, I think we're at twenty-one right now.
Okay.
Right, and and we've got you checked.
Got all those notes, Tom?
We're good.
Okay, we're moving on, we're really moving along here, um we're we're now we're on H R. Um so I'm gonna open that up to questions, and I'd like to start with the training budget, because Melissa was very good in answering my questions. Um because I was, we had split out training to a new line item and then and and that was by department. Consolidated the conferences and education under H R so that H R can use that money as needed by the departments for those things. Um and the total was a hundred and fifteen, so to me, that looks like a large total when I add up the conferences and education of seventy-one, two forty-eight, plus forty-four, seven oh five for training. It's a hundred and fifteen, oh, a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars for the year for conferences, training and education, and I feel like that's very high. Even though it appears to be less than, I had asked Melissa, but I I figured I could add it myself. It'll be a little less than last year, but the appearance was that we were cutting it and consolidating it so that we could use it appropriately, so I feel that number needs to get cut. Is is where I am. I I don't know how many conferences and and training, I took out at least twenty thousand dollars. I don't know if anybody has any figures there, but I and and you guys can justify the need for more, I would take out more, but I I don't have the details behind it. Um last year, what was it, like over a hundred and thirty-five thousand, and did we use all of that?
No.
How much did we have left?
How much did we use?
Oh yes, how much did you left?
That was a good question.
Yeah, yeah.
I I'm in preparing for this particular question. It's difficult to compare the current year to what we're proposing for twenty-six, because this was the first year that we truly did sort of a zero-based budgeting approach with this particular line item, because this was the first time we had departments detail what is specifically for training, for things that are required for certifications versus true conferences, professional development opportunities, the things that we we need and want to do but don't always use due to staff vacancies and things like that.
Mm-hmm.
So we have the a clean breakout of training versus conferences for twenty-six, but the number for the current year, I mean, I know what we've budgeted and what we've spent, but we don't know how to compare that to what we're asking for for training and conferences separately, um.
Which if I can just jump in, it it was a perpetual problem, so every year, this was what was happening. And now we're actually already, even though we haven't adopted the budget, able to have a very worthwhile conversation, because we believe that those lines have probably been continually over budgeted. But we haven't had the chance, we we need one year of actuals under the the new proposal, to understand and work with each department and make sure that we're not hurting them. And this was the cut to the budgeted number that we were safe, you know, imagine you're, you know, going in with cancer surgery, you don't wanna get any any more than you have to get to get it all out. And and we moved it all in and we've spent a lot of time looking at it. If I had to guess, every year, you're gonna see us bringing it down a little bit as we get a handle on it. I'm not gonna defend your, if if the board wants to cut deeper now, I don't have the analysis done to to defend it, so I I can't sit here and defend it.
It offsets your line item with page thirty-one.
But I think Heather is absolutely right, and it looks to us that you could cut it more, we just didn't wanna cut it too deeply. But I would like to point out to the board that staff's done a great job w- w- with H R in in getting it rolled up. We've also had a lot of conversations with department heads who some raised the issue of, well, what if there isn't enough, and I and my my conference comes at the end of the fiscal year and and all the money's gone. And we assured them, that's not gonna happen, because we can see the the roll-up is underspent year after year. We just didn't wanna cut it all at once, but we're moving in that direction.
Anybody?
Was your proposal twenty?
Twenty. Yeah.
Yeah, um one one follow, do we know how much of that is is for certifications?
Because I I wouldn't wanna cut something that's
In the train, that's in the training, that's
That's in the new, we made a new line for
So those are written, spunked out as training.
Yeah.
Training.
And it was important to break that out, Curtis, so that if you do cut it, you're not cutting the training, you're cutting the conference.
And that line item, it remained in each individual department
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
for training specifically.
So any evidence papers on that?
So not for the H R.
Twenty five.
If I could just add a bit of detail of this what it's if it's helpful, um the total asks from the departments, and this is not including the the what we the bucket we had under general government for the sort of leadership
Yeah.
The total asks from the departments was eighty-three thousand two hundred, um and we cut ten thousand three hundred from that, which is about twelve percent.
Yeah.
So we did, we, you know, we sort of took a first client.
And and we also cut the leadership retreat, which was part of this discussion, I know that's a separate line, but that was another five-figure number that we cut. So we're not doing the leadership retreat, and we did cut the ten plus from from conferences and the roll-up was appropriate, so just uh if you could be guided by what we cut already, I
Yeah, if you twenty, I I saw that Melissa gave me that number, I'm trying to give Melissa credit, cause she's the answer to all these questions. Um I I still feel in this budget cycle, and I I don't wanna dismiss our staff by taking away these opportunities, but the key training will still be there. And the bucket for conferences and education will still be there, and hopefully the the people that need it the most will get to go to those conferences and bring back stuff to the town, and then we'll see where we are next year, and if and and this way you can judge where we are, right?
Thank you.
So I'm going twenty.
Uh you're going, you're taking twenty away, or you're going down to twenty?
I'm taking away twenty thousand dollars out of the H R, um
Conferences and education, right, so it's down to fifty-one?
Yes.
To fifty-one.
Fifty-one, two forty-eight.
The, so the travel line in here is is five hundred. And there's um and I so can you help me with that, are these all virtual, are they in Connecticut, uh or are they billing into their own department if they're traveling?
Travel's mileage reimbursement, um so if they don't have a department vehicle, they get to reimburse for mileage in their own personal vehicle.
True.
So yes, what your the second part of your response was accurate, it's in each individual department for the travel costs associated and
Okay. Right, and now these are like the registration fees or something else, okay.
I did have a, I I I had another question.
Were you agreeing on the twenty then?
I I'm I'm okay.
Yes. Twenty?
Yeah.
Okay, twenty, okay, um the I had the question on the H R, the software, so this is on my other list, so the software of nineteen thousand dollars, um it's not on C N R, so I did ask Melissa the question. Um and she explained to me that this is the regular annual cost for Neo-Gov, which is a new software product for the town that we've talked about only in personnel subcommittee. Um I don't know if the rest of the board knows much about that product. Um so that would be helpful to the board, unless it's in here somewhere, and that the remaining ten-one is a one-time cost to implement a module, which I don't think should be in the operating if it's a one-time cost.
Yeah, so um I can take it and then Eric, if I misspeak. Um so yeah, so it's ninety-one hundred for the one-time implementation fee. The ten, the rest of the ten thousand one hundred is a thousand dollar training um to kind of train us and also supervisors on our current system um as a way to kind of keep getting the most out of it with reporting processes. Um basically maximizing our current operating system that we have for that one. Um and then that's the annual, we pay a subscription every year for our, if you wanna apply for a job in town, you go to that, we pay an annual fee for that based on the amount of employees we have with the town.
So
The fee.
What?
What is the annual fee?
That's the sixty-eight hundred.
Yes, it's in, oh, it's in the, it's in Melissa's notes, such
Okay.
I'm giving you, it's right in front of my face, Melissa. Um yeah, sixty-eight hundred is for the annual cost of Neo-Gov, so that's a recurring cost, right?
Mm-hmm.
And um again, it would be good for the board to know what Neo-Gov is going to be and how we're gonna use it, because we talked about it in pers- yeah.
Mm-hmm, so. Oh, sorry.
No, I was just gonna say, it only came up in personnel that it would be coming back to us to see what it was and if we wanted to approve it, so I think we would need to have a little insight into it tonight.
So the um computer software line up there, I believe, or contractual service, one of them, so there's two, right now, we have currently, this year it's like sixty-six hundred, next year proposed sixty-eight hundred for the, you wanna apply for a job in town and we advertise you, the application tracking software. There's reporting structures in there that we just don't take a use of, and we should, so that's what that one thousand training is. Um but there's also an additional software package for our performance management, that personal sub has been asking us to look at. Um and that is that ninety-one hundred one-time implementation fee, as well as having the built-in annual fee for that one.
I mean
Ben, was anything, Eric?
No, yeah, yes, three platforms, one of the things that we're went working on just for purposes of budget, we need to come in, what we knew in terms of the current costs, what looks like every other vendor right now, we're starting to work with them and their price structure changing, we're kind of working along with that. Um the uh three platforms we're referring to, the first one
That's
when we currently have, really supports all of our recruiting.
I like it.
That system has been in place for the last fourteen years or so, probably longer than that. And uh the training that we're referring to is getting everyone trained that way, when we dress on, also for our supervisors. As we start to look at including those processes, we want to integrate our supervisors and our pens into that system to make things easier for them or easier for us. Um the govage, uh the government jobs, uh that's the lowest cost, it's around, they look between that's today's numbers, fifteen, seventeen hundred annually. And what that's getting us is better quality candidates. Right now, whenever we send anything out, we're getting uh uh you know, seventy-five percent of what we get are
A lot.
unqualified candidates for any of our positions. This will uh drive us down and target individuals that are currently in the useful space, they'll improve our pool and get us better qualified
One of those two.
employees. And then the performance management, this is probably the most important case, and um this is where performance management, as we move toward looking at performance management mod uh models for the staff overall. Also along with how we are able to move to online systems and online online ways to manage staff overall. Coaching council systems, how we handle any of our disciplinary issues, that whole system is what we're referring to.
One question in general on the computer software, because a number of these departments, um have a fifty percent increase, some with thirty-four percent increase in computer software. Um are there any sort of ways to find synergies in a system, um or is there an overall town management system out there?
Yeah, so yes and no, there there there's always efficiencies there, and I think, you know, sometimes and thank you and and to uh all of you that supported the uh upgrade to the website, cause had some conversations with Mr. Pizzano, our I T director, about this, you know, again, kinda like the training. Get get all of these out of the, if if you can, the the independent software and the annual fees, move them out of the departments, get them in I T so we can all focus and understand, because you can't find synergies, I at least I I have trouble looking at them across cross-departmentally, like cross-sectionally. But if you get them all in I T, it's a lot easier to see if there's overlaps, or if some of them, I mean, I found one when I was in Poughkeepsie, it was extraordinary. It were, there were two vendors, we didn't know it till we got them all in I T, they were owned by the same parent company. And we could have been getting a twenty-five percent discount, but the two departments weren't talking to each other, it was that simple. So what I don't know tells me to your question, sweep it over here where we can do a better analysis, it may take two budget cycles to get there. But I can't sit here tonight and tell you that what you approved last year or the year before was well-spent. I think that we deferred a lot in I T, that's my sense, I've been here a year now. I think that what the decision boards have made has been, we can't afford it, cut it or move it out. And at at some point, you start paying a price for that, and we're kind of at that tipping point. So to Heather's question, I think it's important that we kind of do a top-up uh analysis rather than a uh or bottom-up analysis rather than a top-down analysis when it comes to the all these software programs. Uh we are, as you know, on Munis and Enterprise Systems. Uh, we are, as you know, on Munis, an enterprise system that we use across departments, so where we can use uh an enterprise system, we do. Uh, but there's a lot of these little quirks, you know, deep and time and attendance is a good example. You've got a different system out at the water treatment plant that's, you know, twenty years old and something else over here and you know, without an H R department, you you really couldn't centralize all of that, but probably next year, we couldn't do it this year. We're gonna come to the board for budget authority for a real time and attendance system that mark, you know, and and so all of these things are, we have pushed a lot out. Uh, but I T is certainly an area where we we have to do a lot of work. If that answers your question. I don't know if the team wants to add anything on that, but we did spend a good amount of time looking at the individual asks in the technology space.
So the more we use for outside vendors like this, I worry about since everything's cloud-based, you know, about increasing our third-party risk.
Yeah.
Um, you know, here too, so I don't know if that's included in your overall assessment or if the department even has time for that, but you know.
We're doing a cyber, I'm glad you raised that because we're doing a cyber risk uh assessment right now, we've got a uh outside vendor helping us with that. It's very important, all the department heads have already had their kickoff meetings with them, with that vendor, so have I. And one of the things that comes out of that is, you know, all of these that we're using and what that level of risk is as you potentially uh open yourselves up to others being able to access your systems through third-party vendors.
Yeah, duplication of data all over soon, right, I mean, that's.
Well, I you know, it's, uh, you know, access to sensitive information too is also a challenge, right? So any one of these ends up being a vector, you know, security risk and
Yeah.
um, wanna be aware of that.
Yep.
Good point. Target was hacked through their H VAC system, so.
That is weird.
Um, so back to the, so basically you're asking us to say okay to NeoGov, that that's the way where you wanna move forward. And um, I still wanna see what we do with that one-time fee and take that out of here, move it to, wouldn't that be in C N R?
Again, it would in, it if you know, that's 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 one of the recurring themes. If if you don't have enough in C N R, we did not think this would be approved in C N R, I'm just gonna be very candid. It had a better chance of slipping under the radar and operating, and that's why it's in operating.
But it's only one time, that's the question.
It it is, it is only one time, that's right.
My concern with these one-time and being put into the operating budget in different departments when really they should be in C N R is just all under the transparency.
I don't think that's necessarily true. One of the big advantages to C N R and and you know, I'm not the biggest fan because it isn't adequately funded. Not because the the reason it exists is wrong. C N R allows you to pay cash for non-recurring presumably capital, longer-lasting uh equipment, for example, and when you do that, you're sharply lowering your debt service cost. So anything that you pay cash for, whether it's in operating or C N R, the the point is is that it's not in C I P. And and so, really you see, and again, I I I come from a different state that has different financing um, sort of parameters, but I would say that the number one advantage to C N R is that you're paying cash for capital and reducing debt service cost. The secondary uh reason that you like it is because you can, financially you can exercise more control over your operating budget. Uh, if you say that it can't go in operating and it can go only in C N R, and then you restrict C N R, you you've in a roundabout way restricted and and limited your operating. What we're trying to do on the administrative side is okay, pick your pick your poison, we say to our legislative leaders, and we say, you know, we can restrict C I P to ten million every two years. We can do everything we can to get to a two or a two-five uh expense rate increase. But you gotta increase funding to C N R and you need to tell us, if you can, how much can we spend in C N R? Um, so this is a relatively small amount of money and I agree with the chair, Wendy, you know, put it in C N R. But don't cut it, I guess when when you see us.
Well, we could've cut it, but.
No, I know.
I, but the question though I would have for you then is, this is, this comes up every year, it's like, so say we leave it here with the note that it's a one-time, so next year, we don't pay for it again, right?
We budget, right.
How do we remember that and and then when we budget and we're looking at last year's budget to this year's budget, somebody's gonna have to acknowledge that that ten thousand needs to come out for twenty seven.
Well, you're 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 presupposing that the administration wouldn't do that.
I'm just saying, I, we don't remember, 'cause we went through this last year.
Yes, but but. You you don't. Okay. But but don't don't assume that we wouldn't make the cut or that we wouldn't realize that we don't need it a second time, because that's that's not a, that that that's not true.
Okay.
I'd also offer that that it's our job to ask the question whether or not we need it and whether or not you need a Ford truck or a
Or a run.
Honda Civic or whatever else it is. So I I think that we can, we could do that job here and, you know, philosophically, I don't agree, I disagree with Mark. Uh, C N R is a tool, but it's not a panacea.
Okay.
It allows us to to plan uh for these uh A U expenses, but we can, we can still put them other ways. Not every community uses a C N R profile. I think it's actually excellent that Simpsbury does, so it's not the only way to to fund it. So I I don't
Yeah.
if we're gonna move it from here to there just to say that we moved it, I don't necessarily know that I need to do that. If we were gonna fund it, if we're, if we don't think that it's worthwhile expense, then we should, we should have that discussion.
So we, we've only heard about the, was as Eric just said, in in H R, in a, not H R, in Personnel Subcommittee, the benefits of implementing
the performance management.
For the enterprise. Right, um, and that's what that's for. So if there's, I I I believe that that needs to happen from what we've experienced and knowing what needs to be done across the, you know, to to get everybody on the same performance management system and have a way to to do reviews, right, because G W Is are dependent on reviews being completed and if they're not done. So, so I don't have a problem, I don't think, I don't know any other costs though to compare this to. I don't know what other performance management tools cost. And I'm not planning to take the money out, I'm, I was planning to take it out so it's not on the taxpayer mill rate and that it's just a one-time cost, because we do have some reserves we can work with. But we haven't gotten there yet to see how much of the reserves we can use. So I don't know what I'm saying, I'm saying, I'm not n- cutting the ten K, I just don't know where the right place is for it.
Well, I think respectfully, you you you've pointed out my question and 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 I I feel that pain, because if you don't know how much you can use in reserves, the only thing you're, that you could do from my perspective is throw it in operating to s- to signal to the board that we really want it and we really need it. And I and I I I think, you know, a large number of of municipalities in the state and 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 around the region, I believe it's fair to say, use NeoGov and I know Eric has spoken to that in Personnel Sub about, you know, the benefits of the of the platform, so I guess all I could say is that our moving it to operating should be a signal that we really think it's necessary to have.
So did we put it all out to bid or do we know the comparables? Wendy, you were saying that
We we.
uh, in Personal Gov uh Sub, you haven't discussed comparables or?
No. No, we we, I mean, we brought it up because as we talked about the performance management for the town manager, if there was a tool that we could purchase and use in time to use it and this is when we first heard about it, but we didn't discuss it or approve it, we were told, so it sounds like we're approving it here, so it's set for the the the.
No, we we approve that there's a budget line for it.
The budget. True.
And I think the manager's gonna work within the budget that we set.
Okay.
To implement.
If it's not the right choice, I, okay.
Within the budget.
And I'm reminded that we save a little money by combining it with the current NeoGov project. Yeah, I'm reminded that one under the procurement limit, so we're okay if if the board approves.
Okay, so I guess it depends on.
I think we should leave it.
Yeah, I was gonna say, leave it, but have, make sure it's it's gone next year, that's all I can say.
I mean, uh, yeah.
We will.
Right, that's all. And I, I'm not saying I don't trust it, I'm saying I don't trust, you know, some things somewhere get
I agree with that.
the notes aren't there or we don't know or we don't remember, we've gone through that before, like last year.
We we are, I I did say this in the budget message, maybe it's a good time to say it now, and I know staff mentioned it, but we did use Z B B, we did use zero-based budgeting.
Okay.
Strategically in this budget, the first, I didn't do it last year, but I did commit to doing it this year. We couldn't do it organizational-wide, but we did it in some departments and we did it with respect to training and conferences when we took a a deep dive on that, but um next year, the plan is to use Z B B uh more widely.
Okay.
And when you're doing zero-based budgeting, you, that would eliminate that risk of that ten thousand somehow surviving.
Alright, okay. Let's move in. Okay.
And I'm on tape, so.
Alright, so we're moving on.
Uh, we we added no new positions, by the way, if you're running last year's case.
I remember.
Okay, so we, so we were, uh, H R, we're we're doing a, we're ten thousand, twenty thousand in the, that in the whatever keeping.
Thank you.
In the H R Conference and Education, yes.
Yeah, okay.
So we're forty one day, forty one K now.
Okay, now we're moving on to the, gotta line.
We're recording.
Okay, the board is stuck, and so basically this.
We we're done with legal, we're moving on from legal.
Oh, legal, I I just, yeah, we didn't get to legal.
Yeah, I'm on legal.
Oh, sorry, I.
It's next after H R.
Yeah, I know, I'm.
Well, you have nothing to do.
I'm not, I'm making sure that.
I have something for you.
Yes.
Okay, shoot.
But you, they said we're selectmen, so I said we have nothing.
Shoot. Well, the ten percent increase for labor relations. Um. Why?
So you, as you recall, back in your organization meeting last year, uh, so you guys went out to bid for labor. Um, the R P came back that hourly late, every kind of July, I believe, goes up five dollars an hour. Um, traditionally, we have, you'll see in F Y twenty-four, actual was fifty-three, two nine four. Um, and so just kind of traditionally, we have been over that based on things that have popped up.
Like, do we, with the skill that Mark has for labor relations and the team, do we need to use our labor attorney more? Is the question I would ask.
And also, do we have.
I I I don't think, I don't think so.
New negotiations coming up this year or?
We have five of our six contracts up in June.
Seems like we have.
Didn't we just do that?
It seems like every year we have all of them.
Well, we're caught up at the moment, you've got three pending, hopefully they'll be resolved soon. So, but the answer to your question is no, and in fact, we got the reverse question, I think recently, was was, you know, why not use the labor lawyer? We only use the labor lawyer in in at at the appropriate time during the negotiation, so we did strategically use uh Mr. Harrington um towards the later stages of I P P O, for example. But we didn't start with that, we only brought him in when they brought their lawyer. So we are being careful. I think what Tom is saying is is that we wanted to budget for a little bit more than what was spent last year. I don't think you could cut it, but if you wanted to hold it flat, I think you could, you could.
Do you need the five?
Yeah, I don't know.
He said you could hold it flat.
So he says we can take it, take out the five, so.
Okay, take out the five.
What's the five?
Okay.
Yep.
That was easy.
Minus five.
We're 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 agreeable with that, board, thank you.
Yes.
What, you're getting that one too? Are we keeping track of this?
I'm, I spoke up, I suppose.
I'm keeping track of what I cut one.
Antonio.
Okay, um, oh, this is always fun, the board of selectmen budget.
Alright, let's go.
Cut it.
I'm looking at like four different versions of the budget, one in the book, one online. Um, basically, it's the outs- the outside agency.
Well, the easy ones.
Yeah.
No, the selectmen.
Let's look for that. Oh, yeah, that's bummed out one, maybe.
Let's go to board of, what is this part-time?
I think we could put special activities further.
Right.
You've got something.
So, what, which one?
Special activities.
So your special activities currently are the Memorial Day Parade and then the Hometown Hero then.
But what, is the Memorial Day Parade always been under the board of selectmen? That's weird, but fine, I guess if that's where it's always been.
Yes.
Yeah, won't that be general?
We're gonna move it to contingency, but we knew it was actually gonna happen.
It's being made earlier though, it's at twelve thirty this year. Remember, and the board of selectmen's gonna have a float.
Yes. Woo-hoo.
Um.
So.
And we, I believe we did reduce the Hometown Hero a little bit, um.
Couple hundred bucks.
Couple hundred, let's.
Okay.
Um, we, you, I don't, we used to, we just tracking spend over years, we haven't used as much as budgeted, so we reduced it.
Cause now we're caught up on the plaques.
The three years of plaques have been paid for already, so we're caught, we're caught up.
Yeah.
So just put out there too, that this will be the two hundred and fiftieth for the nation and twenty-six.
Right. Kevin, yeah.
So July one will start a new fiscal year for us, so that'll be different for us for planning for, you know, next year, but this, you know, Memorial Day, all that first half of the year will be in the two hundred and fifty.
Budget.
And there is a budget, there is a
I mean, there's, there's a committee in play.
There's two thousand in here for that.
Yeah, I'm just throwing that out there though for consideration.
I know, it's hard to believe that.
Me, Monty.
That's a good point.
So.
Wouldn't, a quick question against for you advertising?
Re-advertising?
Or.
We have a little thirty percent.
So, yeah, we, that's the second budget mailer, um, that you guys are.
Yes, it's on the floor.
What is the part-time salaries and wages?
Uh, the commission clerk that does the minutes for your meetings.
Ah, okay, thank you.
And that's allocated to each department, right, here's, every, every department has their own.
Different, different boards should have their own.
Okay.
Thank you, I'm like.
Commission clerk.
Um.
Oh, for most boards, commission clerk.
Yes.
We could elect like best of eight, six, either.
Yeah, you could do it, Kevin. Um, I want to talk
Wait, like a second.
the, about the outside agency funding, 'cause that's always the fun thing to work on for the board.
Yeah.
Um, I I'm just gonna come right out and and I'm I'm not in favor of the five thousand dollars for the A B C House. Nor am I in favor of the stiffy money, fifty-seven fifty, um, I.
Correct. Robotics, ten thousand dollars.
Well, that's not added, that was.
Oh, that was cut, okay.
No, that wasn't included, but the those are, those are, you know, nonprofit agencies that can raise money outside of the board.
What's that?
Um, I don't.
Should we just go in order then?
Alright, go in order.
Get from the top and get a consensus?
Who's going to?
Well, some of them though are
Mandated.
mandated.
Well, the first two, right?
Yeah, okay, so we'll go in order.
Is it fine? So the first one's.
I was just going where I could make, get some money in my pockets.
And you're gonna, trust me, let's just go in order.
We're going to.
Can we put it in?
Okay.
Maybe more.
Why don't you leave this one then?
We're gonna try to put it on the screen for you.
So the first.
Okay.
There's, outside agencies, there we go.
That's. S C T V. S C T V.
No, this one's Farmington River Watershed.
No.
Yeah.
Well, those are many, that's just.
Okay, so that I would keep.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Right?
Which one, S C T V?
Farmington, we're going in order, Farmington River.
Going in order.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, yes ma'am.
You just told me to do it.
And I appreciate it.
Farmington River Watershed.
Yes, mandated.
Fifty-seven hundred, mandated, correct? Every year we do that.
Right.
Greater Hartford Transit, forty s- eight, six, whatever, forty-six fifty-eight.
Mhm, for sure.
I think it's mandated, isn't it?
Yep, yep, yep. Now, the S C T V, um, last year, we we've been giving them ten the last three plus years, I can't see what's in, oh, the last four years.
Yes.
They asked for twenty thousand, and the town manager is recommending fifteen thousand dollars, um.
Do we have information of the reasoning for that?
It uh, I I can give you the the uh, the narrative on this uh, selectmen gets, it 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 goes, for me anyway, it went with this board's one of your primary goals, transparency and public engagement. They haven't had a raise in all these years, uh, they serve the community well. There's also been a a re- a number of recent asks that they do more and that's been constrained, their ability to do more has been constrained by two things. One, the number of volunteers, and two, the equipment and and the 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 hard costs of what they need in order to fulfill their mission. Um, you know, they're not out there raising money, they do have a budget that they can uh s- raise some limited funds, uh, but we all know what they, what they mean to the town. I I thought that that just my proposal, in in the T M proposed, was that they should have and that that was justified. Particularly given the fact that, you know, we've got an aging community that that may not wanna attend every meeting and more and more people, I assume, are tuning in and watching that or, you know, benefiting from the videos. It just seemed to me to make sense. Um, keeping it flat for another ten thousand is, you know, didn't make a lot of sense to us in terms of what the inflationary costs have been over those years. We all know that, you know, just in municipal government during the years that they've been flat, just doing it in my head, you've seen forty percent increases. So I didn't wanna come in flat, you'll notice that they they requested twenty thousand, this is, this is not the year to, as one of the public commentators said. Um, but it's largely a volunteer-driven uh organization and uh, I thought the board would wanna support them a little more.
Okay, well, uh, A, I was gonna a- ask Kevin to talk to the cost, B, I was gonna also wait say that you talked about having an M O U with them, so if we're gonna get fifteen thousand dollars, we could ask, make sure that certain meetings are covered and
Yeah.
you know, it it's ex- explicit in the in the M O U that we get the value.
And I I would just say, that's a very good point and that's one of my, on my to-do list. A number of, there's two of these, I think, that come to mind, but, you know, there should've been an M O U all this, all this time.
Right.
Spelling out what the duties and obligations are, and so I totally agree that if you're gonna accept my proposal, that that we, my office be happy to work with it with them.
Cause this, and coming at me, you may be able to answer this is, um, because I think we have seen more demand of meetings being reported by S C T V to give um, the community transparency and access to meetings if they can't. So have you seen an increase? Have, we have a number of, like, how many more meetings are being um, put on S C T V versus the last couple of years?
Sure, I I could probably give that, and so full disclosure, I I serve on the board for uh Simpury TV, it's a nonprofit organization, so I don't get a benefit from it, but I volunteer with a
Thank you.
a few other folks. Um, you know, staff is one and a half F T E, uh, pretty inexpensively too. Um, we um use a facility in the back of uh of Eno as the um, as the studio, um, and do a lot in seeking other outside funding from grant-funded organizations and also get some benefit through um, what are called PEG P I C E grants, which we've talked about for the library as well. That gets some pretty um, updated, uh, pretty amazing equipment actually too. Um, it is entirely dependent on volunteers most of the time for meetings like, like this one and all the others where um, each one of us, and I'm sure the members of the public, uh, go back to and refer to, and we've even discussed it in the uh uh, in the discussion about our own minutes, how much detail should be in the minutes, and you can, you can actually go back to the, to the record. Um, I don't think we use tapes anymore, uh, town manager, but there there are
That's true.
there are, um, you know, digital transcripts that that individuals can can review as well, but there's much more beyond that, including enrichment and other activities. A partnership with the the high school and the media program there, uh, for students to to be able to benefit from um, some experience and the multimedia equipment that they have. From video editing to to recording the video, some athletics and other other parts and pieces. from video editing to to recording the video, some athletics and other other parts and pieces. Um I do think it's a difficult year. It's always difficult to discuss what we should be funding you as a community. Um the the difference is from when community access television was uh conceived is that cable subscribers and part of your your fee went to provide a community benefit, not just what uh the cable providers wanted to feed you, but that the community itself would be able to generate content like this or other enrichment programs that would benefit the the community. Because of the change in television subscriber rates, we've all experienced it, right? You decide, oh, this is a really expensive ca- expensive cable bill and so I'm gonna cut the cord. Well, if you still have internet in your home, most of the time you didn't cut the cord, you just changed how you were getting your media. The ki- the coaxial cable is still there. Uh but the state law restricts um how that funding goes to a co- a community access uh television and that's only through television subscription, not through internet subscription. That's why this board supported in our first year um you know a letter to the legislature to reconsider um what those that funding mechanism would look like. Not to put an additional burden on the subscribers, but because most people aren't aware um you know what what that that change means. So all the services and increasing demand from what is being asked of the community access television, how much we actually use it and the downward pressure that they feel on the budget. Um you I I I I will be happy to support this and I'll vote for it as long as everybody understands that I serve on the board. I don't think it's inappropriate.
Yeah.
Um so I'd uh ask for your uh your support as well.
Yep, okay.
Can I ask um do you have any numbers on viewership?
I can get you viewership numbers. I don't have any, you know. Um one of the things that's uh interesting too, just so that you know, uh one of the things we did do is start to uh figure out how to monetize the YouTube channel. So you'll see an ad every once in a while on there and so there's a a couple of pennies. Uh it turns into a couple of bucks um you know for for us as well. So subscriber view viewership on meetings, you can actually see whether or not there's a popular meeting um or not. Um the 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 police commissioner sometimes some of the popular meetings too.
Is this popular?
Uh maybe this one, the long meeting isn't as as popular, but you can see even that on there. Um I'll try to get some numbers back for the board.
They're all gonna jump off in about ten minutes.
Yeah, I'll have Patrick. That's cause I'm talking. I'll have Patrick send some to the town manager. Thank you very much.
Okay.
I um I have a comment for me. Uh just percentage being a business guy again, a twenty five percent increase I think is substantial.
Appreciate it.
And it would give them twelve thousand five hundred this year. It's a tough year. We're hoping for a better year next year. I mean, I I haven't lost sight of it. But again, this is this year's budget where we are tight. And I do think they need more and I do wanna support them and that's why I think a twenty five percent increase over last year's funding would be suitable from my perspective.
Anyone, anyone?
I'll support that. I I do believe they should be supported. They um for all the reasons, transparency and keeping residents informed.
Okay. I'll 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 take that offer.
Sold.
Great. So are you guys everybody on?
I'm I'm great. I was wondering what the Simsbury Main Street.
Let's do it.
No, I got I'm I'm got from here.
Alright. Okay.
That's all.
So on the Main Street, he's gonna come back to me.
Okay, wait.
No, I support Main Street. I I think that that's fine. I I think it's a happy medium uh and I appreciate the town manager's consideration and and pitching forward as well.
Look at that. Okay, so SCTV we are now at twelve five. Yeah.
Okay. We have consensus, do we? Um okay, the interval house, we we've gone, we went up to five K in twenty four, I remember.
And twenty five.
Um well, we kept it at five.
Yeah.
And we're dropping down this year.
I have a few on here that and in the interval house I personally support, but I do think that there we are getting a bit of scope creep in this outside agency request where a number of them don't
Mm-hmm.
support the greater good. And I think that I would rather see some of this money in our residents' pockets for them to choose charities that are near and dear to them.
Mm-hmm.
So I think the interval house does great work, but there's just some that I'm not going to support because um thankfully I'm glad that the greater good of our community does not need interval houses um needs, but um I'm I'm not going to support them then through our budget.
Okay, okay. So you're you're proposing we keep what Mark recommended.
No.
No, it's very fun.
No, it's like zero. Take it out. Do not fund it.
Oh, you're proposing zero. Okay, I I would support. I I'm gonna I would sup- continue to support. So that's where I am on that.
You're at five? So.
I'm at twenty five hundred.
Alright, so Mark's recommendation.
I would take Mark's recommendation as opposed to zero.
Who else?
Um. I I'm kind of in 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 agreement with Heather as much as I su- I appreciate the work that they do. Um if it was a another year that you know things looked a little pinker.
So let's take a vote on it. Let's just take let's do it that way.
Can we uh can we finish all the discussion and then and then we're back to this?
And then we can circle back and see. So we're gonna tag this one.
Okay, okay. Alright. Okay, um the SVAA, I I do have a question on the SVAA. Well, one thing that I know that you dispersed a lot of these to the departments. Um I've I'd missed that column as Melissa knows that said where they went. But one thing I noticed that some of them in the specific departments don't refer back to what the organization is, so that would be helpful.
Sure.
Because it just says public agency support and it doesn't tie it back to Amplify or CMed or whichever. CMed was the emergency management.
We can make that change, Chair. No problem.
But I I guess the question is why isn't it better all in one location so we know what's being spent? Um but you know, why isn't it better to all be under the Board of Selectmen outside agency request funds?
I I think there's two reasons. One is this this may be a throwback. Uh you know, again, I don't know the historical uh genesis of this. My suspicion is that outside agency requests were dealt through the POS prior to the town manager form of government and this just survived in in the in the survived the change. But technically the charter is is it's the town manager's budget. I'm not sure that outside agencies request would be within the purview of the Board of Selectmen separate from. I'm still deferential and treating it as such. In other words, I'm not defending it. I you asked for my recommendation, I give it to you. But in staff meetings, what we decided was that if the item was longstanding and had been re- repeated and approved year after year after year, if it made sense to move it to the operating budget in a particular place other than the Board of Selectmen, we did that. Um we think that that's more transparent because it it signifies that it doesn't need to come to you separately. It's almost as if this particular part of the budget is dealt with separately as you know outside agency request. I I I I struggle to explain it, but SCTV is probably a a good example because it's it's something that you would think we would do every year uh is is support them. But I don't know if staff wants to add anything to what our discussions were or not. No? Okay.
Yeah, I mean, and the the only one we actually moved for this particular year was um CMed um to public safety. That one is a per capita um requirement for regional dispatch. Um everything else is where it has always been shown. Um you know, there's a handful under social services because social services
Okay.
would be the you know, the department to administer them and then everything else falls under Board of Selectmen. Wouldn't the SVAA be moved to a different outside of here now considering the MOU? Did we commit to that? Or we did?
I would do I would mo- I would move it out if it wasn't for the MOU was only three years. But but yeah, so I think it's got.
For the next three years, it should be moved.
It's only two now, but yeah. I mean, and the MOU is contingent on us supporting it.
Or two.
Yes, you're right.
You've gotta you've gotta approve it every year. It specifically says in the MOU that it's it's gone if you don't fund it.
Every year.
So for that reason, I think it that probably stays with you as opposed to going into the PD budget or wherever you might put it.
And and we haven't we I think we could talk about that later is how are we actually gonna fund that? Like it it we we had.
Oh, we have to pay for this?
Yeah, cause we had we don't know if we had some questions on the use that we propose to use for it and I don't know if we got an answer on that.
So we have an answer from the town attorney that that uh is is favorable. Uh and I'll brief the board separately on that. Obviously, it's the board's dis- decision. I think we've got uh the we we've got our ducks in a row to to use our opioid settlement funds as I proposed uh a few months ago. And I'll give you some email traffic on that soon.
Okay, cause otherwise we would probably have to move that out to like C and R or something. Cause it would be a big hit to the.
Yeah. It it doesn't, I will say just for the benefit of the public, that that does not impact the mil rate. And Melissa, can you check me on that?
Sure.
At hundred and eighty?
Sure, yeah. So thi- this is similar to what we did actually um for the current year. We showed it here and as an outside agency or a public agency support um item under the Board of Selectmen budget. It was two hun- two hundred this current year um but funded through the capital reserve fund. So we still showed it. We had to show the expense in the operating budget, but there was an offsetting revenue. Um similar concept for twenty six. If we use the opioid funds, that would be the revenue for for that expense.
So we're.
Okay.
Which would free up the hundred and eighty in reserves.
Yeah, right. And not pass through the taxpayer. Great.
Yeah.
Yep. Yep, we know that.
Doesn't affect the mil rate.
No.
Perfect, thank you.
It 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 could make it easier to use more reserves if you needed to.
Just making it clear for.
Yeah.
Great.
Okay, um.
SVAA.
We just did that. So we just did it. We have to pay it.
We need to discuss it. Then ABC.
I'm sorry, what did you do on the interval house? Did you have?
It's a house. Yeah, we're Kevin Kevin suggested to vote at the end. I was ready to keep it moving.
We have we have kind of backed.
We we we. That's true.
Hmm.
But um so ABC House, um I'm I'm I I am was a room parent or house parent or whatever, I forgot what I was even called back in the two thousands. Um but I don't think it's the place or the board to support the ABC House.
They're in a cry of the same blues about not having any money. We do give them as it was Lori referenced, over fifteen thousand dollars as a tax break on the facility. Um I I at this year, I can't see additional funding.
I I agree.
Well, we don't offer them a tax break. That's that's by nature of the the structure that they're formed, yeah.
No, but. I understand. But my point is indirectly, we are benefiting the board.
Just for public to understand. Yeah, I think that that's fine.
And and I also asked, like, I don't know what the Board of Ed does for ABC House and they're more, it's really an education program related to the high school, so.
I hadn't thought about asking that. Do we know?
I.
We do not. We'll get back to you.
Do not know.
Okay.
So we need one more for consensus unless.
Um. Well, we're not voting yet because Kevin said to wait.
Thank you for that comes to.
Pray for ABC House? Okay.
He makes us he's making us go through this process. I was doing it one at a time.
I'd like to know what I'm voting on as a whole versus each individual.
Oh, right.
Sure.
Yep. Oh, as a oh, I was gonna go through each line, cause I don't I never.
So we're back.
Robotics.
Now we're we're.
We're not. There's no money there. There's nothing.
So SST, we're in the same boat.
Um I I'm not in favor of supporting that at all.
I mean.
Alright, CMed is mandatory.
Mandatory. Main Street, um I would support. I I believe we should support what
Alright.
Well, it says the MOU, but in the MOU it only refers to eighty five thousand dollars for the first year. Um.
I think that number is correct. Eighty five. It stays eighty five.
Oh, it is. Oh, I thought it only said for the first year. I looked up the MOU. It didn't say carried through all the years unless that was just a a mis.
We we didn't write the MOU to reduce it. So uh.
It didn't say anything about year two and three.
Make Steven do the song now.
Let me get up. I have a routine.
I think it's eighty five for each year, Chair. We'll we'll check on it.
We uh I'll I'll do a little song.
That's great.
And Chair, I can I can defend Simsbury S SCT if you give me the opportunity.
Um.
You bet.
It was a theater.
You're you're. You went past it, right?
SCTV?
No, CMed.
Simsbury summer.
Simsbury summer theater.
Yeah, we're gonna.
We passed that one. We're we're not.
Back, but do you wanna back?
Well, I if if the Chair will give me two minutes.
Sure, the Chair will give you two minutes.
Great.
Do I miss that timer?
Yeah, no, I don't need that. Uh you'll you'll see that robotics is is zero. You'll see that we made the the you know the cut to twenty five hundred on interval house, which you now I I think that made zero or will. But on this particular one, I just wanted to point out to the board quickly, your your number one priority, your goal is economic development. Uh we've had a lot of conversations internally a- a- about that uh because it's obviously one of the town manager's goals as well as to implement your goals. Uh we have uh with a lot of help, but throughout the organization breathed some excellent new life into the Economic Development Commission, a charter created commission here that had actually not met at all for almost a year uh until uh earlier this year. And now they're back in business and this board is has acknowledged that by making several really good appointments and uh wanna thank them for their volunteer service. But the point is, I'd like to make it. If we want to stimulate economic development in the town of Simsbury, the arts is a way to do it. When we decided to fund the Performing Arts Center in that public private partnership and as you know, both Diana and Kevin were with me on the negotiating team that negotiated that new fifteen year agreement with the PAC that this board unanimously supported. When we rolled that out, what we said at the time in that press release was that this investment in the Performing Arts Center, that location within a staple and is such a wonderful spot in town would inure to the benefit of others as well, not just the PAC. And so we believe in the administration that economic development can be one of the tools that you could use to leverage it and actually have an impact on economic development is the arts. And so we put three million, whatever it was into the PAC. The state put money in, we put money. Is the PAC the only artistic entity that this board will support? I I would hope not. So that is the plan. And and this is something we'll have time to discuss with the board over the summer. But if we don't get something in the budget, we'll have nothing in the budget, right? So the point isn't really about the amount or even whether it's SST or you know BBT or anybody else. The point is is that uh we are looking uh at the staff level and how we can leverage the arts to boost economic development. If people come to the theater in Simsbury, let's say they go to Eno Memorial Hall and we somehow manage to fix that and make that an arts hub. Well, they're going out to dinner in Simsbury. You know, that's the hope. So if this board cuts it, you're really cutting one of the tools that we're hopeful will help us meet your goal to us and boost economic development. That's why I put it in there.
Thank you.
What percentage of Simsbury summer theater are um people from coming non-residents? None?
Well, I wouldn't say none, but.
I my daughter, I mean, I I I'm I'm I I hear your argument.
The full name is Simsbury Summer Theater for you.
It's a summer theater. It's not. Actually, they changed it.
It's not.
They changed it.
It changed. It's just Simsbury Summer Theater now.
It's not.
Oh, really?
So I I'm I'm still not, I hear you what you're saying, Mark, and I I understand that I'm not in favor of funding the summer theater for you.
Yeah.
No, tell me.
Well, then if I could make a request then, because I don't think what I'm hearing is the board doesn't wanna support the attempt to use the arts to leverage economic development.
Could you use it on the hundred thousand of you?
Well, you need to we we weren't allowed to use that last time, even though I could have, right? There was we got funding for a hundred and we only used eighty five. Could've used the other fifteen, but there wasn't consensus and we didn't wanna you know get 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 into that issue. But but we are underfunded this year by the tune of fifteen, i.e. we spent nothing other than the Main Street. And I would just propose, and I wanna be on the record, is saying that Main Street shouldn't be the only entity. And they don't just support local businesses. They support arts as well. Uh but I don't think all our eggs should be in that basket. So what I would suggest is if the board wants to cut it, can we just put it in economic development for arts?
Yep. I I'm I'm still in favor of cutting it. I I don't think this is the year to give fifty seven fifty. But I do think I went to a meeting of chief elected officials recently and again, I know we have enough boards and commissions, but they started an arts council. A multiple multiple Rocky Hill and Weathersfield have an arts council
That's what I would like to propose.
We are looking at that.
and and that could be a a future thing, but I'm I'm a no.
Can I ask why you're proposing more than what was requested?
Just to make the point that five thousand is a small amount to pay to to leverage economic. I mean, look, you can look around the country.
I know.
So.
It doesn't it's not just limited to bigger cities. Smaller cities around the United States have used arts to leverage economic development. You gotta start somewhere.
Well, I thought, I mean, when we had those the art walk, the sculpt- and the sculptures, I thought that was great.
I think that was privately funded.
Person very.
With the chamber.
As a chamber commerce.
Chamber, chamber.
It was not funded by it was not funded by the municipality.
Right, but what I'm saying is that so I agree.
Good.
That that is helpful. I just don't know if this particular initiative is going to drive so much.
I.
Well, let us let us let us try.
Yeah, let's let's kinda try to yeah, I I'm I would like to kind of keep wrapping this up, cause as we're spending way too much time on
Let us try.
Yeah. Yeah.
outside agency. We haven't gotten to any of the departments. Uh I'd like to get through it. I'd like to just knock out what we're not including, if that's okay.
Alright, Main Street. I was actually speaking on Main Street.
So CMed CMed is um.
Mandatory.
Mandatory. Main Street, we're sticking with eighty five.
Slap funding, it covers, we had to outsource basically our economic development. Um it pays for Sarah Nielsen's salary, who is the executive director of Main Street. And to get any full-time employee for eighty five, including benefits is a bargain. If we tried to bring it in-house, we would pay more.
Okay, um I the VNA I do have a question on. Now that the VNA is not the VNA.
What about chamber?
I'm doing a chamber.
What about chamber?
Oh, I skipped it, sorry.
You skipped chamber.
Um s- so the chamber, I mean, I know we put them through a lot last year. I'd like to hear what other people say. I they did come back to say that they would work on an event with the PAC. Um I wouldn't do seventy five hundred. I would be willing to do five thousand. Um but I'm open open for discussion.
I'm I'm uh not clear on what um if they actually got funding this year, cause it was a.
They did not.
So so we we budgeted for it and they didn't get it.
It was in contingency, so it was never used. Yeah, so they didn't get anything.
Mm-hmm. I and because of that, I'm in support of the seventy five hundred and I know they're planning a bigger one. Um.
Okay, would you be in?
Can you lighten this? What bigger than this? Oh, is it surprise?
Mm-hmm. It's in the it's in the um write-ups.
No, it's in you.
Look at yeah, they're trying to.
I don't think you can say it for the public.
They're do.
Oh, oh, yeah, okay. Where's the?
It's a Brewstock and uh Spooktacular event combined is the proposal.
Okay, I I I would suggest reducing that to sub five thousand.
What do we currently pay for our membership in the chamber?
Nine hundred and change if I remember correctly.
Eight twenty five.
What is it?
Eight twenty five.
Eight twenty five.
I was gonna do five thousand.
So I'm still the same. It's a it's a membership based business. It's a business. It does not
Okay.
um support the full. um support the full town of Simsbury, it supports the membership, which it should, it's a private organization. It's not a five oh one C three, it's a five oh one whatever, which is is that addendum, we are members, I consider that to be support. As you probably recall, when they came to us for the seventy five hundred, I was one of the ones, I was the one that pushed back the most because I figured it out, it was six hundred and twenty-five dollars for them to talk to one business, I didn't see the return. I'll be honest, we have one event, one event to go in with all the taxpayers' money and even give them five thousand, I think was the number that was tossed around. I think it's too much for one event, if we wanna have a booth, let's have a booth, but to underwrite an event which is a fundraiser for an organization just seems like a stretch too far for me, but of course, I'm one of six and I don't wanna waste time.
Okay, thank you, um so V N A, just a quick question, uh the services remain the same even.
So where are we with that then, like, what are we gonna vote on with that, we're.
We're voting V N.
Alright, I'm gonna go back through, I'm not gonna do them all in all this, because there's too much variation, I'm gonna go through the ones where we had questions. Um V N A forty thousand, we're getting the same services even though V N A is no longer here, so we're gonna keep that flat. Amplified flat and Meals on Wheels went up, oh, didn't, it went up five hundred dollars.
Five hundred.
Is there a reason that we went up five hundred?
Food's more expensive, Chair.
Groceries are going down, the horse, I.
Thanks.
They're getting nothing but X.
I think I think it's a little more expensive.
Also, the Belt and Trust pays for Meals on Wheels, it's not taxed dollars.
Okay, then then I'm okay, so so I'm gonna go through the items just so we can get moving. Um I'd like to see who's inter, who would be, who would be in favor of keeping the twenty five hundred dollars for interval house? I am. Two, who would like to reduce that to zero?
Alright, this year.
Okay, so that's zero, zero, um A B C.
It's stiffy.
I I guess I'm not, I don't I don't understand, so we have a budget presented in front of us, if there's a motion to make an amendment to the budget, would be in order.
Yeah. Okay, so I'll make a motion to, uh I I'm amend, I I make a motion to um leave the budget at twenty five hundred for interval house, and it just would fail.
Yeah.
Yeah?
This is a workshop, do we have to do motions?
We're doing a kind of consensus right now.
I'm just on, I'm just not, I'm not clear on what our procedure is, so that's all.
It's our procedure for this has usually been consensus, so, and and if we need to vote, we can vote, but the consensus seems to be to move that to zero.
Okay.
I would keep it at twenty five hundred, but there's four people on this board at least, or five, correct?
For this year.
Okay. Sure.
Okay, A B C house, um who's in favor of the five thousand dollars? Uh all the, is there consensus for the five thousand dollars? I'm a no.
I assume you don't have it.
Is there, you guys are, no?
I'm a no.
I'm a no, um the fifty seven fifty for stiffy, I'm I'm a no.
I'm a no.
Um.
We skipped robotics, not that bad.
Because we don't, because there is nothing funded.
A seventy.
Well, that's the town manager's suggestion.
Oh.
Um I'll I'll just go with what's here for the chamber, this seventy five hundred dollars to the chamber.
I'm against it.
Support it.
Yeah, I support the chamber.
I'll I'll support it too.
Support it too.
I'm I'm against it.
Yeah, yes, I'm yes, I'm support.
I'm against.
I guess we'll leave it at seventy five instead of five thousand, um okay, there we, then we're done, and the Main Street, we're leaving the same because um it's M O U and, okay?
Were were there any, any any votes for uh S S T?
No.
Zero.
Zero.
Okay.
I um, in other communities, um these uh can become ballot items. And I think it'd be worthwhile for us to discuss, you know, how we wanna do that, since especially we're talking about organizations that are seeking um you know funding and some of them, you know, may be directly related to government functions or or not directly related to government functions. And it may be not something we wanna entertain this year, but I think it's a worthwhile discussion to include as an individual ballot question, and then the voter is gonna say.
Yeah.
I I I just have to disagree a little bit, because I support several of these on the private side.
Exactly, yep.
And that's how I vote, is with my gift to these charities, I I give to S- Simsbury Summer, it used to be stiffy Simsbury Summer Theater for years.
Yeah. I know.
Anyways, I give to them, so I mean, that's my choice and I don't need it on the ballot, I just need to have a check.
There's there's multiple ways to get. There's multiple places to get ballot access, one one place to get ballot access is for um this board to move it forward and for it to go through the process. Another way to get ballot access is to have a petition, so I'm just suggesting that as far as a consistency in a process, that would be welcome, from my perspective, that if I'm saying that an outside organization deserves funding from the taxpayer, that not only do I get a say, but the individual taxpayer gets a say on the individual line, not just as a roll-up of the entire budget, that's what I'm suggesting.
I I respectfully disagree and I'll make it quick, because the the specific taxpayer doesn't always understand that we have a M O U with S V A A.
I think the taxpayer is, it's very smart enough.
There's a lot of extenuating, I respectfully disagree, let's move on.
Okay, could it, I I wanna ask this, then I, can we take a five-minute recess, is that appropriate?
That's your call.
That's your call.
Would you guys like a five-minute?
Well, just so you know, we cut fifteen thousand seven hundred and fifty from the outside agency budget.
Okay, does anybody want a five-minute recess?
No, thanks.
Okay.
I would go back.
Okay.
Diana, we get the A B C house?
I got uh S S T, S C T V, A B C and interval house.
Um. Oh, come on, it's okay.
Okay, let's move on then, nobody else needs to guess out. Um health.
Health.
Is the next item, the next item, anybody have anything to say about health?
We didn't receive any questions, Chair.
Okay.
Moving on.
Let's move on to boards and commissions. Um. I did have a question here, and Mark, we did this last year, but
Uh-huh.
Still not understanding why the Main Street partnership, well, first of all, we're showing a hundred thousand here for, let's go to economic development, was my first question. We're showing a hundred thousand dollars there, I would personally prefer to reduce that to eighty five thousand to cover the Main Street partnership because the fifteen thousand we did not use this year, and I don't know what the target would be to use that money for next year.
I concur, for what that's worth, reduce that to eighty five K.
Any comments on that?
It's something.
Why why do we need the additional fifteen?
Goes to my earlier point, I think that that the board's number one goal is economic development, let me ask the board a question if I may.
Yeah.
If you don't fund it, if, I mean, I think we've said this, the 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 board's priorities are represented by the budget you pass. Other than the eighty five thousand, which is given to the only game in town, which is Main Street, what is, what what portion of the hundred and twenty-nine million dollars can this board say is given to departments, agencies, commissions, outside, your town manager, any discretion at all to do anything to boost economic development? Because if the answer is zero, that's really what we should be working, and the reason we budgeted last year a hundred was eighty five's getting Main Street, but 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 please give us fifteen to do something else, and in discussions throughout the year, we couldn't agree what to do with it. And you know, I think respectfully, the town manager could have forced that issue, was budgeted, but we wanna work collaboratively, but my point is, is that please don't make it zero. Whether it's the arts, or whether it's the Chamber of Commerce, or whether it's my office doing functions, you know, occasionally for the benefit of small businesses. Help us meet the goal that you set for yourself and the goal you set for me, but you can't give us those goals with a zero, respectfully. It's just not fair.
Isn't this an advisory board to the Board of Selectmen, not you?
Right.
The E D C is, but you know, I could, I could, you know, to the Chair's point about creating a public uh arts commission,
That's what it's under, not to say.
which is something that that my office has been looking at, we did it in Poughkeepsie in two thousand thirteen or fourteen, but it didn't have a budget. In seventeen, we started funding, arts took off. If you don't fund it, nothing's gonna happen, you've got a volunteer board, that's why respectfully, the E D C hadn't met for a year because nobody could decide what was happening, there wasn't any leaderships, and it certainly had no budget. If you if you want to be successful, you've gotta, you've gotta have a budget lined, you can't just say, and again, very respectfully, economic development is our number one goal, but Main Street partnership's gonna handle it with the eighty five thousand that we've budgeted, thank you very much. And to Steven's point, that eighty five thousand is low, because if you were to have an economic development director and an economic development department with benefits and everything else, your budget would be four hundred thousand.
So a question um then is the chamber that we funded at seventy five, so that's, is that in with this hundred thousand dollars? Just so I know how much is like, what what the gap is, because.
That was the intent last year and it could be the intent this year, yes, I think that would be perfectly fine, again, our, uh the town manager's proposed budget is a hundred thousand for economic development, eighty five thousand of it, eighty five percent of it is the Main Street partnership, which is what the town has relied on for all these years. We actually increased it last year, and this board approved the three-year deal, and and I'm satisfied with the work that Main Street's done, they were before this board a few months ago to talk about what they had achieved and what their goals were for next year, you didn't hear any complaints from me. The only thing I'm saying respectfully is, is that there should be something else peppered into that, even if it's only fifteen thousand, because if the answer is zero, then the only thing we're getting is Main Street, and I just wanna, you know.
Yeah. Well, I guess that that we don't, that there's other ways for economic development than money to throw into it, right? It's effort also, it's not just cash to make it happen, correct?
Yes, you you, I think. And and you and I have a, you and I have a meeting coming up tomorrow with the with the Chair of the E D C, I believe, to talk about, you know, some of these issues.
Okay.
So, uh you know, full transparency, even a volunteer board needs to have funding if you want some measurable outcome from it, is what.
Well, that's another question I have is, uh the whole allotment of money to these boards and commissions, which I sent an email on, is is, there should be a process for boards and commissions to ask for funds, and to have us, just like the outside agency to to say what they're, they need funds for to to do in their board and commission for their year. We don't do that, and it's just kind of pick or choose on some of these, who gets money and who doesn't.
If I may, prior to the town manager form of government, what was the pro, the process, because I don't know. Okay, so so let's assume for the sake of discussion for tonight, that there that there was no process all those years for boards and commissions.
Lisa knows. We we.
What we can ask?
We could ask Lisa, she's here.
Yeah, so, oh, that, you have to remember.
Make it quick, though.
Right.
She's snapping her fingers at me.
I'll put a five-minute marker.
Two thousand.
Our budget goes to her, you know, be careful.
Two thousand eight.
I know.
Remember, there was no money, we were still digging our way out of two thousand eight, but you would come to the first selectman and say, I need this money, and it would go through the first selectman's office first for a recommendation, then to the Board of Selectmen, so they were.
As an appropriation?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's my point, Chair, it's a town, it's a town manager form of government now, and therefore, the the the, it should respectfully go to the town manager,
Oh. Mm-hmm.
not the first selectman, and and it's my budget to present.
Oh. Lisa, were they specific requests or just a lump sum payment for them to have as a pot, if you will?
Well, I.
Yeah.
They were, they would come for specific requests when they had them.
That, that's right.
But we didn't put out a notice saying ask for money, because there was no money.
Okay, well, we don't, well, we're kind of in the same hole, right?
We're.
Well, we're back.
Yeah, but appropriations are actually your job, you know, it goes, there's a process, it does go to the town manager first, but then it comes to you, then it comes to the budget-making authority, and then it goes to the people.
We've always been discouraged against appropriations, so I wanna get that on the record, because we've done appropriations in your past and we're kind of told, don't do appropriations, do it all through the budget, and that's kind, to me, a little bit of a mixed signal. If we can do appropriations as needed, without.
No, appropriations to the budget.
Yeah, so we're, so what Mark's saying is, he thinks he needs this for something, let's get it lined up now, instead of coming back later when we know exactly what it is. Um, that's the question.
So I'd like to see before we vote on the budget finally, what the top three fundable projects that we would use the additional fifteen thousand for.
Yeah, right. Okay, and are we saying we're moving the seventy five hundred
for?
chamber into that, so that there's less there, and we take the seventy five hundred out of the Board of Select, somebody suggested that, didn't they?
I was questioning if it was in there.
It's 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 in your hands.
Okay. So, so that would only leave.
A very small amount, very small.
A very s- small amount, so.
Yeah. That's what that, I was, I was clarifying that, I wasn't asking to do that, I was clarifying whether it was there or not.
Okay, yeah, yeah, you're you're right, it's not in there, so it's fifteen thousand, so you, Kevin, you wanna just come back to that later to see what it might be?
It's not in there, that's all I was asking. Dinner?
I I just, I I appreciate where the town manager went, but one thing gave me concerns, we talked about the the uh summer theater, you know, thing too, and that that wouldn't be, what my impression is, he's he's supporting that, I'd like to understand what those top three, you know, things might be, and I'm not limiting it to three or saying it has to be three, I just, if if we're gonna appropriate that, I'd like to know what it, what that actually means for dollars. If I told, if I told a member of the staff that they couldn't go to a conference for their own professional development to fund this activity, I'd like to know what it is that I'm saying is more important.
If if I could just for one second, in the past, going back many years. Shut up, I mean, respectfully.
Thank you.
Um, E D C, the full allotment to them always went to Main Street, it was fifty K for over a decade.
Yeah.
Well over a decade, and it went to them, last year, we overfunded with a hundred K, and we never really figured out, we never gained any traction. I know that I am a broken record, but this is hopefully the last year we're broke, but we're broke. This is not the year, I love the idea of an arts council and funding an arts council, but that's not in here, if you guys wanna talk about that, that's a different discussion that I am a strong proponent of, but that's not in here, this is another contingency vague fund, and for that reason, I'm still at zero fund for this specifically, well, eighty five.
Or to eighty five.
And anyway, if if I may, Chair, I agree with Steve with everything he said, except for one thing, if it, and it's because it's your number one goal. If it wasn't your number one goal, I I I couldn't argue with you, but you can't zero fund your number one goal. And what you just said was that for years and years, the only thing you did was Main Street. You brought me on board to to make some changes, and I'd like to do that, and to Kevin's point, I think what we're asking for is just a little discretion. So with respect to the hundred, eighty five is Main Street, seventy five hundred of that would be the chamber, and really, all the town manager is asking for is discretionary spending of seventy five hundred on economic development, for something that we can't imagine what that would be, yes.
No, we're keeping seventy five hundred in chamber.
Well, no, no, we didn't say that yet, we didn't say it's a selectman.
Yeah, you you are, but 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 so seventy five from the fifteen, you're you're leaving seventy five hundred in the budget line that hasn't been fully vetted, right?
So.
Okay.
Veto, yeah. Advocating.
Because we don't know what it is.
But if, if we have specificity, like for arts, I could support it, it's the, I don't know, what we're gonna do.
Right.
That's what I'm asking for.
Mm-hmm.
Well, then, then then, then then I'll take that, then forget the seventy five hundred and fund, then fund the S C T, whatever it was, and fine, as long as you do one thing.
Kevin, take it.
Alright, so we'll go eighty five here, and we've support stiffy for five.
Yeah, fine, just just give us.
No.
No, I I was, I don't speak for anyone up here.
Well, that's, we're not going backwards, we're not going backwards.
Well.
Alright.
I I I agree with Kevin that um, I would like obviously to support economic development, um no, I think we, we need that grand list from it, um and we need to start thinking outside of the box a bit here, but
Yes.
that being said, it would be nice if you had specifics on ideas, I mean, we had an entire year with fifteen thousand extra, and there weren't a lot of ideas generated, even if you this year planned out some ideas, an art council came to us, how that would look, function, how what everything would do, then it's easier to support, so I I think to Kevin's point, if you could come with some specifics, and that's much easier for us to support it.
I understand, sometimes in the budget process, you ask for some discretionary funding because you don't have those concepts ready yet, and you wouldn't wanna come back for a supplemental for something so small, so you're really, we're really just asking for you to, you know, give us a little bit of discretion to do something for economic development, but, you know, I understand what you're saying, you want that packaged, brought to you, and then you make a decision. And what I'm advocating for is, is that you give us some flexibility, working with the arts community or the E D C, to do something that is on the initiative of the administration, that's 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 it.
So I can support that, Mark, and to, thank you Heather for that, uh it's just hard for me to go and say, you know, we're supporting the additional seventy five hundred, and for what? Um I just, I'd like to hone in a narrow way, is it for a pizza party, is it printing out a brochure, I just like, help me to get to yes on.
Sure, yeah. I I would like to use the seventy five hundred to leverage arts for the benefit of economic development, we tried it in the outside agency request, that failed, to Wendy's point, move on. I could commit to the board that 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 if you fund the full hundred, it would be eighty five to Main Street, seventy five hundred to the Chamber of Commerce, and seventy five hundred to the arts community, and and please give us the discretion to do that in partnership with a local nonprofit and in consultation with the E D C, that's.
Well, I I'd like the board to be involved in that too.
Okay, then I withdraw that, and we'll just make it eighty five thousand, because I, you know, I I I don't wanna beat it down the board.
Well, I feel like i- if setting up an arts council would be a function of both the board as a policy decision and the town manager.
Oh, absolutely, the arts, yeah, right, okay.
So I don't know how you make that work, but that's where, that's just what I'm saying is, cause we would have to figure out uh uh how we wanted that staffed and things like that, right? I mean, not staff, but how we would recruit membership and things like that, that seemed. how we would recruit membership and things like that. That seems like a council type of offer. I could be wrong.
It's actually a chair, respectfully, it's actually a charter revision commission, and I mean, it's our goal.
Charter. Yeah, I know, yeah.
It's our goal to bring that forward at the at the appropriate times, so.
We're talking about that. Okay, and that's one of the items we asked the charter to look at is uh the number of boards and commissions, so let's add another one, um or if we change those, so.
So we're in the.
So I'm not prepared to support the the summer theater through another means.
Yeah, I don't know. Yeah.
Right.
I was I was hoping to hear something different. So if the only thing that we would use the additional seventy-five hundred dollars for, and that's the only thing, then I I would I would bring it back down to ninety-two five.
Okay.
That's fine.
Alright, so let's do it.
So wait, I'm I just wanna clarify that again, because we still have um chamber being funded through public agency in the board of selectmen budget.
It says no, it's it says it was, if you go back to the page, it does say that it was taken out of economic development. I thought I didn't see that at first.
Oh, I see, uh under this.
Yeah, I apologize. When I said that we only moved C med out of board of selectmen to another department, it was also on the chamber
Yeah.
contribution that the intent was to include under economic development, so sorry about that.
In Main Street, okay.
Okay, thank you. 'Cause I just wanna make sure, 'cause I it was in one place and another place, okay.
Okay.
I mean, I I wholeheartedly approve of of funding arts uh
Okay.
economic for economic development.
Any any other uh questions on the um, what page do we have?
Boards and commissions, right.
Um seventy-three.
Yeah, I I had a couple.
I do.
Yeah, I did too.
So where did we land on this hundred grand?
So we're on plus.
We're ninety-two.
It's cut to eighty-five, I think.
No, ninety-two.
Ninety-two five.
Ninety-two five, and it includes the chamber.
So that includes the chamber.
Okay.
Um, my question for you, for the um aging and disability.
Yeah.
I think Diana mean explains to me before, but um for the special activities increase there and then the how many reading services?
Yeah.
I can explain all that.
Uh Diana can can give you the back background. This was a request that came out of A and D that with that we concurred with. Uh I defer to Diana or Melissa.
Um, so there's there's a couple of things, and some of them are um particular for this year, but some of them may be recurring. So special activities, you have to understand the Aging and Disability Commission has often had a zero budget or starting from almost nothing. And the number of activities and the number of residents that it serves, including uh the senior population and the disability population, the disability community um is there's uh four activities that are planned throughout the year for the disability community. Um, there's multiple events planned throughout the year for the seniors, including uh the uh Super Thursday event, which we are trying to increase. Understand, in the past, the Aging and Disability Commission was able to fund between six and nine uh formerly Super Tuesday events, now Super Thursdays events moving to a Thursday, funded through the Aging and Disability Commission be uh between the cuts um that we received in budget, but also um increasing in costs. It is now down to one Super Thursday event uh per year for the seniors in our town, and uh uh the Aging and Disability Commission feels that that's a huge disservice to our seniors in town, where neighboring communities um often fund nine to twelve uh almost monthly lunches, uh Super Thursday-type lunches for their seniors. In full discretion, in full just um uh transparency, we are also trying to seek some grant money. We are off-cycle uh for one of the grants that could fund for nutrition services uh for um the Super Thursday events, but in the absence of that right now, there is no funding for those, so 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 that is some of that, as well as the disability events. We have solicited uh businesses and um we've solicited other organizations to help fund it, but it this is a town commission that is serving the town, like the community. Um, almost everybody in this community is touched by either a senior or someone with with a disability who is being serviced by this. The other special events and some of the printing things uh that go along with this, we uh the the commission also does um quarterly, but sometimes just biannally, um uh events that are educational in nature. Um, there there was there's one on uh loneliness and isolation in seniors. There's going to be another event that's coming up uh uh in in an educational event for seniors and uh retrofitting housing and safety in housing, and uh there was a whole series on um preventing falls in seniors that was done. Um, the other thing that is included in here is the board of selectmen, prior uh board of selectmen, as well as this board of selectmen had uh approved to continue going ahead with the A A R P age-friendly community designation, and they are at the point now where they have done the senior survey and uh the focus groups, and are now at the point of creating an action plan, and part of that it uh there's parts of that in creating that action plan that A A R P requires, including the printing of the action plan to present to the board of selectmen, keep uh on town files, as well as to send to uh A A R P, and that's part of the copying and printing services. So I'm just, I'm not, you know, so that's, and the budget, quite honestly, that was delivered uh to Mark was was higher
Yep.
and has been cut to that number, um trying to only uh give the dollar figures that would be applicable for this year for the Aging and Disability Commission.
Are we going from one, oh, sorry, just following up. Um, are we going from one to twelve, or look, how many areas are?
No, we are looking to fund four
So from one to four.
four Super Thursdays. We would love to get to to six or nine, um hoping through grant money that we can fund all of them. But right now, this is would just get to four Super Thursday events in this budget.
Diana, our office is is helping with the grant applications as well, just so the board's aware that we are optimistic about
I have a question on the.
Yes.
But there has a.
uh some of the grant work, and thank you for pointing those out.
I I just have a quick question about the um you what you mentioned about the program on falls and um safety and apartments. Is that working with social services and fire on the steps to safety program that they're doing, or is this separate?
It's it almost coincides, but it has been a separate program. Um, they they kind of work hand in hand in that there was ways that the Aging and Disability Commission focused on it and and pushed out uh through the senior center, but it partnered with that uh like what the V N A was doing and and we funded thing uh well, actually, um some things were done through S C T V, a whole program on uh fall prevention and ex the exercises for fall prevention. Um, it was it was done in partnership, so it's not fully funded here, like that's that's just one example of a program that we had done previously. That's not even in this budget.
So it's not part of this one?
It's not part of this one. It's something that had, we had done already, yeah.
Of course, and make sure we're on redundancy to step to senior program, okay.
And yeah, just a quick answer. Why isn't a lot of this funded handled, funding handled within social services? Why does it have to be funded through a board and a commission if it's vital to our residents?
Well, that's a good question, because there's never been a budget for aging and disability, or if there had, it was a long ago kind of removed, but it's nothing that was funded through.
And it goes to the same point I made, Chair, about about the E D C and the need for economic development. So other communities, for example, they fund this big, a whole list of the things. The Aging and Disabilities uh budget was higher, as Diana points out, and we went through it and 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 made some cuts to it. But our recommendation is that the board approve it because of the importance to the community of our seniors, and this isn't something that social services has historically done. I guess that that was the main reason.
Yeah, so so I could I could flip this in the town manager form of government, that we used to have a lot of this handled by boards and commissions. Maybe now a lot of it should move back to the administration, right? I mean, that that's a, maybe that's a question for but you were having aging and disability economic development handled by volunteers when some of this potentially should be in a professional budget, if we're helping seniors across the town. Isn't that a service that the town provides, not a board or commission? I I guess, I I don't know, it's just kind of a.
Just as the drafter of the budget, I just I found it more, I look at the the reverse, I'm looking at it the other way.
Okay.
If you if you want it done and you've got volunteer boards, and currently the charter vests a lot in in our volunteer boards.
Yeah. I do.
Now, maybe in the town manager form of government, that's something that you wanna change, but until it changes, you're asking your volunteer boards to do something with nothing, no resources at all.
Right.
And so I would agree with you, move it back to the administration and put it in social services, all things being equal, but you've got these wonderful volunteer boards that they need some fund.
Yep. Okay, um, the question, though, is 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 that amount needed? That would be a question I would ask, because it is a large increase.
It is an increase.
And it goes to other boards and commissions that aren't on this list again, who don't get an ask for their board and commission, do they?
Everybody gets an ask. I assume that they had an ask under the former form of government as well. Nobody's closed the doors, any.
Well, I'm just saying, do all boards and commissions receive something to ask if they need funding?
And any. Absolutely, anybody can come to the town. I I don't I don't wanna leave it, you know, unsaid
Okay, I I didn't know that.
that that my office is playing, picking and choosing.
No, 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 I but I didn't know that.
Wow. Okay. It's a town manager budget until it becomes your budget, and any board and and commissioner agency can make their case, just as they would in a former form of government.
Okay.
And then I have to defend that. Now, if it's not up there, I don't have to defend it. But I I I wanted to get this board's support, if I could, for a little help for economic development, uh possibly the arts, and a little help for aging and disability.
Okay.
What is, can you, what is just standing forty-five, fifty for D I? What does it get spent on?
The two to.
Can I go back to age and disability, if you don't mind, Heather? It just, the zero line next to the fifteen hundred, like for spending this year.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, me too.
Yeah.
Uh, we budgeted the fifteen, but it's not. You were talking about all sorts of good stuff happening. Could you help me with that?
So it's almost like they, we had been budgeted fifteen hundred in the past, which got us nowhere.
Mm-hmm.
So instead of funding that fifteen hundred under office supplies, it's now funded in copying and printing and special activities up above. So that is, we're like, so in the past, in twenty-four, the the money that Aging and Disability Commission got was fifteen hundred dollars under office supplies. Then in twenty-twenty-five, it was fifteen hundred dollars instead of under office supplies, under special activities.
Hmm, well, what I what I was seeing is under the uh aging and disabilities special activities line, F Y twenty-five adopted fifteen hundred, but F Y twenty-five year-to-date
Not been spent.
uh by at the end of the year was zero.
Right.
Yeah, see, that that is not correct, because there's definitely money that has been spent, so I don't know why that's not in there.
Maybe it was spent out of social services to the first selectman.
It may just have hit the wrong line. We can we can check on that.
It's hard, so it's hard to um justify the additional appropriations.
Right, so so and what would be great is honestly, if under special activities, it's, but it's gonna be hard, because the money that was budgeted was spent, but more was spent because we had to or they, you know, went out and fundraised and partnered with other organizations, which we could, they could continue to do. Um, but looking at, you know, trying to service the the seniors, but what we were able to fundraise for last year still only afforded one Super Thursday and minimal events where we'd like to increase to um, you know, the four minimally, plus the uh A A R P age-friendly designation.
And so just getting back to this, 'cause we're spending a lot of time here, aging and disability their commission is the funder of the fashion show that didn't come out of social services.
Right. Correct.
Okay, I thought that did. And the the was twenty-eight hundred for social inclusion events. Is that a new ask?
In social services?
In the aging and disability line item.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So I still, I s- I I was going to recommend some reduction to the seventy-three hundred dollars just because of the increase.
Diana, what does it cost to do one of those Super Thursday?
But if.
It could, can you get to?
I don't wanna spend any more time here.
Yeah, I know.
Well, yeah. I I got our fourteen hundred dollars for food on the the for the number of hundred and something seniors that attend.
I don't.
Fifty-three one.
How many seniors attend?
It's over a hundred.
Yeah.
Hundred to hundred and twenty.
So most of this?
Fourteen per super, it's fourteen, you're looking to do four, yeah.
So is most of it, I, the answers I got, most of this doesn't uh say that it goes to the to the lunches, so that's why I'm asking. It doesn't say it goes to the Super Tuesdays.
Almost all of it would go to Super Tuesdays, but they do it more.
But but in the answer I got from Melissa, remember, Melissa's still here.
I'm here.
I was told the increase of seven thousand dollars includes a social inclusion event of twenty-eight hundred, fashion show,
Yes.
seminars on elder rights, printing of the action plan, which is in a separate line item, so it doesn't need to be in the seventy-three hundred dollars. Um, and an increase of five hundred for sensory-friendly events. So is the twelve fifty n- not included in that, or it is included in that? 'Cause we have it separate.
You bet I don't know.
I'm asking, I'm just, I didn't add this up, and is that why there's the Super Tuesday money is in there too?
Yeah. Yes, I believe Super Tuesday, Thursday money is in there as well. It should be, 'cause that's part of the ask.
So.
I was just breaking down the increase.
But I, the twelve fifty was, is not part of the third twenty, seventy-three hundred?
Uh, that's correct, 'cause that would be a separate line item under copy print.
So then the the two, three, four, five, six, so the twenty, somebody can add this twenty-eight hundred, two thousand twelve, and five hundred, and five hundred is what I see. Yeah, so then that should be, it doesn't, unless we just didn't say that that was what was included in here, because it's not counted for. Is anybody following me, or am I?
I'm totally following you, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, the total increase for aging and disability across the line items that they have was seven thousand fifty, and then the the response I gave with the breakdown should total seven thousand fifty, inclusive of the twelve fifty for copy print.
Okay, but we already have that outside of that. So that should come out of the seventy-three hundred?
I'm working this.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we have a total of
Eighty-five fifty.
Eighty-five fifty, you're saying the total is eight, is seven thousand?
The total increase was seven thousand fifty, so I was just trying to break down the total increase.
Oh, in addition to fifteen hundred.
That was, the total increase that was requested was seven thousand fifty.
Do you see what I'm saying? Does anybody?
No, 'cause you're saying the printing is twelve fifty.
'Cause I'm I'm reading what. Right, but it says the printing is included in the seventy-fifty. That's the question I'm asking, is it or is it not?
Correct. Correct. It is.
Yeah.
So we need to back that out of that, because there's a separate line item for twelve fifty, correct?
Right.
So we reduce seventy-three hundred by twelve fifty, is how I'm seeing it.
Or get rid of the twelve fifty line, one of the others.
Yeah.
I know, I think it's the um I think what she's saying is is the seventy-three hundred is inclusive of the initial fifteen hundred, so it'd be inclu- adding fifty-eight hundred
Oh.
plus the twelve fifty equals your eight-five-five-zero.
Correct. Correct.
So up here on the screen, Wendy, so last year, there's the fifteen hundred, this year, the eighty-five fifty, the difference is seven thousand fifty dollars.
Yeah.
That includes the twelve fifty.
I I'm saying, I I I get that, but what I'm saying is the breakdown that M- well, Melissa gave me from seventy-fifty is twelve fifty.
I think it's the increase.
Yeah.
Includes twelve fifty, I'm just.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yes.
What am I missing?
No, there's a paragraph. Do you wanna see this, Tom? Say.
I have it, yeah, I have it in front of me.
The increase is seventy.
The twelve fifty.
It's the increase. It's it's the original fifteen hundred plus the increase.
But this is the justification of the seventy-fifty includes a calculation of twelve fifty.
Correct.
The the eight fif- eight fif- eighty-five fifty is seven fifty more than fifteen hundred.
Correct.
That's seventy-three hundred plus twelve fifty.
Right, correct, yeah, yeah, correct.
Right, you're referencing the last share.
Are you reading what I'm reading here?
So, yes, but it were seconds, talking about the in.
No. Right, so twenty-five hundred.
So so you start with fifteen hundred.
I'm talking about the seventy-three hundred.
'Cause that's what was previously budgeted, and that's what she's saying.
What? Well, I'm just talking about the budget for this year.
I'm just talking about the seventy-three hundred.
No, but she's saying the increase over last year of seven thousand.
Yeah, pretty similar.
They're like the, they're crystals and oranges, it's just over.
Alright, so.
I'm just guessing if the printing is duplicated, is all a matter.
I'm gonna spend two thousand seven hundred and fifty.
If there is seventy fifty, if you to the fifteen hundred, it's not, have potato chips.
No.
No.
It is duplicated.
Yeah.
Potato chips.
It's just a difference.
Yeah, no, because that number is not this number plus last year's.
Can we get a bathroom break?
I just, I'm reading what Melissa's saying.
But I I actually, I'm a.
Yeah.
Twelve fifty, it's the printing.
She was breaking down the difference.
Yeah.
This number
Seventy-fifty is different.
is not this number. She didn't.
I thought it was the whole total, so alright, never mind. I thought it was the, the definition of the total seventy-five hundred, not addition to the first, but I can't.
What's that?
If it's fifty.
The difference, the explanation is only. The explanation addresses the difference.
Either way, can we shave a little?
Yeah, let's.
Yeah, what do you wanna do?
I'll cut to the chase.
There it is. What do you wanna, what uh how many soups for old people would you like to cut tonight?
Yeah. Well, it's not just for soups.
Save, Kevin. Nice.
Oh.
It's not just for soups.
Right, I'm I'm willing to, I'm willing to be efficient on tax dollars here, I, but.
It's a description.
Thank you.
Go to five thousand. I just, I think it should, I would do six, six and get rid of thirteen hundred.
I'm okay with, I'm okay with that.
But that's getting rid of twenty-five hundred, yeah.
I'm okay with that change, and then if there's a a a huge mid-year demand, we can reconsider.
Okay, six is there.
So but I'm looking at the line item, seventy-three hundred minus thirteen hundred is six.
Seventy-three hundred. Is six. Plus the twelve fifty.
Plus the twelve fifty is still there, correct?
Yeah, so seventy-two fifty from.
That's what I'm saying. Yes, if I'm ta- I may be taking meals away from myself. Okay, I I qualify for the seniors.
No, super you.
I I I support the efficient budget.
Does that fund it elsewhere?
So note, Wendy, just not get lunch on a fashion show day, okay?
Alright, I think we need a five-minute break. I I just.
Are we doing, are we still doing?
No.
How do we finish the boards and commissions?
Are we twice finish the boards and commissions?
Yeah, 'cause Heather's question, was it Heather that asked about D I contractual?
As she did, yes, I'm sorry, I interrupted.
No, it's.
I did.
Oh, yeah, I thought Kevin did, but you did.
I, oh, I did. I was just curious, is what the ex, i- is it just for Juneteenth? Is that what the forty-five fifty is each year?
I would. It was flat funded originally to.
Six fifteen.
It was not Juneteenth, it was, it includes the human library. I'm looking at Kevin, 'cause he's the leader, he's on.
I thi- I think so. I don't know why it says contractual services, though, right? I thi I think so I don't know why it says contractual services though right?
Yeah because they they contracted part of it out with uh so it is Juneteenth and it is the human library.
There's a licensing fee or something for the human library.
Yeah that is correct.
Did we already talk about the um special activities under the Board of Selectment Community Services or did we talk about that under the Town Manager?
I can swipe this in.
The the I'm going to it's still under Community Services the this item.
This
The special activities did we already define that or did we discuss that for Town Managers cause there was another
I'm sorry which line Wendy I can't
The special activities under Board of Selectment Community Services.
Yeah we talked about this is the Memorial Day parade.
Okay thank you okay and then yeah yeah damn yeah it's been a while already okay anything else on this page?
Yeah. Oh you're right.
Home town. Oh the two fifty.
On the on the boards and commissions?
Yeah. Oh the building um I had a question on beautification of course I'm gonna nickel and dime here four forty seven hundred we're giving to agricultural supplies for beautification when when twenty year twenty five year to date's only been six seventy six. So I'm just curious to what that five thousand dollars is for.
Could cause the the they buy most of the plants in the spring for the planting in the boxes and things like that in the mulch
Right.
so the the real bills will come in this coming spring for this back half of the budget that's why half a lot of it hasn't been spent yet.
In this month yeah.
Okay. Okay.
They just bought mums in the fall so now in the spring they do all the other stuff.
What was the year end actual for twenty four do you know?
There's thirty one fifty three.
That's right.
So that seems reasonable.
It's on my lovely PDF that I have in front of me that's
Flowers have gone up too.
Flowers have gone up too okay so I just was questioning if if there's
I think it's a good question I didn't know.
And there's no other money plants this is the the money we have available for plants we used to have
And volunteers are the ones doing this work right?
Yeah yeah.
So that's a good value for the candidate.
Okay. Okay so I know we used to have a pot of money for a pollinator pathway I don't know where that money is.
That's a different pot of money.
Yes yeah.
Okay that's plant also those are other plants right?
That's a different pot of money.
Those are diff the the beautification does like the the eye ways of design.
Yeah I know what they do cause I think they're beautiful.
Yeah the pollinator pathways are in different places.
But that's still plant money that's sitting there correct?
Technically yes that's some of it hasn't been spent yet.
I know.
We're using it in nat to see natural areas and areas in the golf course and other
Okay.
places like like not not the work of beautification.
I'm not gonna say but you get where I'm going right?
I do I understand.
Okay alright.
Can I just circle back so last year it said D E I spent thirty five hundred so we could take that down correct?
Oh I had a question. I had a question too to related to that.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know if you heard Heather's question but I said yes.
Yeah I did hear but I wanted to ask too because now we have the agreement with the Performing Arts Center
Okay.
and the M O U does not give us any benefit to hold the event there.
That's a good question.
The M O U allows town sponsored events there when it doesn't interfere with their regular schedule.
And it can't because this is part of their regular sk this is has to be built into their schedule so to tap onto the third to lowering it we should be getting a better discount from the pack to do this event.
Well I can speak to them about that or you can cut it if you cut it.
Well we could well Heather just ask if you if we could go to thirty five
I just suggested cutting it by a thousand because we only we spent a thousand less last year.
Yeah. Yeah I I yeah and then I'm saying if we could get a discount from the pack because we have a M O U
Where's that?
then we should be able to match meet that right?
Yeah I think we're asking about the Juneteenth. I so I think that there's some um contractual fees that they have to pass on at the pack um you know based on like all the stuff that's rented and and yada yadas
Okay.
Yes.
and that was a concern for uh them when they were running the um the Juneteenth a couple of years ago and so I don't have detail on the budget I know it conceptually and I'm sure that the Town Manager can let us know why it was one number you know last year and why it didn't go up to the full forty five.
Okay so if this is the contract contractual amount that they need to hold the event then I'm fine with leaving it as it is.
There's also a um a challenge of getting it from one other community I guess right now uh Canton hasn't uh fulfilled their
Right.
They better cough it up.
Well but uh yes I talk with your counterpart first one.
I will I'll give Kevin a close call.
But I I I called him I didn't have any influence hopefully he'll
I I'm sure I have a lot of influence Canton um okay are we okay now with this and can we take a five minute
So then that's thirteen hundred dollars from boards and commissions.
Are we taking down?
Huh?
Are we taking down?
Speaking what down?
Maybe uh
No.
Is that the answer Wendy thirteen hundred off of boards and commissions?
I I don't I didn't keep it in my head but
That's the only one yeah.
That's the
That's the only one yeah.
Oh yeah thirteen hundred so and then if we could get just like a little subtotal of how much we've maybe taken out
Seventy thousand five fifty.
There you go.
Okay let's meet back at eight o'clock do I need a motion to make a recess or no?
No we can stand recess yeah.
No it's yours.
It's we're taking a five minute recess so I apologize again to all the department heads and people that are sitting through this. Um do we wanna just see we're how much we we're we're never mind we were gonna see where we are but oh don't worry.
Yeah we've got a number here at seventy thousand five hundred.
Correct. Alright it's my number.
Alright but don't wear it out.
We can't we have double and triple check another pack of nothing exactly.
Okay. Um election administration. Right now anybody have questions on that?
No.
How come I have one question? How come the where's all the extra money that we're gonna need for the um if we have a primary and if there's a you know the early voting would that be in here is that's already budgeted?
That's what it would be chair.
Is it already in here?
It's our question sorry.
Okay cause
Yeah we don't have a budget for the
So we have um they're in their part-time line item they have early voting pool there's like ballot transfer we budget for a recount as well.
It's under what it's under registrars?
Yep.
Okay so we're covered we thank for
Hopefully.
And just to let you know as of today Secretary of State's office we got a conference call
We believe so.
the governor's budget does not include any money for any towns on early voting so until the and they are you know proposing legislation to try to maybe
Right.
shorten the length of time but until that happens we have to plan for what we have to do.
But it's in this all it's in this plan though.
Um it's all the towns. So that's that's I'm sure that the registrars have planned for that because we haven't heard otherwise and now we know we're not
And they're Okay I that's what I'd heard too but they're and they're both very good so I'm sure they did plan Okay so election move on. Who's next Town Clerk?
We didn't get any written questions on this video here.
No oh good good.
Um the copy and printing services uh increase yeah standard it just went up like Trish.
Copy and printing that includes our code supplement the town code um we don't know exactly that without a map would be from year to year one year we under budgeted and found out with all the legislation that we passed that the um the cost of that was was almost double than what we had planned so we had to pull from other areas so to provide for that you know we have whenever we have ordinances and things that pass they have to go in and be be part of the flow we have charter revision going on so that's going to impact so that's just a um I'm thinking probably pre pretty accurate for what we've expected in two past years.
Okay that's we're moving on then. Probate court anybody have any questions on the probate court?
No I don't think you get much of that.
No.
Is it I do what the public agency support is that just their support like what is that under probate?
No.
I thought contribution to the probate.
Okay okay thank you. Um Finance Department.
Kinda.
The the
Nobody's getting paid.
The computer the computer software increase what is that for?
We have no budget.
Um so that's a contractual increase for Mina software and then that is your new Mark up um budgeting software the annual fee being built into the budget.
Um who's going to answer I have any any other question?
The bank fees.
That's what my question here is.
Um so there either there are a couple things so there's some that are allocated to the Tax Department there's some that are allocated I think to um the library
Mm-hmm.
some of them could be for return checks some of the actual calculated bank fee that we get charged um based on their formula for the balance and our accounting and to that nature and then um a smaller portion I think we're probably correct these.
Why does overtime go up twelve and a half percent is it is that because that position was not filled?
Um no so overtime is increased based on actual usage it's actually more than that that they were doing for overtime um but they would take a um compensation time as opposed to overtime so we'd have to build it into the budget but now the contract has changed where the comp time is paid out so now it's either overtime payout or comp time payout we don't have the option to just give them additional time and not pay for it.
Okay anybody else? Um where to find you?
I guess we just cut that too.
Um there's no real change there. What is I don't
I have a question.
Okay.
How are we saving um forty percent on part-time what changed?
Um Those are based on actual hours of our meeting clerk we just hadn't been hitting the budget previously so we reduced it.
Okay.
Okay just fully responsible.
Yeah this budget went down.
Okay um Tax Department.
Assessor.
Oh tax oh assessor sorry.
Assessor.
There's no page for that.
Because
Assessor? Two seconds to find it.
That's good. No question.
No question.
Okay anybody else Tax Office?
Any?
Questions on the Tax Office? Um Contractual Services is that what is that?
The Tax Department for the contractual services.
It went up three K so
Yeah so that is the printing of our bills late notices demand letters um mail certified and full delivered to the post office the Connecticut J M B direct program and then printing every books.
No.
No the redundancy we should have some compiling software.
Okay. Okay well you made a good suggestion last year.
I could we we implemented that.
Yeah that was a good
Really?
Multiple property you were you're getting there. Thank you for that.
Oh you did do something.
He did he did a good job last year last year.
Put that down my screen.
Put it on your list okay Tax Department Tax Office okay now we're into I T.
Yes yes.
I T.
Um I have a question on the uh I T technical and program equipment going up sixty four percent.
Oh I jumped to I got it.
Yeah it's um it's the line item has been going up for the last couple of years as well um we talked about it earlier but uh this evening is I T's trying to get decentralized from other departments so that's where you see that.
That's true that's true.
Yeah. Okay which what did you just ask which line?
The I T part.
The I T is what we That's a transfer last line of experience.
Forty eight seven forty. Okay I have think I have a question on that I gotta just look. Yeah I asked about um I would remove technical equipment out of C N R and into the operations what would forty six the K be forty six K so did you just answer that question?
Yes.
Okay the thirty I just wanna refresh my minutes again for Melissa's minutes. This is shown in C N R is being added. Okay so this is an this is gonna be an ongoing cost?
Yes we've been funding it every single year through C N R.
And did we say what the software was that I missed that too?
Uh we did um
I'm a little behind okay.
That you mean the question that you had asked me there?
I did you answered that so never mind it was a three an anti virus software. Okay.
Annual annual costs those items.
Okay um Planning Department. We do
I have a few questions um not hundred percent line item specific but um the under the goals and objectives the tariffed planning study um I'm just curious when we'll be receiving updates and what I would like to know what really comes out of the study if the longer I'm on this board the more I get I'm skeptical of what the R O I is on these studies that we do and um I would just like to see um like what sort of zoning changes and economic development is created out of this study before we move on?
So I can off time Brittany is this
Yeah of course.
I've been working closely with our consultant on the tariff study uh we're in our recommendation stage so S L R consultant is working on we did the public outreach stage we collected data we did a site analysis of the area um we're putting together recommendations to bring forward uh to that we will present to the Board of Selectmen as well as the public on um tangible things that we can do to the area to help improve it and that includes economic development zoning accessibility connectivity recreation
Recreation.
things like that so it is forthcoming.
Oh great okay we can do that perfect thanks.
Yeah and I had talked to George too because we just just answer your question again that it's we wanna hear about it since we funded that a few years back
Yep.
and see how it's progressed so and will that be when is the timing on that did you say?
So I I'm meeting with them this week on the recommendations we're finalizing that document
Okay.
um we're gonna brav bring to planning commission and the public and Board of Selectmen you know
April.
April I would say yep.
Okay. Okay. Anybody have other things for planning we know we're moving the vehicle back in here.
Um I have a question for planning the the computer software if if we're moving them all together is this why is this one separate?
We're not doing that yet.
There are a number of them.
Oh okay okay.
There's still some. Um
Sorry.
We need to add it to our revenue.
Yes.
Okay.
What what's the technical and program equipment is that on board? Brittany do you know uh one of mine it says technical and program equipment uh went up to three thousand from two thousand dollars do you know what that references?
So I know I know building has um equipment that you eat they use day to day boots things like that that um they study.
Yeah that's not bad.
What?
On that equipment.
Right right.
Are you under land use commissions or
You're
Yeah.
Because under land use commissions there was a jump and that was for the um the boards the land use commissions um devices that they use that's not
That's the same thing she said things they use.
Yeah the things they use.
They're tablets they're tablets okay thank you.
That's technical term the things they use.
Alright and
I said boots.
Okay.
I have I have one more planning question.
Sure.
Um under revenues um the adopted versus estimated from seven hundred thousand to um one point two million uh what's the reason for the large differential and the budgeted of eight fifty this year is that is this just a one-off um?
I mean we had a with a lot of past projects that were approved a few years ago that are just coming to fruition now and so they've all been applying for building permits to be on those projects so it could have been projects that were approved two three years ago last year and they just this it's this this year that they're applying for those building permits.
So I had to question.
We can affect our grantless growth next year.
Oh we
So I wanted a
Okay.
Perfect. Can I ask a question related to that?
We like how it all fits together.
The question I had on this which thank you for asking your question cause I would have forgot my question which is on my other sheet was um about the increase in building fees that is being proposed that's a policy decision that has to come to us correct?
Uh for revenue you mean?
Yeah oh did we were talking about revenue too.
Yeah. I was talking about revenue.
Yeah and so we haven't talked about what that looks like and so just wanted to have you speak to that where that's going up and how that's gonna be implemented and when.
Uh we would have draft legislation to you for your meeting of the tenth to set a public hearing and we're in the process of drafting that now so we'd have to get back to you on the numbers but you're absolutely right it's gotta be something that you would uh approve uh of and otherwise you gotta take that revenue back out of the
Yeah that's what I that's my point is
I mean you may have made
Timing.
so many cuts that you don't wanna raise the building permit fee. So we're look we're looking for some guidance from the board on that.
Yeah but I guess if it's I guess if it's an option to raise the building fee cause it was you presented it as a
Yeah.
decent option I don't know what the build business community thinks of that other than must I ask?
Well as you said it's it's a it's a policy it's a policy decision so we'd like to get some feedback from you tonight if if because if you don't wanna do it we wouldn't you know draft the legislative
But we're undercharging.
How are we compared to other communities of other communities?
Yeah.
If you exclude the fire district's charge we're we're low I think if you include it you're high.
Recon.
Are we five percent low twenty five percent low? Yeah about four percent low you it it the recommendation is to increase it by one dollar not two could increase it by two but we went with a a middle of the road safe recommendation so So does the one dollar equate to four percent or? I think it was fifty. I'll get back to you on that I believe it was fifty.
So so I I talked with George about this and he sent me some some numbers after we asked about before so the one dollar increase for like a fifty thousand dollar home addition would end up being about fifty dollars on the permit that's seven hundred thirteen now seven sixty three after the change.
But that's my point I don't think we've made up four percent I think you need the two dollars to get up to where we should be.
Well that's so that's why the one dollar was a recommendation sort of met in the middle it's um I it
But is are you asking us for the recommendation or that's George's?
It'll be
Well we we just wanna know if you have any appetite for increasing it at all George's recommendation Well, we we just wanna know if you have any appetite for increasing it at all. George's recommendation was a dollar, and and I concurred, and that's why it made it into the town manager proposed. The debate that that Kevin is is referencing is the, well, the fifty dollars is accurate, but I think the issue for me was the if what the fire district did
Yeah.
two years ago altered. If if were it not for that, I would have recommended a two-dollar increase. And so I think it's a fair criticism to say, you know, forget what the fire district did, what would your recommendation be otherwise? It would be two.
Do you a dollar fifty or you it's better to stay with?
You know, I deferred to George. I think the board could raise any anything you want. Doesn't have to be a dollar.
Do whatever you want. A dollar thirty-three.
I I I don't know about one or 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 two, uh honestly, but I think this is one of those areas where um it's it's an addition. It's uh something that's elective for a resident, so they're not, and so anywhere where we can recoup revenue um in an area like this versus broad basing it on everybody for all of them trying to do this helpful. And I don't think that it's uh overly burdensome, like I mentioned, that dollar amount uh for an individual resident who's just trying to do something nice for their small property. It'll probably be more and more for um you know larger uh contractors or or you know larger developments, but um so I I'm supportive at least of the of the dollar increase without regarding the.
Hmm.
So did you have some information? You seem to like you got a bunch of charts.
I do, I have data. I just wanna give you an idea. So for the first one thousand dollars of of a permit fee
Got the math.
Okay.
or sorry, for cost and materials, 'cause that's how you determine the fees. Simsbury is four fourteen dollars and twenty-six cents. The average is thirty-one dollars and thirty-four cents, so.
Then I'm all for two dollars. I'll throw up.
Me too.
It it changes.
It should.
If you go go on up.
So if you go up the additional thousand, you go fourteen dollars, twenty-six cents for each additional one thousand for for Simsbury, and the average is sixteen dollars, eight cents. Oh, at average of different towns.
So for that first thousand, a lot of towns will charge a little bit more, and then each thousand after that they'll drop down.
Mm-hmm.
We also thought that we you know we were gonna come to you to set a public hearing, that you would wanna hear from the public on this, so we wanted to get that to you as quickly as we could.
Fair enough. I'm inclined to go too, if you're looking for guidance from the one to six.
Sure, we have not, we have not, just a recommendation to what just came to me. We haven't put out the agenda for what what I think will be a special meeting on March third.
We meant to mention that early, but.
If we could get with your permission, add that to the agenda, we might be able to at least get that ready for you to set the public here.
So Steve, i- if we increase it to two, should it we just budget now, keep the one increase in?
We should keep the one in for sure.
What? So I think we just keep the one in, we don't need to increase it to two?
Yeah, yeah, I think we keep it in. Um which line item is that though? For some reason I'm losing my place.
So that would be huge.
It's on the revenue side.
It's on the revenue side.
Oh, the revenues side, I don't have, oh, I'm in the wrong. I see, I got it, building.
It's on the revenue side.
Some between nineteen and.
Got it.
Okay, okay.
Yes.
Yeah, page one nineteen.
I'm I'm only looking at expenditures. That's all I, well, I on my on paper, the others I have in here.
Because if I didn't send you George's memo, I meant.
I I might, I don't know anymore. I know that's not very professional to say, but I don't know. Um planning, we're good?
Uh no questions.
Building. Planning and building? That's what I.
Nothing here, true.
Same to me.
Okay. Police department. Going to the police budget. Um.
Like.
It's the little lag here on clear cut. Does anybody else notice that?
Yes.
Yeah, especially when you go.
It's.
Yeah, I'm using paper cup and it's working.
See.
Think you go to print the P D F. Just don't spill your water on us.
Likewise, Kevin.
Okay, um expenditures for the police. Okay, I'm opening it up for questions.
I think the only question I had, but we've kind of answered it, but again, I just wanna make sure, 'cause we have training that wouldn't wasn't previously in line items and suddenly has a line item. Is that going back to that whole breakout of what used to be and now it's uh per?
Yes, training is the new line that remained in the department, yeah.
Good.
Great.
Um I just have questions. I have this question every year. Is the overtime is just a a large, large increase? Um and the and then this year I have a question on the holiday pay increase. That's a twenty-five thousand dollar increase from last year into potential thirty twenty or thirty from the estimated for fiscal year.
And is there room to cut that? And then if, well, because the P D no, I mean, the P D seems to always seems to have a little extra in the budget. So wouldn't we be able to cover that with any internal savings in the police department if the need arose for the overtime or the holiday pay?
So which one do you like to answer first?
The overtime's actually down from last from previous.
Pay.
So, yeah, the the overtime is um is kind of a beast. So um
Yeah.
it goes up when we don't have personnel. It goes up when we have personnel, but they're not available because of injuries or illnesses. Uh we try to to keep it confined based on limiting training, limiting conferences, limiting those things, which is not knowing where we're going to be. Um and then we have things that just pop up. And I'll just give you a, for instance, uh you know, a major traumatic life-changing event last year for a family in town. Um it was fifty hours of overtime for that alone. Uh then we had an investigation that happened in March that led to uh an arrest and federal involvement as well. A hundred hours of overtime. And this is in addition to, you know, all the regular man-hours during the regular workday. So these things pop up consistently. Uh what we have seen over the last few years is uh we have filled our school resource officer position. We have treated that like we treat our districts. We need an officer there. So when that S R O is uh on leave for some reason, whether it's vacation or compensatory time, which they uh limit quite significantly during the school year. But if they're on leave for training, that only happens during school time, or they're sick, we we fill it with another officer. So as much as we would like to control uh that overtime, we have very limited ability to control as you know as much as we would. We have extra sort of year after year, the last few years, because we haven't been fully staffed. So they've they've directly related to each other. Now, with that said, if we're fully staffed, we're still gonna have significant overtime for all those other reasons. Every year we look at what is the reasoning for our overtime. If we look at the last six months of of this fiscal year, so July one through December uh thirty-one, we we have fifty percent of that is because of contractual requirements to fill patrol shifts um and because of sickness and need and injury. That's fifty percent. Only twenty percent of that is for those extra those calls for service. The two incidents that I described, which we had several of those of last year, but twenty percent is from that. So so we we try to manage it all, but I would say just because we have a full staff load, doesn't mean that's that that's going to come down. We honestly do look at every single thing and try to try to manage it as best as we can. The reason it went up, uh wages go up and that affects the overtime rate. So that's one of the reasons why uh the overtime regularly grows regardless of of the hours. The holiday pay is directly related to uh the overtime rate. So it's in the contract that that the I B P O members will receive X number of holidays at X rate. And that rate goes up every year, we need to be honest. Uh next year, they have an additional holiday, so they went up to uh the basically the average number that the rest of the town has. Uh so it went up, and that's the reason for the twenty-five thousand dollar increase. Now, we don't budget the the full one hundred percent that would be required because the officers have an option of taking vacation pay in lieu of getting paid for the holidays, which could or could not create overtime. So we look at a percentage of that, and I believe this one we're down to sixty percent.
Sixty.
Yeah, this one maybe sixty or sixty-two percent. We started a few years ago with help from the the finance department. Uh we looked at, and the board of finance, I should say. We looked at like year after year, what is what are those expenditures? And it did range. Like one year, we expended ninety percent of what we actually needed. So that year we would have been well under if we had budgeted under that. But consistently for the last few years, it's been between sixty percent and seventy-seven percent. So there's a little bit of a gamble, a little bit of a risk with this. Um but this is where we're comfortable this year, and that's why it's not.
Yes.
Uh the education reimbursement uh is there about uh this year? Just wondering about, I don't know if we moved to another line or.
We moved H R.
Yeah, H R.
It's on the printed copy.
So for all the education reimbursement?
That, yeah, that's that's a cost tuition reimbursement, not not training.
Should be in the description somewhere, um under expenditures, but it's on the printed copy.
To uh what is the other departments um tuition reimbursements? Like I thought the police department had a sort of a better arrangement. Is it consistent across the departments or?
We're certainly trying to make it consistent. I don't think we're quite there yet, are we, Chief?
No, I think ours is somewhat unique in that uh it says the the budgeted line item is the maximum. It's not a maximum of
Little bit, yeah.
X number of classes per year or per semester. It's based on, this is the budgeted item, and then it's based on seniority.
Uh what is it? And did we ask what the contractual services that went up eighteen percent? Do we have that? Or I don't know if I asked that question.
Yeah, you did ask that question.
Yes.
Oh, I did ask.
Yeah.
I did. Increase is due to the anticipated expenses related to promotional testing and selection, so what does that even mean?
Yeah, so when we have a supervisor position open, uh we have to put on a promotional exam. And that that costs a lot of money. There's a whole process involved. We vote through a selection of what group we're going to use for that. Um in leasing and fire, oftentimes these cases can go to courts, so we wanna make sure that we have a very good, solid team working with us, a third party doing our assessment. Um and it costs money. And so we expect that this next year, we will have one, if not two, promotional processes that we need to go through. The uh if if you meet a certain criteria, time on the job here, you can apply for a promotion. And and if we have one, then we put on a test, and that list is good for so long, and then that list can expire. Right now, we are in a period where the list expired, so there won't be any uh list to go off of, so we'll have to put on a promotional. We will get uh one out of the two next year. We may have to do two, and then we can come back to the board for for help on how to get there. But we are expecting at least one within the next six years.
So the so the sixty-seven, nine seventy-five is for one?
No, it's ten thousand dollars. You said it, it went up.
It went up, but the but okay, but the budget.
It went up ten thousand dollars.
The budget itself is sixty-seven, nine seventy-five.
Yep, that's not for promotion. Only ten thousand dollars for promotion.
Okay, what else though? What else is in there? I guess would be in.
The contractual?
Yeah.
Uh we have uh E A P services, we have our clear national accreditation services, we have our uh net motion cell phone usage for modems.
Okay.
We have a whole lot.
I get the picture.
Chief, where are the body cams in the?
I can continue.
Where where's Axie?
Uh C N R.
C N R.
C N R, gotcha.
So you I I it's hard to question question the police, I just gotta say, but um
How's your registration?
You have the right to remain silent. But are these number, do you are you gonna use this money? Like 'cause we're taxing people on these overages for overtime, holiday pay, and contractual services, so the taxpayers being charged for this stuff, is that going to actually come to fruition this year? And is there any way to reduce that?
So if you look at the change from last year to this year, we reduced significantly. We already already have felt that we are at the point where we are at the lowest we can be. We went significantly further, and we can and we can use the administrative car as one of those examples that we're really stretching uh things out. Uh and that was in the uh operating budget. Uh so the answer to your question is yes.
Well, and I meant specific to
We're gonna use these.
Specific to the O T and the holiday pay was really my direct my real question.
Yes.
It challenges for us, so we don't necessarily wanna be over budget either. And so um you know budgeting appropriately, and I think that the four point six four percent increase uh year over year is pretty reasonable for the department considering everything else that's going on, new contracts and everything else.
Just yeah, I didn't look at the bottom one, I just looked at that line items.
No, I I think it's good to question the overtime. You justified it to me.
Okay, all right, anybody else? I'll be tail later.
What is the um police miscellaneous?
What is?
Right.
Um well, it's uh page one twenty-seven.
Clear about? It's in revenues.
I don't have those.
It's in it's in revenues, revenues.
Oh.
I have like ten pages?
It's in.
Stephen drives really fast.
I was just curious, what what the generate like what the generator is of that.
Yeah, so you're 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 um you're tapping into my my brain here on what the miscellaneous revenue is, but there's there's several sources of revenue. One is is um
Give me one of that one.
Like a. Alarm, yeah, that's my brain.
It's under charges for goods and services, and it's from forty-one, and now we're budgeting for fifteen thousand to four thousand. So just kinda curious about these things as well.
So there are uh pistol permit applications, alarm permit applications, here fees when when we go to homes and businesses multiple times. Um we have other uh fees that we generate from uh requesting copies of reports. Um there are some.
Are you ex are you increasing your fees? Are you expecting more business?
Thank you from the door. Don't know what that one is.
So these are um payments that are made from the state of Connecticut?
Our portion.
Yes, our portion of uh.
Ticket is issued?
Yes.
There are certain motor vehicle violations where ten dollars of that goes to the town. Um for other like criminal-related things, some of that money comes back to the town. So that's important. The ju the judicial department sends sends money back to us.
Okay, and we're just expecting what? We're just expecting more this year?
I think we're basing it on the Henderson.
I think we might have under budgeted revenue in prior year.
Gotcha, okay.
That's more than likely.
Okay.
I know.
I don't see Clifton salary.
That was in the.
That's not our next slogan.
I was gonna ask, could you just point out where Clifton's salary is in the budget? I'm sorry.
All revenue.
Interesting.
Missileanes.
As you can see, Clifton does not have a budget or a salary.
I I didn't think so, I was just curious. Okay, um are we are we done with the police?
Well, I just had a curious thing.
Okay. Be be nice about it.
Now let's say someone was driving. Um no, I actually have a legitimate one. Uh I'm just curious why overtime was zeroed out under animal control. It's a curiosity.
Yeah, it is a curi- yeah.
Yes, and um so um historically, very little has been uh required to the animal control officer for overtime, because they both like all last three of them, I should say, have historically looked for compensatory time, time off.
Okay.
So it's not a contractual uh agreement, but um they've just been more interested in taking time off as opposed to.
Fair enough, I'm all for it.
Until we see otherwise.
Watch it with Tom.
Disaster. Okay, um.
Thank you, V C O.
Are we on dispatch or are we?
I guess we're on dispatch. Well, we jumped to animal control. Somebody went out of order in this.
I had no questions on dispatch, I assume.
I have no questions on the remaining.
Well, I didn't, can I um did you have a question on dispatch, Curtis?
Uh no, no, 'cause I'm I'm on the police mission.
Okay. You just.
So I guess I was actually.
You just. Yeah, I already asked my dispatch question. Okay, no dispatch question, animal control, the emergency management, we already identified the public agency support to label that as C M A D, correct? That's the C M A D money.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
And the tech and program supplies, I don't know what that is, but down. Are you putting it in the budget?
Yeah, under emergency management.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we have for I don't know, maybe twelve plus years anyways, we've had um Everbridge notification system that we use. Uh and that was a per capita charge. It's about six thousand dollars. So we've worked with um I T in many schools, looking for a different method for um notifying the town personnel about closures and emergencies like that. The other aspect, we still have the emergency notifications in the creative, we still have this uh provided for by the stick.
Okay. Okay, now we're 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 moving on. We'll get into the public works realm here.
Sounds good.
What does?
Correct?
Nope, you're up, Tom, sir.
Oh, so public works administration.
Chief, watch your sound.
Okay. Um I'm opening it up to questions.
Just on this region.
He's he's getting out of the way.
I I know, but when when there's fire to be had, Eric is getting out of the way.
I had a I had a couple questions, so I'll just that I Melissa answered nicely for me, of course. I asked about the increase to the consultant in engineering. In my response, the ten five, and the response was the includes additional five hundred for on-call services, survey work, this related, blah blah whatever. Additional ten thousand for on-call civil engineering. Additional ten thousand for on-call civil engineering services. So um wanted to just tell them what that is and.
Yeah, we we've seen a rapid increase in the amount of projects that we've done considering here's why. And I think this goes back actually two years ago, we considered whether we would actually ask for another position and the reality was, one, we thought it would be difficult to get approved. And two, we didn't even feel we'd find a candidate right now, engineers are are just in in demand. Um we end up, I believe last year, taking some of the savings associated with the electrical utilities and we applied that to increase it by thirty five thousand. And even with that, we're finding ourselves short in terms of some of the specialty engineering work that needs to be dealt with. You know, the engineering department has two engineers, but they don't have engineers that are experts in every single division within civil engineering. Whether it's structural, um just now on Station Street, we needed somebody to do some traffic engineering outside the realm of local people.
Okay. Any any?
But Tom is not conceding that engineers know everything.
We need to get our engineers.
Tom, any question for you in town offices?
Yeah.
Um for the electricity, um we're only budgeting a five thousand increase, but you're estimate you're estimating a hundred twenty five thousand, which is greater than the budget. So should that be higher? Because if our es- if our estimate for twenty twenty five is a hundred twenty five thousand, we're only budgeting a hundred and seven.
Yeah, we we had um I wanna probably double check that, you're making me nervous Curtis. We spent a lot of time looking at some of the past projections and really tried to shave it down tight. And um some of that is some fluctuations in some of the lighting that we had done here, we were actually doing with on-bill financing. So we did electrical upgrades a number of years ago to um improve the energy efficiency of the building and that cost was rolled into our bill. And I believe that was dropping off and I think that's the cause, but let me confirm that.
Yeah.
Is he gonna ask Siri?
What?
Well, no, the 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 year-to-date one is is a lot closer to what the estimate is, so I don't know why the FY twenty five, the budget of the year.
Which I.
So I don't know why the FY twenty five.
I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
Yeah, which item are we here with?
Uh I was in town offices.
They're town offices for facilities maintenance.
Town offices. I, yeah.
Miscellaneous.
I guess the anomaly is really the fiscal year twenty five.
Because twenty four is only eighty seven.
It's a huge increase.
The fiscal year twenty five estimated.
Yeah.
Right, but that.
I don't know.
Yeah, I think so, but it's gonna be on bill financing, I was talking.
But look at twenty four.
Not confirmed.
So someone we're questioning the the increase there, is that?
I I I think that it sounds reasonable based on what our year-to-date was.
Yeah.
It's just the estimated line.
I see, I see what you're saying. There's too much to look at here. Um electrical. Somewhere else in here.
Highway labor, um and equipment, there's a big decrease in diesel such as from change of um equipment or vehicles?
Uh no, 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 it's um two things, we have a much better diesel pricing this year than we did last year. And um that was our projection, what we think we're gonna use. And the diesel usage is actually highly dependent upon the weather, so the amount of snowstorms actually has a significant effect on that.
Oh.
Since the more storms there are, the more um plowing that's going on and while they're plowing, they get terrible gas mileage. As the trucks are fully loaded and they're pushing that load as soon. Again, we're looking to shave every place we could, so there is no contingency in that diesel number, it's what we feel we can get by with.
I have two questions. I have a quick question too.
Okay.
Um hold on, who lost my line? Technical and program supplies, the vehicle maintenance software modules, didn't we get those last year? And it's up four thousand dollars, I thought I must not be understanding what a vehicle maintenance software module is.
No, we 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 tried to get those into the budget, I think two years ago under CNR and it and it cut. So instead of actually purchasing the software, we're doing a lease on the software, so we're paying the engineer the fee.
Why do I know that, okay.
Two flat, have you done?
Yeah.
I have two questions. Uh one um is under miscellaneous buildings, what is this um the miscellaneous facilities maintenance? Um it increases by five thousand eight hundred dollars to twenty thousand dollar budgeted, just can you just explain what that is?
Yeah, let's see if I can get to make sure I'm not seeing numbers just um. So under miscellaneous buildings.
This yeah, under miscellaneous buildings, miscellaneous building facilities maintenance, um estimated twenty twenty five is fourteen. Budgeted for twenty six is twenty. Budgeted for uh for twenty five was fourteen two, so it's an increase of five eight. Just wondering, just can you explain what that is and why the increase?
Well, under that facilities maintenance, it's a combination of the bus shelter, the Terriffel Cemetery, uh work at Community Farm and uh the Veterans Memorial. So I think we we've just seen some challenges with the Veterans Memorial and everything. Um the uplighting in particular keeps failing out there, so those are very expensive because essentially waterproof lights, because they're in the ground. So I think we raised it, things we just see trouble with those.
Okay. My other question is under uh revenues, under Eno Memorial Hall. So you could see fiscal year twenty four actuals was sixty sixty three hundred dollars, you know, six six three three zero to be precise. Um seven hundred dollars year-to-date, you're only estimating a thousand dollars uh and budgeted for estimating a thousand for twenty five and budgeting a thousand for twenty twenty six, how come there's a five thousand dollar difference? And I I'm just wondering like um is this just flat rental fees or are these um like somebody rents the building and they have to pay custodial fees? Is that wrapped up in here or custodial fees paid separately, like how?
That that is the the custodial fees.
That is the custodial fees.
It's it's what's these?
Why did it go down from sixty three hundred?
Why is it only a thousand and why why do we only get a thousand dollars on Eno Hall rentals in a year?
So that's my question, so yeah.
Because don't don't other people use it? I mean, it's that's this is the monetize. I'm going back to kind of our first budget meeting, monetize our assets.
Our assets, like like I know what we're gonna write a check for.
We we generally in terms of the Eno Hall, a couple of years ago was being used on Sunday since the church and they were paying essentially full price. Um ever since then, it's been mainly service groups that are paying essentially the custodial fee, which is relatively small fee. It's the time they're using it, I think it's forty five dollars an hour. Just.
Right, but like I okay, so I would just say like I know that when Theater Guild uses it, we're going to, so we're gonna use it coming up in the end of March. Um I know that even last year, you know, we probably the sixty three hundred dollars was us, uh or no, that was twenty five. But like we're gonna probably pay five to six thousand dollars to utilize the building for the two weekends.
Well, it should show up here.
That's what that's why I'm asking that question, is like where's my?
Where's the money?
Well, the the question is why are you paying it?
That's good.
Well, that's.
The question.
Who's getting it?
Well.
No, I'm joking, I'm joking. Yeah, wh- why is it a that is a great question, a thousand dollars. Seems like it's used more than that.
Yeah, I mean again, we're forty five dollars an hour for one person and even that, you're talking four days, it's about fifteen hundred dollars, right?
Yeah.
So where does the rest of the money, so but where's that but where's the rest of that revenue then? Like where does where's that money that we're writing?
I don't I don't have the revenue right in front of me.
Yeah, I think that's a finance question, I think.
Okay.
Yeah, any answers there?
So last year, it looks like for the sixty three hundred, there was one large payment for the Theater Guild for thirty two fifty. And then the rest were smaller, like six fifty, three hundred.
And I and I think that Theater Guild was you had used up the one free time period and then you went on and did a second show, so that was just a higher rate.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
But I don't actually ever see the revenues associated with that. Revenues collected um through social services and it goes to finance and those revenues never come back to the public works budget.
Where do we, the this is totally off-budget topic, but where do we advertise these rental rates for groups to even know that we rent out Eno Memorial Hall?
On top of.
Obviously, as economic development.
Economic development, we could bring in some stuff.
It it's on the webpage and and the only other event that's a bigger event is the Ukulele Fest that's going on.
Oh, Ali's here, Ali's an event.
No, and that's.
Nice time of year.
The Ukulele Fest, but the Ukulele Fest has gotten a waiver associated with economic development every single year, so they're not paying the full boat on the building. So when we open up the building on a weekend, we're not even breaking even.
So what, so who how do we fix that? I look at the town manager, they're good, how do we fix that? Because if we're getting gypped.
It's it's a mean rebuttal, it's it's the challenge of you would have to do a couple of things, you can revise the policy.
Yeah.
You can be willing to be a little tougher on some of these groups and say, we're here and we don't see the value or even with the economic development, this is the cost. So you cool and open up a building of that size.
So does that come to us, the policy on that?
I think it does.
Because um we talked about that too, when we did the public gathering permits, if people are bringing in alcohol, we might wanna charge more because there's a higher risk associated with those events, like at the Apple Barn, at Eno, things like that, right?
I think it also depends on if what whether or not they have a rider on their own insurance policy that they're covering, so.
Yeah, true, but but just it's just.
I think we should have a discussion on monetizing town buildings for rent, but I don't think it'll impact this year's budget.
Yeah.
No, it's not, so are you saying to move it along?
Sorry, yes.
Well, we're making a list for later this year.
I think it's absolutely good to talk about.
We're checking it twice.
Yes.
Because we should talk about, you know, I don't think we need to squeeze the use, but we can.
These are policy things that we can look at in a second when we get through this.
Strong combo, it was last revised by you in November twenty eighteen.
No.
No, my question though, though, is that.
When we last did anything with it.
Looking at our budget though, should we realistically budget, so this is finance question, should we realistically budget?
More revenue?
More slightly more revenue because like we know that there are certain groups that come in annually
Yeah.
and they do pay for that, that's just my question.
Yeah.
So rather than, I mean, I know it's nickels and diming, but we can nickel and dime our way, but like.
When are you doing the three thousand, when are you doing it again? That you know of?
March twenty first to twenty.
So that would be this, that would be this budget, so it's not next year's budget, are you doing it again though the next year?
That would be this budget. Yes.
But it's not in this year, neither.
So then I think that we could increase it by two thousand dollars and just uh be be easy there.
Let's let's.
I don't think that I don't think that we need to overestimate revenues, you know, either, so it's not gonna really impact much.
Right.
Okay.
Correct.
Alright, so we're adding how much, two K or three K?
Two two thousand, so the total's three.
Two thousand.
Okay, we're adding, we're adding something, two some money.
That's that that's just my my, you know, it's small, but like if we're paying it, we might as well put it in the budget.
Okay. Add it to. Agreed.
Tom, I have a quick question, water pollution, the new grit washing system.
Oh, it's a.
That generated a lot of savings, which was great to see and some annually.
It is, it is. Yeah.
Um do you have anything else in the pipeline this year, savings projects?
In the pipeline?
Don't tell it, don't tell it. That's an engineer joke right there. Got a lot in the pipeline.
Took me a while, monsters.
Uh we're working in the future, they're gonna build a new sewage receiving stage. It's just health, control, cost and potentially generate revenue.
We'll get back to you on that one.
It's the uh honey pot process.
I like that.
Are you done with Wordle?
Okay, alright, we.
Um I've got a quick question on why are your streetlights uh down?
What where is it?
Uh for six percent, it is under highway facilities and programs. And the streetlights are, the cost is down six percent.
So streetlights is it covers two things, it's the actual electricity to keep the streetlights on and it's also maintenance and replacement of the streetlights if they fail. Um our maintenance costs have been relatively low, so we were trending to cut. And again, this is bare bones budgeting and we've cut everything.
Just surprised with electricity, so the savings and maintenance must be extreme to offset that as well as providing.
Yeah, the only thing that's it's tough on the maintenance is from time to time, we get hit with unforeseen costs when a um utility pole gets replaced or Eversource or um AT&T replaces a string of poles, we get charged to take our light off of their pole and put it on the new pole. Which is a few hundred dollars every time they do that for us, but we bought the streetlights almost fifteen years ago and it's it's just been.
Yeah, one of these now.
We bought the streetlights, I think we were here for that. And um because Eversource owns, we we purchased them, then we immediately relamped it all to LED and saved money on electricity and we also now own the maintenance, but it gives us better control of it.
What about the cemetery, are those included in this?
Those are private, those five lights in front of the cemetery are private.
They're privately? Okay.
Have why don't we use the the black pole instead of the like the ones that are on the pole? I think the the lights that are.
Decorative ones, too.
Yeah, the more, let's make those brighter.
You want the most expensive pole?
Yes.
Just make them brighter instead of having two lights.
They they will, there there's two different purposes, the the decorative black or green um lights are really to set the mood and to be pedestrian level lighting. Therefore, walk-in sidewalk and it makes them very feel like Simsberry. The ones mounted high in the pole called Cobra Head Lights are so that when you're driving, you can see what's going on. And we pay for all of the streetlights, even on the state roads.
Ah.
Are there any other old lights in town, not like hyperschress sodium or anything like that and the other orders or we all LEDs now? Since we're talking about decreasing the budget.
Tricky question, Kevin, there's a couple of lights that maybe we recently found may have been missed and we did our research on that for us.
Just wonder. I have no other questions there. How are we on salt?
In terms of um right now, we have enough salt that we are not in uh salt crisis. Fortunately, a couple of years ago, when we built the larger salt shed, it allowed us to store a significant quantity. It looks like um stores are becoming available again, we did actually receive a couple of shipments last week. Um but we have enough for at least three storms without any problem.
So I know last year when we didn't have, like we had a couple of winters, we didn't, it didn't look like this winter that we were able to save some money on the salt last year, not not this year, we're not asking to cut that this year.
No, and in in this year has been and top of the trend we've seen is instead of getting light fluffy pretty snow, we've been getting ice and sleet and freezing rain,
Yes.
which is using exceedingly more salt and just regular snow.
And then the rain roasts it away and you gotta do it again.
Or if people plow their shit snow into the street and then it gets plowed and then leaves a black ice patch, I learned on the line, it's not right along that.
Okay, let's.
Kind of road people.
We're done with public works, are we done with public works, we didn't cut anything though.
Yes.
Oh, let's cut some shit.
Wait till we get to CNR, no, I'm kidding. Okay, are are we moving on? Alright, so the next item is social services. We're getting there. Social services. Oh, it's not voting yet.
Wanting to start with.
Yeah, go, go.
So Christian, where is she?
She at that.
Oh, hiding nice. Um I have a question about the full-time salaries going up five point oh six percent. Were there some savings to be realized from, uh we removed one position after ARPA? And I was just wondering where we removed them, but that's why I'm wondering if there's any reciprocals.
From four to five, I mean, we removed.
Well, just, yeah, you can see twenty four was higher, which included that position.
Yeah.
And then twenty five had dropped down and just the five percent. I'm not sure how many full-time staff we have, but it just seems like a large number for.
It's a little bit.
The the answer that I got was that it reflects the GWI increase for twenty five, budgeted in contingency for twenty five
Helped in there?
and step increases for twenty six and the the fiscal year twenty six GWI is still in contingency until the contracts are done, I mean.
That's correct, so for a lot of the departments, what you'll see, the way we budget, um for unsettled contracts, as you know, we budget the GWI, the general wage increase in um a large contingency bucket, um for those GWIs. But if you were to, so our twenty five, fiscal year twenty five budgets um do not include that GWI for that year. So if we were in theory to take that amount that we budgeted for the general wage increase and allocate it to the budget line item, you would see a percent increase more in the line of two or three percent, which would be more reflective.
Okay, that makes sense.
Cause I was gonna ask that, we didn't ask that of Tom Roy, but that also showed.
And it's and it's it's across the board, I mean, that's that's why you'll, that's sort of.
Five, yeah, yeah.
Hey Steve, you were asking about the FTEs, how many?
Cause they're but basically it's an effective whatever, three percent somehow worked in here, that was that was viewed. Um any other, any questions? I don't think I have any other than that one.
Too sure.
Did anybody?
It's like if I I look for the same thing.
No, that's zeroed it out.
Yeah.
Questions?
Again, I guess which I just highlighted the training, but I think we've answered that eight million times, it just keeps getting broken down, so fine, bye.
Alright, so senior center, they don't have a bare bones budget, it looks like. Senior transportation, is that contractual services, is that the dialeride? Are the, is it dialeride, did they, yeah, okay. And is that just goes up every year? I think I think Melissa thought I could look at you too. Okay, alright, library admin. And to. Um questions on library? We already asked, we already asked Lisa the question in the town manager's budget of moving, alright, the nineteen percent was moving one position to admin.
Realization of salary, yes.
Yeah, so that was, we discussed that um in the budget.
Yes.
Um other items in here.
I just had a question on why reference materials have gone up well over four percent.
Contractual increases with our databases.
I had a question, the computer, the CNR computer replacements, that's one that the PEGPisha, you you.
Yes, the grant went in two weeks ago too, but we don't hear till April.
Okay, so we have to budget for it, okay. And then, yeah, that sounds confusing to me.
So, just for clarification, that's a grant, we wouldn't put that as a contingency line?
Right, contingency, right. I was thinking, thank you.
I don't think it's.
You alert?
It is, I think it's fine to be.
We would fund it either way, whereas that that police department grant, I don't think, that's not, if we don't get the grant, we won't do, we won't have the software, right, so we won't do it. Right. Right. Um, the computer replacement program, we would continue to fund even if we don't get the grant.
Okay.
I'm starting, the electricity increase, I don't know why I always look at these things, but um seventeen percent electricity increase for the building?
For that making.
That's a number we used across the organization for the budget process, yeah.
So everything is increasing.
Yeah, we looked at that a a long time, I wish that wasn't the case.
I have a question.
Yeah?
It's been, even that's even with the new structure, how's the police?
But I don't have.
It's a reduction.
Yeah, the ten thousand, because.
Um, I have a question, the revenues are just, they're down so much with um passport revenue and admin fees, I'm just curious, is it worth providing these services, the cost of staff?
Yeah. Yeah.
Passport revenue is down because of the uncertainty of the federal government right now and the time constraints on how long it would take to get a passport, people are putting it off until there's more.
I just did my kid's passports and we got them back in like three months.
That's awesome, that's awesome.
Interesting. Cause everybody else is waiting.
That's not the guidance we've gotten from the federal government right now.
So I have a question that goes, Steve, do you understand my question, right?
Cause they love letters.
I do, yes, it's valid.
And, cause I was gonna ask this question before, so we just said about the library grant, we're gonna fund it regardless of the twelve.
It's part of the regular.
We're gonna fund that whether we get the grant or not, but when we did the contingency ten thousand for the police, we're including that as a expenditure, but you just said if we don't get the grant, we won't do it, so isn't that a wash and why would we account for that ten K?
I don't, I don't really have a horse in that race, however the board wants to, it is fine.
Well, I'm just asking, it just doesn't seem like it's apple to apple.
So the grant would would buy your software, correct, and then the ten thousand would be the annual cost to keep it, I mean.
Okay, so it's additional cost, it didn't, it's, so it's really twenty thousand and we're only doing the ten thousand there, is what you're saying?
Yeah.
Right, I don't know how much.
Okay, I didn't, I I didn't understand that before, I wanted to get from the grant, but clarify that.
I don't know how much I can.
Yeah, so, I mean, I don't know if this is gonna make things more confusing or not, but I'll just say it, uh, it's been dragged on forever.
Okay.
Um, the grant process through the federal government right now, so normally we we would receive this grant award back in like uh November, we didn't,
Yeah.
so we still don't know today, if they were to award this to us tomorrow, we could probably extend it to July one, like the purchase of it, we wouldn't need that ten thousand dollars for next year, because that would be included in the first annual. But when we put these, we put this request in, we were expecting to have it, you know, in December, uh, the award, and then get the program, and then we would have a ten thousand dollar um uh annual fee within next year's fiscal budget, we're not gonna make that. We don't, we don't even know if it's been awarded, and if it gets awarded tomorrow, we can probably try to push it off to a July one purchase, which means we won't need the ten thousand for next year, it'll be the following year after that.
Okay.
So if that's gonna help with your conversation or make it confusing, I apologize.
What it's worth, the likelihood of the two grants was my consideration, and the police chief's grant is less likely, but that's just my opinion.
So should we take ten thousand dollars off?
But somebody just. But somebody just said it's more than ten thousand, this is only funding the. I I just didn't make sense to me after talking about this grants.
Well, this one is not more than ten, it's six, it's sixty-some-odd thousand for the actual program and then a ten thousand dollar annual, annual fee for it.
Okay. Good.
And so that's, we're budgeting for the annual fee, basically.
Correct.
Which you only need if you get the grant.
Correct. Right, so that's my.
That's why I put it in contingency, because the grant couldn't be, I won't say it couldn't be less likely, but I'm not convinced we're getting the grant, you know,
Got it.
I'm sorry about that, chief, but if we're not getting the grant, I don't need the ten grant.
Okay. So that's true contingency then, because there if we need it.
So the discussion the department had needed was, do we need it or not, can I cut it?
The ten.
Couldn't quite cut it, I put it in contingency.
So we could cut it.
Again, contingency isn't a red flag for you to cut things, it's that, you know, it's like a grant that requires a match, apply for the grant, I've got a budget for the match,
Very well, true, so. Correct.
So, you know, he'd already applied for the grant, so I can't not budget for the ten, but I but I don't know that I'm gonna get the ten, the appropriate place to budget for it is contingency
Yeah.
in that situation, I think I got that right, chief.
Okay. And I can't go back there anyways, I don't know why I did, um, alright.
I have a question.
I have a question.
Public works, you're still in.
We're on libraries.
The library, for God's sake, no, I, I, no, I already jumped to Parks and Recs, so it's got back.
Do we have enough to put some furniture in, because we have made a lot of cuts tonight, and you've increased revenue as well.
Put furniture in there.
Could we, could we ask the board to give the library the furniture study that that we've been asking?
That's under CNR, we're not there yet.
One. Okay, thank you for that, appreciate the opportunity.
Some of these things.
Not to me, but it was.
Are we doing it tonight?
Huh?
We're doing it tonight?
I I I'm trying to set a timeline, I'd be out of here by ten o'clock, cause it's getting, well, it's nine oh five, we're not finished, we have to finish at least the operating. I I don't, I don't wanna be here that long, but let's keep moving.
I just have a quick, go ahead.
No, you go.
Well, it's nine oh five.
Good question, um, just, can you just explain under uh the young adult, the adult and young adult um expenditures, there's a big decrease in the full-time, but then a fairly good increase in part-time, can you just explain that?
A large decrease in the full-time is because of the reallocation of the business and career center coordinator's salary to the administration line.
Okay.
It's just a reallocation.
Yeah, okay.
Reallocation, and then the increase in the part-time line is what you just gave us money for this year for, yes.
The part-time, okay, thank you.
And that staff has not received an increase or had not received an increase in many, many years until a few years ago, they were budgeted to start getting GWIs, and we budget for a set number of hours, and if you increase their hourly salary, it comes down the number of hours.
Yeah, thank you, and that's why the public also understands what the, those numbers are, thank you very much.
Yeah.
And that's why we underbudgeted in the first place last year, so.
Right.
Alright, let's take a pause here, we wanna try to get through this operating budget.
Yeah, I just have a quick question about library building the grounds, is that Lisa or Tom?
It's.
Well, it's facilities maintenance, it was almost thirteen thousand and twenty-four, this year we're anticipating it being under five thousand, and next year it's going back up to thirteen, I'm just wondering why the seesaw.
Facilities maintenance, and Tom, you can jump in if you want, but we've traditionally underbudgeted that and then just dealt with things as they needed to be dealt with, like the HVAC system, the broken door, elevator repairs, so we're trying to more adequately budget for what we actually might need.
At the door that's out.
Or, but if it was an emergency or a need, we could do a supplemental and come to the board and ask for it, and we would do it if it was an emergency need, so we could potentially lower that budgeted amount.
I I think I already did, tonight, we, that, that, that was, right.
I would, well, we lowered it to forty-two hundred last year.
Aren't we looking at the budgeted thirteen thousand, facilities maintenance?
Yes.
Yeah, facilities maintenance.
So it's a, it's it's a eight thousand increase, right, is not what you're looking.
About two hundred and nine percent, which is what it's.
The last year, which is what. But you're already at half, you're already at forty-seven for year to date, and and twenty-four, your actual was twelve-nine.
Yeah, so.
Yeah. Right, well, I'm just saying, I think we could make a ten, and still fly, you know, I mean, I know it's only three thousand, but.
I think I could.
I I thought, I thought I was helping to clarify, sorry, go ahead.
I just wanna cut, we're not there yet, we're not have.
I just, yeah.
Road here.
Yeah, I just.
You're at, you're at, you're you're approaching nine, I guess, with year to date, I don't know if that cost there uh for facilities maintenance includes what the repairs were to the elevator like we were just talking about, I don't know if that's in there.
Well, we, but we could do a supplemental, so you, we could lower that to ten, that's what you're suggesting?
It doesn't.
So, some of the others, I think the historically caused challenge over there, where you have a number of ductless split air conditioners,
Yes.
they they have a short lifespan, they're ten, twelve years, and you can have probably five of them, so those have gone, um, there there's just some challenges to that type of building, some significant costs that have risen in the last.
So you think thirteen is realistic?
I I I did not get directly involved with preparation of this number, I'm just saying what historically has been involved, what it's hit, some of those costs are the big repairs that are unexpected.
And I'm granting that, I'm not using the forty-two hundred we gave last year, I don't know how we let that low, I'm just saying that
Yep.
we're on track for it to be just under ten thousand this year, and I I don't understand the thirty percent increase.
Yeah, I.
In estimation of what's gonna go wrong, unless you know something's like, you know, one screw holding it on the wall. Um, and it's like Wendy just alluded to, if there were an emergency, we're we're not gonna make believe, oh, you're out of money.
Right, we'll we'll appropriate the money, so I would wanna.
That's for BOF to do.
How long, how long is the building now?
Well, maybe I post.
Artis.
Go ahead.
Well, I was gonna say, the the building was significantly renovated in two thousand six, two thousand seven. Um, and when it was renovated, it was building three sides onto an existing building here, and one of the things that has been a challenge was how it was in terms of the HVAC and mechanical. Yep, um, there was a lot of effort put into making it a beautiful space, there was not a lot of focus on making it into a uh efficient space in terms of one, one large air conditioning unit for areas, as opposed to kinda cobbling together a bunch of smaller systems.
Okay, I I would be in favor of lowering that amount.
Yay. Is there anyone else that's willing to agree to ten thousand for an estimate?
I don't know if anybody else. I would go to ten.
I mean, it's only an estimate of what we're budgeting, it's not a doorstep.
Because if it's an emergency, we could, I mean, yeah, we're just.
For emergency.
Right, and we're, we don't need to have a tax, we don't need it.
Take care of it.
We went with forty-two hundred last year, which I don't know, I think that was someone else's idea.
But we were here, so somehow, um, so let's, let's lower the um facilities maintenance to ten.
Got it, got it.
Okay, but we will say that if there's an emergency, we'll take the appropriation.
Of course.
With the Board of Finance approval.
Out of contingency.
Board of Finance will, it's emergency work, we're, we're happy to, yeah.
Yeah, one of the things we're gonna propose is that we do a contingency, capital contingency in your operating budget of a hundred thousand, funding with CMR, so there won't be
Money?
Money available, we'll still require prior approval to release it, but it that won't hit the mill rate, it'll take care of some of this crazy stuff so that we at least have the appropriation, and then we'll just go through quick approvals.
Didn't, didn't we do that last year or the year before?
It got, it got eliminated last year.
So it was in twenty-three, twenty-four, before Mark came.
So it take, you know, it's still, you have to get the approvals, but any contingency, it's, should get an approval before it's released, that's for transparency.
We should have heard about this before, cause we could have been saying we're gonna use this for others, no.
Well. Well, we haven't done it yet, I need six votes, I think we'll get them, but.
Okay, right. Okay, alright.
Used a little, a lower amount of cash reserves in the hope that the Board of Finance would, would do that.
Would do that? Okay, okay, we'll make sure they do that, okay, Parks and Rec, have to wake up in the back row, um, I don't, any anybody have questions on Parks and Rec?
Where's my line strip machine? Where are we on the?
What?
The line striping.
Chair, do you mind if we release department heads that are finished, cause we're getting to that hour?
Oh, yes, 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 yes.
He's done, you chief, thanks everybody for your time tonight, appreciate it.
Yes.
You don't wanna stick with those?
Thanks, Lisa.
Might as well wait till they're all scattered.
They're not exactly.
Tom's on his own.
We're one, where goes one, goes all.
Nice chair, thanks everybody, appreciate it.
Yeah, we appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Um, I have a question.
After we have real food.
Oh, I think Curtis, Curtis Beach is here.
There you go.
Sorry, I missed it, what, what time is my question?
Yeah, we're just waiting on the lead.
So, to answer your question, I'm assuming you're asking about the Terriffill pickleball courts, so I I was, I I don't know if Tom wants to speak to it as well, but I.
Oh.
Who is released, Tom? He was just. I tried, Tom, I tried.
Get him fast.
They did the best they could.
But a decision has been made, I've been, I can, if Joan's still watching, she's gonna be fuming, but the uh, that, we're gonna go with the asphalt courts at Terriffill um at a cost of, I believe, one fifty-eight, um, and the contract, I believe, is gonna be, it was sent out of the town manager's office today.
I have signed it.
Is that coming to the, is that coming to the budget?
No, that's a question when we, we had a small meeting and I, we asked about that, so I hadn't heard that, we finalized that, and the question is, how do we recoup the money that we've already put into that, um, right, we we budgeted for fifty, three fifty from ARPA, a hundred thousand last year, now we're going down to one fifty.
I haven't looked at it yet, Chair, but maybe you and I and and Chair Havner can have a chat about that, cause I I haven't looked at, but I, but I
Okay. Okay. Just.
appreciate everything that that we've talked about thus far.
Okay, okay.
And maybe a couple other smaller costs of that, but.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I think we have to have another, I don't wanna take up the time tonight, but.
Yeah, I would. Yeah, that's good, I hear you, okay.
Thank you.
I have a memorial pool question.
That, we we love that question, Tom.
Bye, Tom.
Um.
Thanks, Tom.
Water charges are up and, I don't know, when you look at the expenditures versus the revenue, I'm just curious, you know, whether our plan is to even keep it open
So.
and it's worthwhile for us to keep open, and I know you mentioned before that it was a big part of camps needing the water feature.
It's a significant uh part of the day camp, has anybody's had their kids there over the years, the pool and or looking for, the splash pad is a significant reason, I think, why people, you know, come to us, um, it is the flagship program for the recreation department, it is serving over almost a thousand kids throughout, throughout, it's thousand registrations throughout the eight-week summer that we have it open, as well as uh kids who are part of the Board of, Board of Ed, uh, Summer Special Needs Program as well, take, take that, uh, use that facility. Uh, some of the, we've, we've since fixed it, so this year you're gonna see a a significant amount of revenue going back to that pool. Um, the revenues that were, where you were taking in for school lessons were being not allocated to the general fund, they were being allocated to the the Parks and Recreation Fund. I redid that for this spring, so those revenues were put back over there, I mean, we weren't talking a lot of money, I mean, it would be wrong, it would be dishonest for me to say the pool's a break-even proposition, it's not at this point, it's probably, you know, ten to twenty thousand in the hole for that, um, to use that resource, uh, we have been nursing it along uh the day, there is a day coming where that pool is not, I mean, Mark and I and his team have had extensive discussions about it. We wouldn't have pitched the need for either a renovation to the pool or rebuild with the splash pad if it wasn't necessary. You're looking at a building that was built in nineteen fifty, uh, the pool was built in nineteen fifty-seven, it had a renovation last in nineteen eighty. The mechanicals are, everything in there is at the end of its life, we're nursing it along at this point, um, to not have some kind of a water feature there though, uh, for the day camp, I mean, obviously during the summer months, it's, it would be significant impact to that program. Again, whether it's the pool or the splash pad, in a, in a perfect world, I I have an idea how I would like it to work, but at at this point, you know, it's, it's gonna be economics and and whether we get there, I mean, it it could fail this summer, I hope it doesn't, our staff is working hard to make sure, you know, to catch anything before it happens, but that's where we are, but there will be not, there there won't be any significant money put into that pool should it, should something break, that's, that's the reality of things right now.
I would just add that we, as Tom said, we we did spend a lot of time on this, and I think we looked at it from the point of view of, the perspective was, we need to close the pool. The perspective was not, we have to keep this pool open at all costs. You know, when, when Tom and I first started approaching this, it was, give me a mitigation plan for closing the pool. That, that was the the directive, and uh, over the course of the budget preparation period, further evolution, the impact on such a large number of our kids, I decided to not close it, leave it in there, and then get some guidance from the Board of Selectmen, because the issue is notice to the public about what you're gonna do. We've had a lot of discussions about the worthwhileness and and the and the reasonableness of investing in a splash pad. There isn't consensus around that, we funded this study, but that's still an uphill battle, I think, with the board and and possibly even with the Board of Finance. But for now, where we are tonight, on the town manager proposed, we kept that pool open, that's where we are now.
We had to, because we've already filled up the camps for the summer.
It is.
Well, that's, the, 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 the conversation's pre-due.
Yeah, right. Yeah, I know, remember that, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Just so you're aware, that was on my list of potential cuts before, and we let that go, it, it, the process moved a little too quickly for us, but.
Did we do the survey for them, sorry, um, do we, did we?
Study, this, the contract will be in town manager's office tomorrow for their review, so we, knowing it wasn't gonna get funded this year because of the situation obviously you guys were all dealing with, you know, work slowed down on it, it wasn't, you know, there's other priorities I was, I was dealing with and the town's dealing with, it wasn't the right ti, even if we had finished it, it wasn't the right time to, to bring it forward, uh.
And the same thing was true about filling that vacant position, by the way. So knowing, and you know, our work on this budget started three months ago, and we knew it was a challenging budget, and we had some excellent guidance from the Board of Finance, you know, more on the capital side than on operating or CNR, as we know, but still, we knew it was very challenging, and for that reason, we didn't fill the position, we didn't move forward fast on that contract, just wanna point out that we were not going hell-bent to do all of these things, we wanted to leave as many options for me and my proposed budget, and for you and your budget as you prepare it for the Board of Finance. Uh, some of which we'll discuss uh on March third, others we'll discuss on March third, so.
And do you envision the study being presented to us here?
I'm hoping by the end of the summer.
Yeah, June, July, uh, uh, August.
Yeah. That's the plan.
And I think that's a free, isn't it the A B C, or is it A B?
Yeah, yes, it's.
We asked for options, right?
Yes, right, good, better, best.
Good, better, best.
Okay, and 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 what other questions on Parks and Rec?
Just one. Yes, a clarification, mostly for the public, because it's there and I want them to have the explanation, the um Parks Maintenance Full Time, the increase was for the Parks Maintenance, can you just just explain? So that everybody understands why it's a thirteen percent point seven four percent increase and what uh what that is surrounding.
Yes, and this was the item that was corrected for this current year, I had last meeting uh with the mid-year transfers, so for fiscal year twenty four, there was a new position. Uh, budgeted for, but it was budgeted in contingency, and then for fiscal year twenty five, um, we did not properly account for it, um, in the full timeline for Parks Maintenance. So, we're correcting that for twenty six, so we. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just, again, I I knew the answers, but I wanna be transparent and make sure that everybody, so when they see this um increase, they understand what it is for, and we have an explanation for it.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, any.
It's not just a random increase.
Thank you.
I got one quick one for Tom. Let me go really slow, no, I'm just kidding, okay, under uh Park Maintenance Seasonal, I'm just curious, your allocation was thirty, almost thirty seven thousand dollars. And we're estimating in twenty twenty five, you're only gonna need fifteen thousand, I was wondering how you realize such significant savings?
Very difficult to fill those positions.
So it's vacancy?
Significantly vacancy.
Which one is I know?
Very, very difficult to fill it, you're talking about Park Maintenance Seasonal, correct?
Right here. Yes, I am.
Yeah, we, you know, we try to aim for five or six of those kids, it just realistically since COVID, we cannot find that.
No worries, I just was wondering if you had some secret.
There's a lot, there's something in there that we're not gonna do, you know.
You were holding on to.
Okay, anybody else on the on Parks and Rec? It sounds like you're you're kind of not feeling.
It's a little wet last time.
Yeah, I know, oh, thanks for saying.
We could have moved him sooner.
Okay.
Is he excused now?
Should we should have moved you sooner?
That's okay, I I I'm team Blair, so.
Team, got it.
Okay, um, moving on from Parks and Rec.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, we're at Employee Benefits.
I doubt, I doubt.
Go, Tom, you're free.
Bye, Tom, bye, Tom.
Thanks, Tom.
Oh, it's not really on the list, but some, I think, um, some people had some questions on somewhere in the benefits, I think, Diana, didn't you have a question?
I did. Um, I have two questions, under Employee Benefits, you ha, we have a a significant increase in the employee uh major medical as well as the employee. So, okay, so let's start with the major medical, cause I have two questions and they're separate. Um, under the major medical, is that just healthcare increased cost, or where is that, what is behind that increase in the um Employee Benefits Major Medical Costs?
So the major medical is given to us by our benefits consultants, so they look at our claims history over, um, I think they did it over two different periods. And um, that's the projection that they gave us, that our premiums will likely increase four point nine percent. We have one more, um, one more time, they'll be looking at it in March to the end of February to see if there's any adjustment, but right now, it's four point nine percent that we're looking at for premium increase.
The other question I had was under the Employee Benefits Police Pension, is this pay, is this beca, a payout?
Yeah.
Contract negotiations, I believe, right, Chief?
Well, this is our ARC payment related to their negotiations.
Well, we have to pass, yes.
Okay.
And it went up, why why it got some, I guess, some, is that a just a normal increase, cause fourteen percent?
That's almost fourteen percent.
Right.
Cause we added the disability pension, perhaps?
Yeah.
We added a disability pension, and I think that's probably what it is.
Ah, okay.
This board approved that, change the numbers.
Okay.
And that's like, that's just contractually what we are?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, insurance?
Do we really need it?
I have no other questions.
It's a contingency. There you go.
I have no other, I have nothing else on operating.
Okay, um, so operating transfers, do we wanna see where we are just for fun, like what we cut?
So, right now, we have.
Let 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 the professionals show us, they could tell us if they matched your number, Diana.
Okay.
We have seventy one.
Seventy one.
That's all?
Seventy four.
I have seventy three, five five zero.
I think that's that two thousand that you.
Did you count the two thousand back in revenue?
Yeah.
Oh, no, I did not, so plus two thousand. So seventy one, five.
Seventy one, five, five, oh.
Seven, five, five, zero.
Plus two thousand. It's back into revenue.
Wouldn't I take the seventy five?
Yeah, wait, right.
Yeah, it was for seventy five.
Yeah, it's your revenue.
Seventy five, seventy seven.
Yeah, it's more saving.
Yeah, it's revenue.
Plus two, right, plus two.
I look.
It would make it.
Seventy five.
Yeah.
Right.
You're right, so we have seventy three, five, five, zero in cuts, and then we added two thousand dollars to revenue.
Yeah, seventy five.
To revenue.
Right, okay.
Yes. So let's see how, what kind of needle that probably not much.
Need your majesty's permission.
Crazy. Oh.
He's in the wrong mouse.
No, I'm sorry.
I'm in.
Pretty good.
I just wanna make sure how my choices are still in there.
Actually, I bought these. One of them.
We're gonna have to find more money. More money.
I didn't see the three point five change.
Change to three point two four.
Oh.
You're looking at, yeah.
Oh, I was looking on the right side.
These assumptions, yeah.
Okay.
So now we're on.
So you went from two point six six to two point five seven.
Not something.
That's good, that's cool, you know what I mean?
That's too much.
Okay, that's a good start.
And how much is it per household, it's two seventy two?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So we still have to do. We still have capital, right? Um, to take a look at the CNR, I don't know how, what people feel like doing tonight, you know, um.
No, I don't.
Two percent, okay.
We haven't seen, we have the the, well, let's look at the, do do you wanna stop?
Chair, we we, staff would be ready to give you a draft on CRP pursuant to uh Board of Finance, could be guidance where you want to stay under and all of that, and and uh.
Yeah.
So if if you are having that special meeting on the third, as you alluded to, we'd be ready to go with that.
Well, I'm gonna say, we're not gonna put it on the fly, right?
Yeah. Right, we we would prefer to give you, uh, and I indicated to Chair Havner, we would do that on the staff side, so I'd respectfully request we defer capital till the third.
Um. Okay, I do wanna ask, um, well, all right.
Can we, and and will we also be going over the uh the CNR with those lines, yeah?
Yes. Yes. Yes.
And seeing where things change on that.
Yes, um, anybody have any, well, left final question, well, a couple things I was just gonna throw out. So the the things that we've taken into account the two thirty three, right? Um, we've explained the general government piece, we are still pending the opioid, so if we don't, if we're not able to add that to revenue, we're gonna have to move that out, so that's a big, big ticket item.
It's gonna impact the mill rates, I suppose.
No, but it's a big ticket item, well, I guess where it goes, because it'll impact amount of reserves we can use, cause we'd have to use another two hundred in reserves, correct?
Correct, another one eight.
And then, the debt service proposed by the Board of Finance, is that included in the in these numbers?
Yes, yeah, I I believe it is.
Okay, the one point three and then over the two years, so that's included already. We have the mill rate stabilization of the four fifty K, currently, what, it's coming out of some reserves, correct? Um, the question is, is there room to move that up? Um, depending on, you know, does I I, you know, I know, not deferring yet to Board of Finance, but if we use less potentially in CNR of the capital reserve, so we know that the savings will go into that. Is there a way we can potentially use more if we need to, to get to the to the number? Um, that's just something to think about for next time, and. I guess that's all.
We used a, we used a relatively small amount of cash reserve.
Um, yeah, that's, and then there's another thing out there floating around out there that we may get more money from, um, the governor? ECS or EX?
Nothing.
Oh, you do, okay.
Yes, I just got a text from Melissa, she said her number is solid, they expected the pass, what we don't know is what the governor is gonna do with it, whether he's gonna beat them up, so.
So what would that result in for us, three hundred something?
So that would get the current year's budget, it wouldn't really help us to next, I mean, it would help in terms of the current's budget, and we'd have to look at it.
Yeah.
The excess costs reimbursement for next year, but. Amy, I'll defer to you, if we don't get that money. Doesn't really impact next year's budget.
Okay.
It might impact, you know, if we do get that money. Or if I could use some of their non-lapsing for some of their capital needs, they wouldn't need it for special education. It it it's an, it's another bucket that could be used elsewhere.
Okay, okay. Um, all right, and. So we're, I think we're gonna just table the capital discussion, cause everybody's kinda tired, and we still have a few agenda items to go through. Okay, everybody okay, everybody okay on the third?
Great, I love that, five o'clock, are we meeting here, cause zoning is meeting at like.
Five o'clock.
I'm in the process of finding a room.
We're looking for.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay.
Shooting for the library.
Okay, I wouldn't, and if we have the library table set up would be good, cause it it's, you know, collaborative and easy to spread out all your stuff. So anybody who is here for the budget, and we're gonna move on to the to the regular agenda, if I can remember what's in it. Um, I'm gonna ask the consent agenda, I was going to ask if we can move, um. The item A, the tax. I was actually gonna ask to move the item B, the public gathering permit, over to the consent agenda, there was only fifty people, there's no parking impact. Um, and move those over, so.
A B.
Do I need to move item E? I mean, that, what do I do with item E, cause.
What is the usual, or do you discuss potentially adopt the capital?
There's no action.
Yeah.
Well, I could report that there wasn't a union vote, so it would.
No, no, that was D, I'm, why we didn't get to E, sorry, we'll just pretend E's just happened.
D, oh. Yeah.
Um, so A and C, and then appointments and resignations, A, B, and C.
A, B from selection and action.
Yeah.
And A, B, and C from appointments and reservations.
Correct, got it.
Second.
Oh, any second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, um, the authorized the town manager, the KARP grant, Tom, do you wanna talk, you're working on the.
I can do a quick one and then.
Yeah, unfortunately, Tom Roy left. Let's do it quick.
Well, um, if I miss anything, I'm sure Diana can help fill in, so, um, the ARP has their community challenge grants, um, there's multiple levels, multi-levels to them.
I have a note.
Um, and we're looking to apply for two of them, there's no limit to how many you can apply for. Um, so the first one is the flagship grant, uh, it is for, um, more and a bigger project. Um, so our goal is to apply for a solar table to go out, um, be placed outside Ino, I believe, next to the Bachi Court area.
Yeah.
Um, and they are kind of a picture, a picnic table, umbrella, uh, solar panels on it, so you can kind of sit down, you can plug in, charge, or cool off as well.
Car蓄 stations, yeah.
Um, and so we think it'll kind of, um, do two things, one, improve kind of the public space and the vibrancy of it. And then two, also do intergenerational connection, so as the students kind of might be leaving school and walking down Hot Meadow, they might stop and charge their device. And then, um, anyone who's outside using Ino and in the Bachi Court area might kind of, um, hopefully they can kind of interact, and our residents interacting.
Be used as a congregant, um, gathering space for senior and intergenerational events, and even Tom Roy had mentioned, maybe by the Bachi Cubs, but since that's not so visual, perhaps even out front.
Oh, fair, wherever there's the most sun, we can probably get some charge.
Correct.
Tom, what's the amount of the grant that you could get?
So the flagship, sorry, I should have had that in there, um, hang on. I've gone to this, um, website a few times recently.
I I think there would be a worthy discussion about it being placed in front, just because of the historic nature.
Yeah.
Also, the aesthetic there will be important, and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it'd be right in front of the.
I think it's ten, yeah.
Yeah.
And.
Would kind of be like.
Just a quick question, like I, you know, we don't know, I've never even seen what a solar table looks like, or what that is.
This is a great place.
The one question I have, are are there more important needs for the senior center that this grant could fill than a solar table?
We, um, we haven't discussed that.
Question, I, yeah, like, you know, we're 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 nickel and diming money for the senior center earlier and 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 things like that. So if this is a ten to fifteen thousand dollar grant, is there anything that we've been wanting or need for the senior center that would serve this, that would be better suited? I mean, you guys are the experts on that, but.
Yeah.
So this goes along with our age, age friendly community initiative?
Like a full. Okay.
This is part of that, there is other communities that have that designation, and will you also utilize this solar table?
So the the, that's specific, see, because with, unless we are having some other kind of improvements to the building or whatever, um, that we don't have as a plan right now, um. First of all, this this would not be a project that would be funded unless we get the grant, so there's only specific things, so although some of the things we we funded, this grant wouldn't be able to be used for that. Because this particular grant for the solar table is, uh, very specific to like items or capital improvement projects or things like that.
Yeah, yeah, I guess my point is, is this the best use of this grant for the senior center, for aging, an AARP to do a solar table?
Yeah.
Or or is there something else, and you're saying this is the best potential use for the town?
Yeah, under the age friendly community initiative.
Okay, so it has to fall under those.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
And there may be other grants down the line that, as needs come up, like we we.
Yeah.
It just kind of goes along with some of the library asks, things like that, we we used to ask that question when we use money to buy the book bike and things like that, we asked, is that the best use of these funds? Is there something more important for the library, that's why I'm asking those questions.
These are annualized grants, they come every year, so next year, we could look at that, perhaps to senior center.
Okay.
Um, so just follow, so the average grant amount's ten to twelve, um, the max in twenty twenty five is twenty five thousand.
Okay. Okay, so what if you get.
For the flagship grant.
So it's like we have a larger space, for example, and we wanted to purchase like a an exercise bike for part of a a, or some some some, uh, exercise equipment for the senior center. This is something we could apply for it, but we don't have that space for the need for that type of equipment.
Yes.
But if we start getting uh used to applying for these grants, it's like almost better for the town to apply for them and have, be on their radar that we are a funding, like we're a town that they fund.
And then, so on top of that, there's the capacity building micro grant, um, and so these are smaller grants, um, for a max of twenty five hundred.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, and so there is currently being a plan for a Home Fit Expo in September at the library. Um, so this grant would help us kind of with costs for that, um, so, um, part of it would be a kind of pre-expo education's uh kind of seminar. As well as a post, um, education kind of follow-up seminar, um, and that'll help kind of people maintain lifelong homes. Um, and we, one of our aging disability did the focus group and the survey, and, um, aging and police was recognized as one of the main priorities, and this expo would go along to help, uh, educate the public on on that.
And we would fund the, uh, did you talk about the mobile unit coming out?
Oh, so we will reach out to, there's a, well, I forget who has it.
OK, OK, mobile.
OK.
Uh, mobile unit, um, and so we are looking to try and have that come out to the expo, um, there's a cost to bringing that out, um, so this would offset that. Um, and then all grant, so all funds for these have to be used by December, um, it's even part of the grant.
Okay, and who would staff these, would it be just the aging and disability, or would the senior center staff?
We give them some support from social services.
And the the Home Fit Expo, we talked about potentially asking our our building official, um, if he had something he would consider kind of attending and talking with the public about, for if they have any questions about kind of permits and stuff like that.
Okay. Okay.
For the fire portion.
All right, any any questions, other questions?
No, I appreciate the question, Wendy, I don't, I don't necessarily know about it either, I can't speak intelligently about what it, what else it could be used for, but it's encouraging to hear that there might be some other things too, so. While it's not about the first thing on my list, it seems like worthy to support, it's other people's money, might as well put it to good use.
Yeah. Okay, and so, and if we appro, if we go to the third motion appropriated, it can only be used for the things we've listed here, and if it was something else, we'd hear about it, correct?
These are what we're applying for, so if we don't get the grant, then.
Okay. But if, if we get the grants, def, uh, well, it has to be for this, I I know, I'm I'm new to the grant space.
It'll be used for, yes.
If you get the grant, it must be used for what you're applying to grant.
Yeah, I got it, correct, yeah.
Every time.
I when I know, I just.
We're new to it, it's okay.
Interesting.
The town hasn't done it.
I'll make the motion, um, to, uh, submit the grant application for la, flagship ARP Community Challenge Grant and Capacity Building Micro Grant. And authorize the town manager, Mark Nelson, to execute the grant application, and in the event it is awarded, I'll further move to accept the grant and authorize the town manager, Mark Nelson, to execute all documents related to the grant award. And appropriate the grant's funds and recommend said appropriation to the Board of Finance.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion, all those in favor say aye. Any further discussion, all those in favor say aye, uh, okay, there we go, and then, um, item D, um, Mark? Um, it doesn't look like we have any pending union ratification here.
No, the union met today, uh, and, uh, we've had some good back and forth after our, uh, I think I can say, executive session on Thursday, so uh, the administration would respectfully ask if the board would table this, we expect the union to, uh, vote the tentative agreement up or down by Friday.
Okay.
That's where we are.
So there was no vote that, I, was, no, they, they did not take the vote, okay.
I think if the tentative agreement hadn't changed, we probably would have, but there were some changes, as you know.
Yes.
And then we caught one, and they caught one, and, but it, but it's, I would describe it as a very good back and forth on both sides, and, uh, we expect a vote, uh, before Friday at noon.
Okay, but how does that impact the, the meeting on Monday?
It would be.
For people to see what it's about?
We'll hold the packet and release it, everything will be public as we discussed. So, uh, the, the, our union colleagues are aware what the time deadline is, we'd prefer to get the packet out Thursday, but we can delay it if we, if we have to, so, we've given them a hard deadline of Friday, and all of the documents would be, would be public at that point, including the tentative agreements, the fiscal analysis, uh, and as I said in an email to you today, we've got a couple of questions from your colleagues, Wendy, that we'll, we're still doing some numbers on, but we'll get you that hopefully tomorrow.
We, we can release the packet on Thursday, knowing what we have, and then amend it, if there's something additional, isn't, can we?
I, I, I don't know that for sure, I gotta check with, uh, our, our labor.
But before it's agreed upon?
Yeah, because the union ma- if the union hasn't voted on it, I would need union approval to make it public, once they've voted on it.
Can we add an agenda item, get the first selectmen add an agenda item prior to the meeting?
It'll be a special, I don't.
I don't, I don't think can add to a special meeting that's noticed.
Yeah. You can't.
So it's either gotta be.
There you go.
Just ask him.
So the, the twelve o'clock timeframe allows, gives us that fifty-nine minutes to post the agenda to town clerk before we post it on.
We would have the time.
With twenty-four hours.
Yeah, exactly, we, before we leave on Friday at one o'clock, we would have to post this special, the Monday agenda.
Specialty.
So that's why we gave the twelve o'clock deadline.
And there was one other thing we had agreed earlier, I forget, it's been a long night, you were gonna put one other thing on the agenda I had asked for a few hours ago?
For Monday?
Does anybody remember?
Yeah.
What that was now?
Uh, it'll come to me. It'll float to the top, it's something.
Sorry about that.
Um, the what? Okay, so, um, anybody, um, is, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll move to approve the minutes for the purposes of discussion.
Any? Okay, discussion.
Second.
Okay, I was moving, so in, um, the section, uh, about the budget, and it's on page four, uh, Mr. Nelson spoke about the Simplicity Volunteer Fire Association with the three-year M O U, I think it's Simplicity Volunteer Ambulance, it's my only amendment.
Thank you for that.
Good catch there, Kevin.
I get them mixed up.
Okay, so all those in favor, as amended, do we, yeah, as it's amended, say aye.
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 Okay, all those, um, who wants to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll move to adjourn.
Aye, second.
All those in favor say aye.